Meeting to order. Apologize to everybody for being a little bit late getting started. Anyway, Mr. Denae, would you lead us in the pledge? Please rise, take your hats off, put your hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Secretary, call the roll, please.
Hashev, Guston, Zadra, Sveraza, George, Eazi, Keshel.
On approval of the agenda, there's been a suggestion to poll item J eight, but we'll do some discussion on that as right, Mr. Eazi. Okay. Proclaimations. We have a proclamation honoring one of our officers, Walt Fraser. Proclamation, Mr. Fraser will be handling the April as for housing month. Presentations, no. Public comments at 12 noon. Public hearings, 12:15, item F1. Time certain on legislation is four o'clock. There will be a redevelopment agency board meeting right after public comment. The joint reading Reno City Council downtown alcohol and beverage meeting will be scheduled for two o'clock. And there will be a town. Take a hold in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now, Madam Secretary, will you give me the public comment cards, please? Jeffrey Calabria?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Please come forward, sir. Identify yourself for the record and...
My name is Jeffrey Calabria. I'm a citizen here in Reno. I brought forward last time about vehicles being towed and requiring a 24-hour notice before a vehicle can be towed. I've even brought the Fourteenth Amendment of the Constitution, which specifies, "No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of the citizens of the United States, nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of the law, nor deny any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the law." By allowing landlords to tow a vehicle without any notification whatsoever, that gives them all the power to do whatever they want. By a 24-hour notice, it at least gives the owner of that vehicle a chance to move the vehicle to an appropriate location or get it registered within that 24 hours. I figure it's not much to ask, and I've been working on this now for like five months, going on six. And I would really hope to get this amended so that it is required of anyone towing a vehicle to put a 24-hour notice on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can we have the attorneys address that? Because I believe that's a state, the state statute regarding the towing of vehicles. Tracy.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. The state does control a lot of that area. I haven't looked into the specifics of this commentator's request. However, if state law controls real entity, you should be speaking to would be the legislature.
So why don't you, let's look into it and see what is our side and then...
Sure. If you want to, just give me your phone number. I'll give you a call.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mary Keshel, all the city council members. I may be here a little ahead of time, but I was told that...
Please identify yourself for the record.
Oh, Barbara Bohatch.
Thank you.
I am here today to speak about a project that is very dear to my heart and hopefully will be dear to your hearts. Project Blue Light. This project was started about 20 years ago so that all would remember the fallen officers and also to thank police officers still working the streets for their daily commitment to their call to duty. The color blue is a symbol of peace. With today's world, our project, Blue Light, also includes those who on foreign land are protecting our rights and freedom. Do we or do you ever stop to think about all the rights and freedoms that we take for granted every day? Those heroes on foreign soil are giving us a chance to live our lives with the freedom that the Constitution has granted us. These men and women have voluntarily given, are giving their lives to enable us to be The color blue is a symbol of peace, and we urge all Americans to remember our domestic peacekeepers, the police officers, who every day are there to serve and protect. I especially remember those law enforcement officers who have given their lives and made the ultimate sacrifice, the giving of their lives to keep us safe and from horror arms way. Thus, I come to the point about why I am speaking about Project Blue Light. Not too long ago, we all changed the lights on our Reno arch for our victorious Wolf Pack.
Ms. Bohatch, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up now because we, every speaker gets three.
Three minutes.
And...
Very quickly, I'm sorry, I did rea, I thought my, was going to be less than a minute.
No, no, go ahead.
My suggestion is, we as a community can make a very strong statement by changing the lights on the arch once again during National Police Week, which is May 15 to May 21st. This would help to remind each citizen of Reno and all of Nevada that we care. We care for those who protect us each day, both on home territory and on foreign shores.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ms. Bohatch, I did get your request the other day. We're pulling the numbers on the cost and how we can do it, and I will be putting it on the agenda for next time so that we can take action and do it. But right now, the costs are about $4,000, but we're working on them, and I think we can work things out.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes.
And Ms. Bohatch, you probably already know that every year, we do a ceremony, our police department does a ceremony over in Idowile Park for the fallen officers. So for everyone else's benefit, I believe this year, that's on May 6th. So, and we'd love to see people out there helping us celebrate those officers.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I'm here today to talk to you, actually, Ms. Zadra, about a park in the South Meadows that we've got a really dangerous situation unfolding. It's on Veteran, or Steamboat Parkway. I know that you're all very familiar with the park. It's something that Reno is very proud of in that, in that whole community. And it, it really is the only public park from Steamboat Parkway South that the community has to use during the day. The rest of the playgrounds are on school property, which, you know, the public shouldn't be using those playgrounds during the day on school property. Well, this park is really, really popular. The minute there's a sliver of sun out, I mean, the equipment at the park is crawling. It's like ants all over the equipment. The, the community just loves it. They have nowhere else to go. The big problem is the parking. There's one half circle of parking, I don't know the exact number of spaces, but I would venture to say it's 20 or less for that, that park, and it butts up to Veterans Parkway, or, I'm sorry, I keep calling it Veterans Steamboat Parkway, which I believe the speed limit is 40 to 45 miles an hour on that road. There's a bike lane that butts up to the park side where everybody's starting to park in the bike lane, because sometimes there's 60, 70 cars there, because it's, it's within walking distance to that Damone Ranch neighborhood that backs up to it. But it's all the people from Curdy Ranch and the KB Homes that are a little bit to the south, they drive there. Now, parking in that bike lane is against the law. We do have a lot of bikers that are out there biking, and they're having to go around those cars, but they have, they have nowhere else to park. And a, a young lady was out walking her dog last week when we were at the park, and I was parked in the bike lane, and she had called RPD and wanted to have all of the cars ticketed that were out there, which everybody was in violation of the law, totally understand that. There's nowhere else for them to go. And there's little pockets that are across the street on the undeveloped side where people could park, but there's no crosswalks. It's not a safe road to be, you know, dragging your family across, pushing a stroller across. So I'm here just as a mom, asking if we can, and I've, I know this, I should probably bring this to the Neighborhood Advisory Board. I just can't get there tomorrow night. I'm going to be in Carson testifying. So I'm trying to send some parents down there if they can make it tomorrow. It's tomorrow evening, correct? But if we can start looking at some different parking opportunities there, it would, it would really, really help, because I'm telling you, there's going to be, somebody's going to get hit, a biker's going to get hit, a child's going to get hit. It's a very, very popular place. So just if you can consider looking into that, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name's Molly Hutchinson. I am a licensed massage therapist. I've been licensed in the state of Nevada as a massage therapist for the past seven years, and I've maintained dual business licenses in Reno and Sparks that entire time. Two years ago, I was fortunate enough to start my own business, and I chose to do so in the city of Reno. I have a charming location not far from here. It's centrally located. I love it, my clients love it. When I opened my business, I renewed my city of Reno business license, as I've done every year, and I indicated it on, as it said on the back of the form, to change your address. I did so. The license I received didn't have any address change. I figured, no big deal, someone missed it. This year, I walked it in, actually, last week, I walked it in to update my license once again, and was very surprised that not only was I charged $130 renewal fee, but I was also charged a $70 reapplication fee, a $24 processing fee, and a $90 fire inspection fee to change the address on my city license. I've been also very fortunate this year that I expanded my business not only to Reno, in Reno, but also in Sparks. I have two locations now. As a small business owner, I understand fees, and I understand why they're there, and I don't mind paying them, but if this is the level of ridiculous fees I get to expect from the city of Reno, then next year, I would have no reason to stay. It would behoove me to just move my business to the city of Sparks, where it's going to cost me much less. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Manager, if you'd have somebody get into that and look at it and get the information, we'll find out and do what we can.
How's everybody today?
Good, and you?
Growing old together here. I got my glasses. I ended up, I wanted to speak on a couple things, and I like Ms. Bohatch's thing, so if the city decides to do that, I'd match them two grand on half of it, if they decide to do that. Okay?
Thank you.
And then, now I ended up on a couple things, on more of our rights and stuff like that that I'd like to talk about today, and by the right way, for the record, my name's Eddie Lorton, and that's our simple freedoms to do free enterprise. So now, what I'm going to talk about is a few things that are going to be mentioning on moratoriums today, on packaged liquor stores, tattoo parlors, another way for people not to rent buildings or make a living, and I don't agree with it at all. And then now, I'm down to also this part on this agreement they're trying to do with the liquor establishments. Okay? So I ended up here in town, you know, that someone in this room is involved in the Fitzgerald's Club, you know, and people invest in things. And what I don't like, though, is the fact that they're going to be opening two new places to do, you know, shows and stuff like that. They're going to open two new theaters, four to six bars, and people will be able to go do there and do the same thing they're trying to close everyone else down for. So I don't agree with that, even though the casinos' investments are larger, I still think that the little person's investment needs to be considered just as much. That's what freedom is. If it's their life savings, they invest. Who cares if it's millions or a littler amount? Plus, it supplies jobs and revenue streams. So here it is, the people that are complaining are these condo people that move into the middle of this town when there's bars and casinos that have been here for over 80, 90 years, and they move into the middle of it and want to complain about it. I don't think that's right at all. They want the quiet, move out to the country. And then I overlooked some of these suggestions. I didn't agree with a lot of them, and we'll go over that when it comes time at two o'clock over these things. But another thing, if they're going to ask people to sign these agreements, like a lot of people go to certain people to tell them not to, well, I'll do the same thing that, that people did for Harry Reid, and that's go door to door telling them not to sign this agreement, because if it's so legal, no one has to sign anything, because then they could just implement it. Someone doesn't have to tell me to speed, I already know that. And a lot of these things are against case law. There's never been separation with liquor licensees between casino or bar in 80 or 90 years, or casino and bars having liquor licenses. So that'll be against case law. Notice how they stayed out of this equation with this agreement, how all of a sudden it's just prejudicing bars only and stuff like that. So the casinos clearly got out of it, which I don't agree with. So it's against case law, dram shop laws, you're not responsible what happens outside in the state of Nevada. The Supreme Court made a decision two years ago upholding dram shop. So then we'll get into that, let alone, you know, causing, you know, prejudice and then downright harassment on these small businesses. I do agree with a couple of the things on there, but as far as most of it goes, there's going to be a big lawsuit. That's why I've done this for two and a half years now. I'm just trying to prevent it, sir, and all of you. I mean, it's just, I don't want to take money or do anything to the city. It's been good to me, I love this town. But you start changing the complexion of our town, next thing you know, we can't do business, everyone's going broke, we'll have a problem.
Did you go to the meetings?
Well, yes, sir. I went to about one or two, but with the head person against casinos and bars and stuff like that, as the chairperson...
So you only went to one or two meetings?
Yes, because it was so prejudiced, I decided not to go anymore, because you could see where they were going. It was a waste of time. Thank you.
Mark McCall. Mark? Mark, come on up. Don't be rushing, take your time.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Okay, my name is Mark, 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 Mark Kill. I'm a conservative Reno resident. Hi, Jessica.
Back to the subject, Mark.
Oh, I, yeah.
Back to the subject.
I'm sorry, sir. I'd like to say hi to all the members and the mayor. And I'm here today to warn people not to get in the car with that drunk driver. I did 20 years ago, I did, I've come a long way, and I'm a perfect example of what can happen to a person that gets in the car with the drunk driver. And for, for those of you that don't know, I was, me and my brother were in the mountains of Southern California, and we drank four gallons of wine, and we're on our way to get some more, and rolled eight times, and I wasn't wearing my seatbelt. I got jacked in, and the car landed on my head. And I'd hate to see this happen to anybody else. It was my own fault, because I was drunk, but I'd hate to see it happen to anyone else. So please, please, uh, yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. It's a very good message, Mark.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Sam Denae.
Sam Denae, the encyclopedia of Reno government. Sam is an Air Force Academy graduate. Sam spent many years flying fighters and bombers, B-52s, F-4 Phantoms, defending our nation against enemies inside of the border and outside of the border, to try to protect the rights that Eddie Lorton and others are trying to defend right here at this very podium. And by the way, before I go any further, I want to give you heavy-duty kudos for following Sam's directives and appointing Steve Pitts as the Chief of Police. I recommended that, and despite the fact I recommended him heavily for Chief of Police, he got appointed. Now, what's with that? Whatever happened to the Sam Denae kiss of death? At any rate, he's a good man. His, he's got a wonderful military background and heritage, and virtually every single, well, every single policeman I talked to says he's a good man, and they're really happy that you did what you did. You know, it's kind of interesting. I've been coming to every one of these meet, every single meeting since 1994, and you would think, finally, with the pickle we're in and the trepidation going on, that somebody else would be coming up here and trying to stand alongside of Sam. And granted, Eddie Lorton and others do come up with their individual problems, justifiably, but I'm talking about the big picture. Why doesn't somebody else come down here and remind everybody? And by the way, I'm surprised somebody didn't correct me. Last week, I premeditatedly ended my long-time streak for the second time. Eddie Lorton back there is now in first place with the longest attendance or a public comment streak going in the city of Reno. At any rate, it is amazing that more people don't come down here and say something. But again, other people tell me, they, they said, "Sam, you're doing such a great job. Nobody else needs to go down there. You point out every single problem there is." How many people have to come down here and remind everybody of, of all of the, of all of the things that Sam said "I told you so" about? I'm not here to say "I told you so," but I did, I told you so. Mr. Mayor's so tired of hearing "I told you so," and he knows exactly, he's got my speech memorized, I can tell by looking at his face, he knows exactly where I'm going. "Why did you buy this lavish building with a perfectly good building over there? Why did you, why did you build this baseball stadium? Why didn't you put some money in the rainy day fund and leave it there? Why did you?" And I know you're thinking into the future and all these wonderful things, but Sam reminded you that things are not always good. Things can get bad, and they have gotten bad. And then there's the railroad trench. Well, maybe that was kind of a slightly different thing, but then he forgot that you had to tear down a perfectly good fire station to build the baseball stadium. I spoke for the stadium, and I spoke against it, and you should have, you should have taken my advice into account relative to the things that I spoke against. And then there's the Star Bonds. Those Star Bonds are wiping out the small businesses around town, because the big folks have all of the money. And you say, "Well, all these people are coming from out of town to go to the baseball games and go to those places?" That's not really true.
Thank you very much.
It's what we call scavenging.
Thank you very much. Having no other public comment cards, I'll close the public comment section at this time. I'll bring it back to the table. We'll go to item B O. Cash dispersal, Mr. Hashev, none, Mr. George, Mr. Guston. All right. Chair will entertain a motion. Have motion second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we'll go to the consent agenda. Items you want to pull for discussion. Mr. Fraser.
Yeah, just the liquor license is in general, Mr. Mayor.
Which one is that?
C1A.
C1A?
Uh, 1, 2, 3, and B1.
Okay.
C1.
All right. Any others? Boy, we set a record today. Can I have a motion to approve all other items? Have a motion second. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Fraser.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the reason why I pulled these, because of what we did last week, the agreement that we reached with that particular owner on the liquor store, I really think that we should implement. I know we can't retro implement policies, however, I'd like to see if, I mean, Hash House Ago Go would be exempt. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, they're a breakfast shop, but for the rest of the stores to voluntarily agree not to sell the drug paraphernalia, I know it's going to be on our agenda later today, but I think if we could get all the owners, and I know several of them are here today, I would like to see us implement that policy if somebody's going to be able to get a privileged liquor license, Mr. Mayor.
Why don't we pull item A1 for the Hash House and go ahead and approve it?
Yeah, I'd go ahead and approve C1A.
C1A.
A1, I'm sorry, C1A1.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item C1A2?
2 and 3, and then B1 and C1. And I don't know if we have the applicants here today, but I would like to ask them, Mr. Mayor.
What do we have on our agenda later today?
We do have the...
I mean, if we dealt with that, then, and we did these after, then wouldn't they apply to this, these approvals?
That's what I want to know from the city attorney's office.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. When the DAC comes forward to you with recommendations, council will determine what recommendations that it will direct staff to pursue, and then we will have to do the legwork to change ordinances and things like that, so they will not immediately be effective.
That's, but we can ask them voluntarily, can't we? I mean, that's what we did for the last one.
You can request someone to voluntarily do it, you can't require them to do it. But we're not required to approve it either. Tracy Chase, yes, but your approval can't be held arbitrarily or capriciously, so that's of concern. Do we have any of the applicants here? Mike?
Michael Chump, Business Relations Manager. Yes, I believe we do have, and I wanted to just point out, C1A3 is a bar, so I don't know if you want to...
We should go ahead and...
Move forward with that one or not. That applicant is here. I believe Town Liquor and Smoke.
John Eliescu's application is for a bar.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and approve that one as well. I'm sorry, I missed that one.
I have a motion, I have a second.
C1A3.
Well, I'm curious, though, even with the bar, would they, if we come to any agreements this afternoon, would they have to follow under those agreements?
Tracy Chase... Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. They would be pre-approved prior to that other process being put into place. So they would not have to follow what the DAC, um, puts forward.
So why won't we wait to approve it until after we, we approve the recommendations from the DAT then?
But how long is it going to take us to implement those, those recommendations? I mean, those don't go into effect today.
No, those recommendations, we'd have to change ordinances or, it depends which ones you choose or direct us to do.
And if you applied, if you applied for the license prior to us approving the changes, are you subject to the, the requirements prior to the license or prior to the changes or...
Once the changes are in effect, we could look, depending on what you give us direction on, to determine whether or not on renewal of the license they would apply. There is a possibility there, but we're not certain which items you're going to choose to pursue, so.
Craig Skoff from the City Attorney's Office also. And basically, I think your question is, is probably correct, that the laws that are in, uh, in effect right now would be the ones that are applicable to the application that is before the council now. And a decision has to be supported by substantial evidence. It can't be arbitrary. Uh, if there is evidence that they, uh, that supports a denial, then certainly it can be denied. And reasonable time to, um, uh, gather additional evidence. If there's some direction to, uh, look into it, could certainly be upheld as a, uh, not being arbitrary also.
Anybody here from Town Liquor and Smoke?
Both the applicants are here. Which one would you like, would you like to...
Town Liquor and Smoke, please, first.
You have a motion on, uh, John Eliescu.
Oh, we do?
You had a motion and a second.
I, I have a question on that one. Is there a, a building permit pulled on this to actually convert it into a bar?
It's already an existing bar.
Is it?
Yeah, upstairs on the second floor.
Oh, upstairs. So this is the same one that's there already?
Yeah.
Correct.
So then what, is this a change of ownership then? This is just, if it's already a bar, why isn't it licensed as a bar?
It's, it's, it's an existing bar that just hasn't been active and hasn't been licensed.
Upstairs at 195?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
What's the name of that?
What it used to be called.
Really? Okay.
Way back in the 80s.
On the corner of Secretary Virginia.
I mean, I mean, but we all know that the reason they're coming in now is they don't want to have any regulations. That's what's happening today. So if we approve it, that's what we're approving. They don't want to, you know, they don't see what's, they don't like what's coming up and they don't want to have to approve them. I mean, it's been vacant. It hasn't been a bar open for how many years?
The applicant's here as well.
Dr. Eliescu here?
He was here.
He was here.
He was here. I don't know where.
Why don't we just postpone it till we hear, um, we do our public hearing at 2 o'clock and then we'll decide what we do from there. I'm okay with waiting.
That's fine. I'll go ahead and withdraw the motion, Mr. Mayor, and wait till after 2.
Withdraw the second also?
Yes.
And you still want to hear from the other two applicants?
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Mohan Rajput. I'm here for liquor lessons.
I, I just have a question. Would you be willing to voluntarily agree not to sell drug paraphernalia in your store?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then the New Fireside Market, are they here?
Yeah, I think Mr. Singh's here.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. I just want to make sure that, um, the applicants know we will have, have a need to follow up with paperwork that they'll have to sign. And it won't just be a voluntary oral agreement. It will be a written contract.
Did you hear that, sir? Did you hear that? That we'll get you a written contract for that?
Come, come up to the mic again. Come up to the mic again. Y'all just stay right there a minute. We'll be right with you.
Sorry?
You've given a verbal agreement, but our City Attorney's Office has to, to write something up for you to sign that you'll agree not to do that? So you just understand that? That's okay with you? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Now.
And I would have the same question for you gentlemen. Would you agree not to sell drug paraphernalia in your store?
Yes.
Okay. And, and the City Attorney will, will give you an agreement that you'll sign not to do so?
Is it mandatory for all businesses in downtown to sign it that they're not going to sell it, or it's just voluntarily?
Well, I, I, we're gonna, we're gonna have the meeting at 2 o'clock, so that's my intention. Uh, I, I think, I think that if someone's going to come in for a license, they shouldn't be able to, a liquor license, so.
We, we are not coming to get a new license. We're just purchasing existing business. And whatever they are selling, that's all we're going to sell. We're not adding any new stuff in it.
That, that's not the issue. The issue is, is selling the, the drug paraphernalia, the pipes, those types of things. You're, you're agreeing today not to sell them?
Yeah, we won't sell it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Fraser, you want to give me a motion on both those?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and approve, what was it, C, A1?
C1A.
C1A2?
C1A2 and 3.
And C1AC.
3.
C1C1.
Yeah, C1A3.
I think we have C1A2, Town Liquor and Smoke, correct?
Yes, and, and C1.
And C1.
C1. For New Fireside Market with, with the voluntary conditions that, uh, they've agreed to that they're, they're going to sign.
Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
C1A, C1, um, A3, are we going to continue that until this afternoon? Okay. C1B1 was approved, correct?
No, that was a, that, we made a motion to approve that. That's a restaurant going into Harrah's Club.
Just to be safe, I'll go ahead and move to approve C1B1.
Have a motion second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Any questions, Mr. Guston? All right, proclamations. Where is the proclamation? We got the... You got the proclamation, chief?
Hugo's here.
Yeah, sorry, Deputy Chief Dave Evans. Yeah, Victor here is from Senator Reed's office, and he's going to, um, recite the proclamation for, uh, our retired Sergeant Walt Frazier.
Sergeant Frazier.
Uh, for the record, Victor Mercado with the Office of United States Senator Harry Reed. I'm here to present Walt Frazier with a certificate of senatorial commendation from the Senator. Uh, in recognition of your almost 22 years of service to the citizens of Reno and Northern Nevada, and in appreciation of your dedication to curbing the impact of gangs in our community. The best wishes on your retirement. Signed, United States Senator Harry Reed. Congratulations, Walt, and enjoy retirement.
Mr. Frazier. Mr. Frazier, would you like to say something, sir?
Um, I would just like to thank the citizens of Reno for giving me an opportunity to, to do the job I did for 22 years. Um, I love Reno PD. Um, it's the greatest agency I've ever seen. Um, I just want to thank the officers, uh, the command staff for the job they do. And thank council for the hard job that you do in making the decisions you have to make. And, um, I just want to say thank you. It's been a good 22.
Thank you. I heard you had a real nice, uh, retirement party and, um, they told me it was very nice and, uh...
It was, and we'll talk about your comments.
Well, I see those stakes paid off and still work very well.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Really appreciate your service and dedication. Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys got to really watch it when you make a comment about a guy. Uh, because he, I can tell by the look in his eyes, he really wants to talk to me about my comments, so y'all need to be careful with that. All right, Mr. Fraser.
You got our calendars?
I do have calendars.
All right, whereas April 2011 marks the 43rd anniversary of Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, the Federal Fair Housing Act, which provides equal opportunity for all Americans in the sale, rental, and financing of housing, and prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, or national origin. And whereas the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988 added familial status and handicap to those classes protected by Title VIII, and added strong new rights, remedies, monetary penalties, and judicial and administrative enforcement procedures. And whereas it is a solemn and sworn duty of the government at all levels to protect and defend the rights of all its citizens and oppose housing discrimination whenever and wherever it occurs. And whereas illegal barriers to equal opportunity in housing, no matter how subtle, that diminish the rights of some of our citizens, diminish the rights of all. And whereas the Silver State Fair Housing Council actively works to ensure equal housing opportunity for all people in the Truckee Meadows to freely choose where they want and can afford to live. And whereas the City of Reno supports the efforts of Silver State Fair Housing Council and all other agencies pursuing fair housing. Now therefore, on behalf of Robert A. Keschel, Senior Mayor of the City of Reno, Nevada, do hereby proclaim April 2011 is Fair Housing Month in and for the City of Reno, and urge all citizens to join us in recognizing Silver State Fair Housing Council and its importance to our community. Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Can I say absolutely?
Very briefly, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, uh, thank you so much, again, on behalf of our Board of Trustees and our staff, for your ongoing commitment to affirmatively furthering fair housing in this community. Uh, we do lots of different work under lots of different grants. But one of our favorite activities is our Fair Housing Month poster contest. And you can see many of the entries out here in the vestibule. They'll be here through the month of April for Fair Housing Month. Uh, I will trade with you, Ms. Fraser. Um, we do have a plaque from our Fair Housing Awards, uh, thanking the City of Reno for your ongoing support for the poster contest. You will all be getting calendars with our winning art, uh, in the fall. And we appreciate again so much all you do for us. Uh, I have some of my minders from the City of Reno here. And I just get terrific support from staff and I really appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything. Appreciate it. All right, um, now we go to public hearings, item F1. Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, five notices was given, no correspondence is received.
All right. Bring it back to the table.
Move to uphold the recommendation of the planning commission.
Have a motion second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item F11.
Resolution number 7566, case number LDC 1100038, Southeast Neighborhood Plan Pioneer Parkway Holding Company. Resolution to amend resolution number 5673 by adopting a change to the land use and the Southeast Neighborhood Plant elements of the Reno Master Plan as approved in case number LDC 11-00038.
Have a motion reverse second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose...
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, it's a motion to adopt. Sorry for the interruption.
Excuse me, motion to adopt. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ordinance item G1.
This is ordinance number 6181, and ordinance authorizing an amendment of ordinance number 5884 relating to the outstanding City of Reno, Nevada taxable lease revenue bond series 2006, providing other details of connection therewith, and providing for the effective date.
Have a motion, have a second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion. Votes, uh, 51. Yeah, 51. Uh, item, uh, resolutions, item H1.
Resolution number 7567, resolution to reapportion the assessments for the City of Reno, Nevada, um, 1999 Special Assessment District Number 2, reapportionment number 9 for retract.
Okay, have a motion, have a second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Show the vote unanimous. Item H2.
Resolution number 7568, resolution fixing the time when objections to the assessment role for the City of Reno, Nevada, 2009, Special Assessment District Number 1 will be heard, and causing such role to be filed with the Office of the City Clerk.
Have a motion, have a second. Have a second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H3.
Resolution number 7569, resolution granting approval of 130,000 to 24 arts and culture organizations for fiscal year 2011-12 project grants.
Motion?
I'd like to move to adopt with the changes I gave you in front of you.
Okay.
It's the same $130,000.
Oh, okay, yes, all right. Motion with those changes. Have a second. All in favor say aye.
Um, I, I...
I haven't seen anything else.
Oh, I'm sorry. What it, what I did was I moved some of the money around from things that are happening next spring to things that we talked about at our retreat that we wanted to support, uh, the Black Rock Arts Foundation and some of the senior programs that I thought we should support a little bit more. The, uh, Sierra School of Performing Arts and, uh, Bela Voce and the Sierra, uh, the Holland Project for youth and, and, uh...
Okay. Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
I'm sorry, second.
Have a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H4.
Resolution number 7570, resolution granting approval of $62,350 to 15 arts and culture organizations for fiscal year 2011-12 cultural art grants.
Have a motion second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H41. Approval of the agreement? All right, second. Have a second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Uh, item H5.
Resolution number 7571, resolution declaring the City of Reno's intention to annex territory identified as Tier 1 annexation areas in the certified 2010 through 2017 City of Reno Annexation Program and further described by the attached accessor parcel numbers, which are Exhibit A.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H6. Have a motion second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ordinance standard, City Manager, item J2.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Mayor, council members.
I'm Kevin Knutson, interim city manager. Excuse the frog in my throat. Uh, last Thursday on the 31st, Jill Olson and I attended a meeting of the Committee on Local Government Finance, which is an advisory board to the Department of Taxation, to give them an update on our plan of corrective action for the issues that were notified in our submission of our CAFR for this year. Uh, we had about an hour discussion with the committee where we went over the different issues that were in our notes, 19 and 20 of the CAFR. Uh, we discussed our approach, uh, for the corrective actions. And then we heard some discussion by the committee on two different issues. The first one was on the timing of... issues. The first one was on the timing of certain revenues and expenditures in relation to NRS three fifty-four-six-one-one-eight, and they will be hearing that at a future session of the committee, and we will get more feedback on that in the future. And then there was also a discussion of the debt position of the city and the revenues pledged to that debt. We got a letter yesterday that I sent out to you from the Department of Taxation that gives a summary of that meeting. All of the items in there are consistent with the corrective actions that we had submitted to them, and we're in complete agreement that we will make those changes in the future. And we will be going back in ninety days to show them exactly how we implemented that plan, how successful we've been, and we will bring back a complete debt schedule and all the revenue projections that they have asked for. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, Mr. Manager, on the, the letter from Taxation, one of the things, I guess, that concerned me was the paragraph towards the end, on the second page, the second one, where the committee had expressed concern about the general fund fixing the problem of other funds with negative fund balances, Kevin. When is the, those approvals from council, the presented plan of action, where we have to actually approve it, come back to us?
That will come back through the budget process, and we'll call them out individually so that you can see exactly what changes that we're suggesting.
And then the, when it talks about the unrestricted net asset amount of a hundred and nine million deficit is a significant increase over prior years, why is that?
If I could ask Jill Olson to come up and describe what makes that up, my understanding is it's mostly unfunded liabilities, but I believe that she could describe more accurately what is contained in that number.
Yeah, if it's heart and lung and--
I believe that's the case.
For the record, Jill Olson Finance, yeah, the, the net, net assets deficit amount that they ask us to explain, that is largely attributable to liabilities for which we have no offsetting asset, largely the workers' comp fund liability, which is the heart and lung presumptive liability, the OPEB, the post-employment benefits, the additional liability, just for last year alone, was an increase of twenty-one and a half million dollars. The Cabela's Star Bonds, our contribution on that was a thirty-two million dollar liability. Just, we just have to carry that on our books as a liability, even though it's not a cash outlay, our contribution.
What is that?
The public improvements that we made for that project to that intersection.
But they're responsible.
Absolutely.
So, this is just really a bookkeeping--
Right, we just booked that liability.
--mechanism when we see the hundred and nine.
Right.
And then, I guess, just a question for the, the council and, and the city manager on this, because it is complex. We're getting a lot of questions from the public, and it's similar to what we did on Retract, Mr. Mayor. I do think we should put charts out, out in front of, of chambers, and we need to show the different bonds, where we are in paying that debt service, but also the, the general fund, where we are with the general fund expenditures and revenues, where we are on paying back the bonds, Mr. Mayor. And I do appreciate, Kevin, you posting that on core for the employees to see. I think that's really important, but I think we need to do something for the public to see. And we have a lot of different bonds, and, and it's very complex and very confusing. I mean, we have several different bonds on Retract, we have the bonds on the event center, we have bonds for the street funds and the sewer projects, and I just think that, that we really need to go out there and, and let people know where we are with those bonds, the funds, the, the types of funds that are covering those bonds, but also a pie chart for, for our general fund expenditures as well. And, and maybe that's a future agenda item, Mr. Mayor, but I think we need to start doing that, and, and with the overtime, quite frankly, where we are with the overtime. I'm sure you're getting the same emails that I am, Mr. Mayor, but we need to let the public know that we're on top of this, and we're tracking these things.
Well, and we are on top of it. You know, what's really amazing to me is we've sent this CAFER report in. I've been mayor for eight and a half years now. We've sent it in every year and never gotten a letter from the state saying we were doing anything wrong or anything. It was us that went to them and turned in. When Ed Finger was here, he pointed these out to us, and we reported them, just like he, he said we should. And so, you know, and we had one member of that board that brought up the debt service, and that wasn't even on the agenda, without even knowing about it, and I think you did a great job of handling it and working with it. But, you know, one thing about the city council, we know where the money is, we've got to do better accounting of it and show it and have more transparency, but the agency that kept criticizing the more, us the most, has had four embezzlements. So, I, I'm a little reluctant when I hear from those people.
Yeah, and I think, Mr. Mayor, you bring up a good point. There's been no, the funds that were transferred essentially went to, to employees, to keep people employed. There is no embezzlement of funds that went outside the city. We don't have those issues. However, there are issues in regards to accounting practices. They need to be changed. I think the audit is going through that, and, and those things need to be brought back to council in the future, and, and I do think it's got to be transparent. We've got to have this on the website, we've got to have stuff come back to us, but I think you bring up a good point. There's been no funds that have been taken outside the city, no employees have embezzled funds for personal use. These are funds that essentially went to keep people employed. That's the majority of the, the general fund expenditures. However, it needs to be fixed.
Oh, absolutely, and I think that's what we're working on. We've all agreed to bring in the outside auditors and everything. Ms. Ashiff, do you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted staff to confirm on this unfunded liability for heart and lung. It's my understanding, no local government is doing that. I mean, it's virtually impossible to fund that potential and cruel, and I just want to at least put that on the record, that we're not the only local government is kind of suffering through that particular unfunded liability.
For the record, Jill Olson Finance, that's correct. It's a huge liability for all local governments. Some local governments are, are able, I believe, to fund the annual required contribution, which is a much smaller number, but the total liability, the long-term liability, is not a funded amount.
Okay. That's all right, Mr. Mayor.
Isn't it also true that other, every other city and county has used one-day transfers and stuff like that? We're not the only one?
There, there are many municipalities and other local governments who use the one-day do-to-do-from transactions.
Right.
Yes.
So, just wanted to set the record straight a little bit, that we've sent this CAFER in and never heard a word from the state, and we turned ourselves in, and somebody wants to blow it up.
But, Mr. Mayor, it's problematic that we had this auditing firm who did not put that in the management letter. And, and, and we do pay money to go out and have an outside auditor come in and, and audit the city's books, and the fact that they didn't put that in the management letter, and she stood here at a city council meeting and said there was nothing, it was a totally clean report, I think that's problematic. That's why we go out, that's why there's the check and balances system, and for that auditor not to come forward, and, and we're getting new auditors. So, I think that's something that, that's a positive that's come out of this.
That's right.
But they did not come forward at the council meeting, nor was it in the management letter. It was on page, I think, one hundred and two of the CAFER.
That's right. Ms. Zadra.
Jessica, as it relates to having it out in the foyer, you might remember that I requested a year, two years ago, for us to have our budget, the status of our budget displayed out in the foyer, and we did that for a while, and I'm told by staff that when they had to eliminate the people in our graphics department, that, that was something that they couldn't accommodate anymore. So, minimally, if it's not going to be something that's graphically exhibited, at least in the, the same report that we get, and maybe have it available at the, the desk, if anyone wants to come and look at it, minimally.
And have it on the computer system.
That's easily solved. It could just be a regular, it doesn't have to be reprographic. We have a TV screen out there. They could just show a computer PowerPoint every so often and--
That would be good, too.
--display all this stuff that would do the same thing.
And the same with the budget, yeah, Sharon. That would be a good idea.
Okay.
One more thing for Sharon Spangler.
All right. Any other discussion on J2? Chair'll entertain a motion to accept the report? Second. Have a second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item J3. Discussion, potential direction to staff regarding the scope of work for Chris Forrest Armstrong. Ms. Razzie.
A couple of things that I have on the cost to do the, particularly the fire department, where they're going to, they wanted to go back, at least in this one, from July first of oh-five to June thirtieth of two thousand and ten, and look at every employee under that scenario. And they do say here later that maybe we want to considering a sampling approach. As I look at even our two thousand and ten wages, it's, it's varied that we had, like, fire captain, we had anywhere from someone getting thirty-seven thousand in overtime down to someone for two hundred and thirty-seven. So, I would think that we could just give them those reports and sample, like, the top twenty percent of each group. There would be, you know, there's no reason to go look at someone who only has two hundred and thirty-seven dollars in overtime to spend that time looking at why they did that overtime. But if we just made sure that every group was looked at, and you just take the top twenty percent of what actually was used, if we're going to look at that overtime, and then if it gets to be bigger, then we could have that go bigger. But that may drop that cost. Instead of twenty-seven thousand, we can get it down to maybe ten or eleven or twelve or something.
Ms. President.
The one thing that wasn't in here, and just reading over the memo, was on the inner fund transactions. I, I want specifically in the audit, when they happened, dates on those, and that is not provided for in the scope of work, and, and that's very important to me.
You asked for the date and signature, didn't you?
Yeah, I asked for the date. I think what the accounting firm is saying, Mr. Mayor, is that, yeah, in, in the paper trail essentially on, because if this is going to be corrected, that's got to be identified in the system, but I wanted the, the dates of when these transactions happen, because then we can do some follow-up based on those dates, whether it's email communications or other things.
All right. Ms. Ashiff, do you have anything?
Yeah, one thing, to Dave's point, to clarify with the auditors, because when they go through and they sample, they have materiality thresholds, so they're not going to waste the time on a couple bucks. So, I just need to, I know it's not really specifically set out here, but it wouldn't hurt to confirm with them, because that would answer Dave's question.
Yeah, the original one, it says they'll do everybody. It says, if you want to, we'll do the sampling. I guess what I'm saying, do, let's do the sampling.
Exactly.
And if it leads to something else, then we'll do more to go somewhere else.
And staff did want to give Susan Schler for the record, staff did want to give council some options, some lesser cost options. So, if I understand correctly, you would just like the top twenty percent overtime earners to be looked at for that same period of time?
Are you looking into emails and everything else?
First, you have to identify why.
Okay, all right. Chair'll entertain a motion now? Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item J4. Discussion, potential direction to staff regarding possible ordinance or zoning, ordinance amendments to address regulating drug paraphernalia, tattoo pariahs, packaged liquor, and restricted gaming.
Mr. Mayor, the drug paraphernalia is, is my portion of this one, something that we had talked about quite some time ago, and Alex has brought forward kind of a plan of how we can approach that, and then at one of our prior meetings, you had brought up the, the tattoos and the packaged liquor, so--
Is Alex here? Yes.
I, I don't think Alex is going to be here till two, but also on the gaming, and I don't know if, if staff is following this, but what's going on with, with Dottie's and the NRA, that particular issue, and I, I do happen to agree that we need to look at that. I agree with you. I think that what's happened is you're, you're setting up these little slot shops in neighborhoods when it's supposed to be a secondary use. Well, if you go into those places and check them out, they're anything but a secondary use. They're not even serving food, it's not a restaurant, they're, and so I think we need to look at those standards. It's similar to what Councilwoman Zodra did when we had the, the issue with the wall, and, I'm sorry, Sierra Gold, but I think that, and I don't know if staff's tracking what's going on there, but I think we're, we're going to have to get a handle on that, or we're going to have these parlors open, opening in every other neighborhood in the city.
Why don't we bring, why don't we bring this up when Alex is here at two o'clock? Is that okay with y'all? Okay. Mr. Lorton, is that okay with you? Have we moved that? You wanted to speak. You want to speak now, or you want to wait until two o'clock? You can come on up.
Counsel, my name's Eddie Lorton, for the record. And then also, see, this is more of those moratorium things, so people can't do business. As you can see, they're trying to push everyone to the casino. So, that's why I'm glad it's a council instead of one people making the decision here. You know, different people have interests on different businesses in this community, and, and I don't see anything wrong with people having restricted gaming licenses. A lot of the time, people are going out of little markets, they drop their change in on the way out, and then it costs the state revenue. And why should they have to go to a casino? It's just continuous, I don't know. It's legal in this state. I don't agree with the tattoo parlor moratoriums. Last time we checked, like before, these are legal businesses. So, for us not to let people do legal businesses and try to limit them, tell us where we can do them, how many we can have, like I said, free enterprise is gone if we keep doing this. So, and I'm just, my concern, I have buildings, you can't rent them out, because of constant hurdles like this, and I don't agree with it, but, so the tattoo parlors, and I don't believe in limiting restricted gaming. If you have the fifteen machines, as per the law's always been, I don't see a problem with that, and it's more revenue people wouldn't put in these machines. But I don't know why we keep pounding this casino drum. It's great. I like it when people, they don't just come here for casinos like a lot of people think. They do come here for casinos, but they also come here for the swanky little bar after they lose their money, they want to catch a ballgame, go fishing, go to Tahoe. It's everything we have together is why they come to Reno, not just one or two things. So, I don't know if we're trying to turn into part of the Bible Belt or not, but this is Sin City, kind of, and that's how Reno was started, legal prostitution twenty-five miles out of town. I can't believe what's going on here. So, I hope there could be a stop to it, and you can consider the businessperson an investor before you make some of these decisions. Thank you.
Mr. Lorton, I think what the issue is, just so you know--
Yes, sir.
--with the smaller ones, is the state law, at least the way it's being interpreted now, said those are, the gaming is supposed to be incidental to those types of businesses. So, they're legal with already some conditions on them, that they're supposed to be incidental to the business, not the main business. So--
Okay.
By the strict rule of the law, they would be outlawed right now, because they're not incidental. Some of them, up to ninety-two percent of their income is derived from gaming.
Okay.
So, that's sort of what's being looked at at the legislature with NRA and Dottie's in particular, just so, so you know that. I mean, right now, that is what the law says.
How did they get in business in the first place? I don't--
I'm just saying that, I'm not interpreting it. That's the way I understand it right now, is it's supposed to be incidental, and there are people going outside of that, they're, they're leaving off the incidental portion of my business. It's, that's the main business.
If they did outlaw them, though, I don't think it would be advantageous for revenue streams, and just so, you know, this isn't the main reason I'm trying to fight here. I do believe in free enterprise. I know you have rules, but outlawing them or moratoriums, I don't see would be helpful.
I, I don't disagree.
All right, thank you.
So, we will have further discussion on J4 when Alec arrives. Okay. Let's move to J5. Update, discussion, potential direction to staff regarding the budget process for next year.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I have a presentation, a brief presentation I'd like to give. I would like to preface this by saying that this is, some of the information contained in here is tied directly to item B1, I believe it is, in the RDA meeting as well, so I'll be referencing that through my presentation. And I'd like to apologize for taking so long to get this out to you. We received a lot of information very late in the game. We didn't get the report out to you till yesterday. In the future, we will do our best to get it to you earlier, but if you'll, I can't control it, so if the clerk wouldn't mind advancing to the-- But if you'll, I can't control it, so if the clerk wouldn't mind advancing to the next slide, please. First, I'd like to give you a basic rundown on where we're at in the process. This week, I'm meeting with all the departments. They've submitted all their budget requests for next year. We're going through each department. We're looking at what their requests are. We're looking at what their organization is going to look like in the future, because the cuts that we've had to make over the past couple of years have had a very drastic impact on the organization. And we need to look at new ways of organizing ourselves to use the scarce resources that we do have. Those will be completed by the end of this week. Today, I sent you a memo on the strategic plan, and it contains all the information that you gave us back on the January 20th and 21st strategic planning workshop. We'd like to ask you to adopt that, so that we can put priority action plans together based on the budgets that we're putting forward, so that you know how we're responding to your strategic priorities. And then we will be having workshops on May 5th and May 9th. And then the last one is on May 17th, when we need to adopt the budget for final submission to the state. If we're unable to finish all of the work we need to do by May 17th, we could continue that to a special meeting or the last meeting in May. Next slide, please. In the document that I gave you on the strategic plan, you had selected four priorities for next year: financial management, public safety, economic development, arts, culture, and special events. And under each one of those, as you'll see in the document, you gave us some outcomes that you'd like to see. The way we're organizing our priority action plans this year is we're taking each one of those outcomes, and we're describing the different tactics that we're going to use to achieve those outcomes. So you'll have a list of all the different things that all the departments are doing to support those outcomes. Next slide, please. In another memo, I sent you a list of policies that we're going to be reviewing and recommending to council later in this process. A lot of them come out of our discussion with Department on Taxation, the fund balances and reserves, interfund loans, the use of one-time revenues, and debt management. We're going to be reviewing what we currently have in our books and looking at best practices and working with Kefory to determine how we can improve our financial management and our reporting. I've also asked Jill to look at all the financial management and internal control policies that we have. And the Office of Management and Budget is reviewing all management policies related to staffing and finance. Next slide, please. Since we came to you on February 28th with our initial estimate of what the year-end was going to, the next year was going to look like, we've had some changes that are going to impact the deficit. We had talked about a $4 to $5 million deficit. We're seeing a very large impact on the redevelopment agency, and that will be part of our presentation a little bit later today. But we have to decide whether or not we will use general funds to support RDA activities or not. At this point, I'm including an amount in next year's plan in case you do decide to go in that direction. It is by no means a foregone conclusion, and we're just trying to plan for the worst-case scenario here. The Gulf Enterprise Fund also looks at this time like it may need additional support, because revenues are not sufficient to support the cost. There have been additional revenue declines that we've been seeing that we need to take into account, and we're being very conservative with those, because we believe that over the past couple of years, every time that we've made an estimate, it's actually come in lower than what we thought. So we've been extremely conservative with those. There are two unknown issues coming up. The first one is the federal budget, and in the House, they're looking at several measures that could reduce CDBG by as much as 60% or even more, according to some people. We don't know where that's going to end up, but we are tracking that and paying careful attention to it. The mayor sent a letter in support of keeping community development block grants in place for the future recently. We also have not included any impact on the state budget balancing process. At this point, we don't know of any particular ones. We are tracking all of the bills that you will hear about in legislative update, and we will let you know if any of those will have any impact on the city. So in the budget requests, so far, all the departments have stayed within the targets that we set for them, that were based on the cuts that we made this year. But that includes no improvement in service levels. And this is a very important point. We've cut quite a bit of service this year to balance the budget, and next year, we are not anticipating any increase in service levels. We've included the costs from the Gulf Enterprise Fund and RDA in case that's the direction that we get. We've included all the information from last week's property tax pro forma. We have continued to see stability in C-tax, which leads us to believe that our initial projections will hold for next year. But there were about a half a dozen other revenues that are showing declines, and we've taken that into account in next year's budget. Next slide, please. So on February 28th, we thought it would be around $5 million. But with all of the different changes that I just described to you, we now believe that our deficit for next year will be about $10 million. We're working with staff on the collective bargaining process, and we've been discussing a 7.5% reduction in salaries. That would roughly equate to 7.4 million. That's our goal. There are other things that we're asking for that could make up several hundred thousand dollars more. And if we decide to fund RDA expenditures through the general fund, my suggestion would be that we reduce our capital investments that we had set at $6.5 million for next year down to four, so it doesn't have any impact on any of the departments. That is my report at this time. We'll be coming back in the future with the detail of the service levels that we will have in this budget at the budget hearings. If you have any questions.
Thank you. Councilman Frazee. On that last slide, Kevin, can you put back to the chart where we're saying that the reductions we're asking for the employees would be 7.5 million? I want to be, 7.4. I want to be really clear that I understand this too, because last year in 2010, our gross pay in the city of Reno was a little over $100 million, not including PERS. So if we ask for a 7.5 reduction, that would be 7.4 million. But if I add PERS on to that, that we would save on that reduction, that would save actually another $2 million, I believe. So I want to make sure we're out there what we're asking. Because to the city, it would save us more money. If this came off the base rate, the 7.4 million, we would save the PERS on top of that.
Yes, because of the reduction in force, our total payroll next year is projected to be around 72 million in the general fund. Seven and a half percent of that is about $5.4 million when we include the roll-ups. That's what gets us to the 7.4.
So we're still asking for 7.5% in actual wage reductions, and then PERS and benefits would be on top of that. That would be a savings to the city, but wouldn't cost the employees anymore.
That's correct. It's the salaries and any adds to pay or any benefits that are in their contracts, such as longevity or education, you know, whatever they have that is an ongoing annual payment. That's where we would be looking to have permanent reductions.
But we're looking at from only the ones that are PERS compensable.
That's correct.
Because like, uniform allowances are not PERS compensable.
That's correct.
Okay. And I'd like to make, just make a comment made earlier, and that was that, I understand the target, the seven and a half percent, but I'd like people to be as conversant with the percentage as they are with a hard number. Because I think the hard number is what we're ultimately going to come down to when we go through the budget process. You say seven and a half percent, and it does make sense, but it's still, we're looking at 7.4 or 10.1, whatever that number is, and it's estimated to be at approximately seven and a half percent.
Yes, sir.
Is that, are you following my trend of thought?
Yeah, we can, not only can we share with people what the overall goal is, but we can break that down into what that would be per bargaining unit as well.
And I'm just saying that, so there's conversant with that, seven and a half percent, and then people do their own math, and it changes. I may do something that, and you do the same thing, and come up with a different number, but we're ultimately looking at a hard number.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilman Frazee. Well, just for everyone to know, we just got the data on the 2010 information, and the average employee, on my account, everyone in the city of Reno, the average employee of the gross went up $7,000 at 7.86% last year. Now, part of that is because we did layoffs, and when we lay off, we lay off the bottom. So that's going to make the average go up. So that's part of what can be accounted for. But people did get raises in the city of Reno last year. A lot of people got raises. So it's not that we're still going back to 2009 and asking people to take a seven and a half percent cut. We're basically trying to say, let's go back to 2009 levels. That's what we're asking for. I think people also need to know that, that many people got raises in the city last year. Any other questions, Councilman Zadra? Not us. Not us, right.
Mr. Manager, the $4 million reduction for capital investments, what's at risk there?
I don't know the specific projects that Public Works and the other departments were looking at, but we have quite a long list of projects, mostly relating to facility upgrades and roof repairs and things that have needed to be done for quite some time. So it would just mean that it would take us longer to get to some of those projects. I was looking around to see if Mr. Flansberg was perhaps here. Would you have any comment that you could add to that, sir?
And John, in responding to that, roof makes me, first of all, think of Northwest Pool and the condition of that roof. So in the idea that we need to cut, I mean, if the money isn't there, are we also looking at the thing that's going to have the most impact if we don't fix it? And will it injure, you know, will the injury to the budget be much greater by not doing it now and going in when it finally is dysfunctional?
For the record, John Flansberg, Public Works Director. We will be bringing those projects specifically that we recommend, and we will be recommending those that we feel have the most risk if we do not do something. We'll bring those forward as part of our overall $4 million program. We'll also bring a list of those things that were considered, but would be below the line as well. So we'll bring that back to you during the budget process, and we are very much aware of things like the Northwest Pool.
Thank you, John. Councilman Frazee.
Yeah, I guess a question for Kevin, because going back, and I did get that information from Gaila, and I was going through it. It was quite troubling to me, because the presentation we were given at council was that management and confidential's were going to get cuts. But as a matter of fact, if you look at the base pay for all those employees, every single one of them went up, with the exception of the city council did not, and the city clerk did not as well. But everyone else went up. And when we were proposed the budget, what we were proposed is that management was actually going to take a decrease. So I want an explanation how people are getting raises when we were told at the budget, during the budget process, that not only, I mean, not only were they not going to take raises, there was going to be a decrease. So how did they get raises when council froze the paper for performance? How did people's gross pay go up?
Well, I'd like to go back and look at that carefully to give you a fuller answer, but off the top of my head, what I believe happened was, is that the prior year, a raise was given, but then people gave back in furlough, so their actual pay went down. So then when you compare 2009, 10 to this year, it would appear that their salaries went up, even though there was a 0% increase in their salaries. They got more money because they had given back the prior year. But I will, I will research that and get you a complete answer.
Yeah, because during the budget presentation, Kevin, I went back and reviewed the tape. We were actually told as part of the budget savings that there would be that management was taking a cut. And it didn't happen. It did not happen according to what, the numbers that Gaila gave us on the base pay. So I want an explanation. If this isn't happening, I think there should be some follow-up on that, Mr. Mayor? Because we were told commitments that people were going to do these things to balance our budget. The second issue is, you had said in your report that departments stayed within targets. Where are we with fire and the overtime? And, because that department is not within the budget. So, and that's going to be problematic for us, Mr. Mayor, if we're going into next budget cycle, and they're over the budget and overtime. That's, I mean, I mean, that plan needs to come to us immediately, because we've only approved a certain budget, and now that that budget hasn't been followed. So I want to make sure that that's coming back. And then the second question is, on the redevelopment agency, how are we going to go out and ask our employees for a seven and a half percent cut in pay to fund the redevelopment agency? I'm sorry, just philosophically, I think that's wrong. The redevelopment agency was set up to provide increment, and I think that's what's going to get this council in trouble. That is supposed to be a self-generating fund. The assessments have gone down, but how can we honestly go out there and ask employees to take a seven and a half percent cut to fund the redevelopment agency? So I don't know what that number is, Kevin, because it's not in the report, but I'm just telling you right now, from my perspective, I'm going to have a huge issue with that, and I would think the employees would too.
Any other questions? Uh, no. Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Kevin, when we do our budget, I think we're leaving out something, and that's the five fire stations we have round out. We need to figure out how we can get those open, and if that means cuts or whatever we have to do. But to, since they won't go to three-man crews, where we could open up 90% of it, I think we need to, we need to be able to give the chief more units to work with. And I think we're leaving that out of the equation of where we need to make up some of that money.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank your light.
We can move to, if Mr. Mayor would like to, you're back on J six. Okay, J six, the discussion and potential direction to staff regarding the settlement of the municipal court transactions.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Kevin Knutson, and Irm City Manager. Last week, I provided a memorandum that myself and Mr. Fisk, the court administrator, worked on, where we described the history of the discussions between the court and the city about numerous transactions that we had inconsistent figures on. And we spent quite a bit of time with our analysts going back over each transaction, and came to a conclusion through that analysis that the city owed some money back into those funds. Some of it was due to transaction data entry errors, some of it was due to miscommunication about how much transactions should have been. And so the analysis that's on that page shows you all the different areas. They used some of that money to help balance the budget this year, but the remaining amount, $325,510, we're proposing to bring back in a budget augmentation on April 27th to the council. And both Mr. Fisk and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, are there any questions? Councilman Frazee.
Kevin, on this, because we, I mean, and I understand that we owe the funds, but until we have the, and again, council didn't have knowledge of this, and I think in your memo, you said this was going to be corrected in the future. But I think it's premature to do this agreement until we have the budget process and we decide what those cuts are going to be. Maybe that's, that's in the overall budget, is when we go through and we're doing department cuts, maybe that'll get credited towards that amount. Because really, what this amount does is add to the deficit. So I think that we haven't done, the council hasn't approved what that budget's going to be for next fiscal year. We may say, hey, I'm sorry, there's going to have to be different cuts. I think we've got to have that presentation, talk about the things such as the marshals and the other issues. There was the issues regarding the candidates when they came up and spoke about how the municipal court's budget is a lot higher than the justice court. I think we need to have that analysis. I think this agreement is premature, I guess is what my concern is. I think it's good to have this amount and know the figure, if that's the agreement that the municipal court has done, and those transactions have been logged, but I think we've got to have the budget process first, before we determine how that, those funds are going to be allocated.
If I could make one clarification on that, council member. The court will be coming back with a complete budget presentation and additional cuts for next year, but this is all transactions in the past, and it was anticipated in our February 28th budget amendment for this year. What we did not do was get an augmentation for this until we had the final settlement.
So Kevin, would this be closed out this year or next year?
This year.
Okay, so the, so the $325 would make things whole, and it's in this fiscal year?
And then we've also agreed to a number of safeguards, so that going forward, we don't end up in this situation again.
Okay.
Matthew Fisk for the record, Reno Municipal Court. I'd just like to add, I understand, Ms. Frazee, your position on this. I'd just like to add that these fees, the court is charged by law with collecting 10 or so fees that are restricted for certain purposes. And we don't really have latitude with those fees. We have to collect them, code them, set them aside, and only spend them in those areas. So we don't really have leeway with these fees. We could close it out this year.
So Matt, because some of the fees, there has to be expenditures within, I believe, three years, and then the city can sweep those accounts?
If there's no plan in place for the administrative assessment fees, then they can be put back into the general fund. They're to be They're to, to be put back into the general fund after two years. The, the other fee that has a provision like that is the court facility fee. That's after five years, but they revert to the general fund only for the original purposes. It's kind of a, kind of a poorly written statute, because it just goes from one fund to another, but it's used for the same exact purpose forever.
And, and so, how many fees total do you guys have that are collected for specific purposes then?
I'm not sure if it's nine or 10. I could name them off the top of my head. Administrative assessment fees, court facility fees, marijuana fees, collection fees, financial setup fee, giving a defendant more time to pay on a payment plan, probation supervision fees, drug testing fees, security fees, and those are the ones the, the court would hold on to and has to use them for, use them for certain purposes.
So, the other two funds are the only ones that are available based on that criteria for, for general fund expenditures?
Yeah, really, it could be most loosely said that the administrative assessment fee is the only one.
So, when the court gave back the fees to, to help us balance the other, that was, that's within the purview to do that?
Absolutely, yeah. We did not go outside any.
Okay.
Any legal channels to do that.
Counselman Iasi.
Matt, I think it's, it's fair to warn you what we had discussed when we had to replace the judge. A lot of things, you'll be probably doing a lot of work this year. People are asking the caseload of our municipal court judge compared to others. I mean, people are making the, the observation that maybe we don't need four judges.
Absolutely. We, we are looking, comparing our organization to others.
I just wanted you to know that the whole thing's, is gonna be different than the other years.
And I understand, thank you. I'm very aware.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Fisk. Okay, let's move on to...
I think we have to approve it.
We have to approve the, okay.
Second.
Motion, second, further discussion? Anybody, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. We're on J7, Mr. Mayor, the discussion and potential direction regarding the Safer Grant applications.
Okay, item J7. Ms. McKissick.
For the record, Maureen McKissick. Council asked staff, when we were here last week, to get an answer from the Department of Homeland Security regarding the firefighters who were laid off on March 1st and then rehired on March 3 provisionally. DHS responded, yes, they would be in the cohort eligible for rehire. Apart from that, all the information in your staff report is still the most current information available. We're seeking direction at this time on four questions. They appear on the second page of your staff report. Staff is available to answer any questions.
So, if we take this, we, even if we have budget crisis, we can't do any layoffs or anything?
That you could not do layoffs in the fire department. That's correct. For the 24-month grant period.
Mr. Dorch. Your mic on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As, as we, as we look at this, I mean, we hire these 10 firefighters back, and obviously, as the mayor suggested, we have other budgetary constraints. We, we have no ability to reduce the firefighter budget any other way other than layoffs. So, we're, we're stuck. I mean, that's what we've got.
The terms of this Safer Agreement are crystal clear on that point. That would not be an option.
Chief, got a tough question for you here. I, in, the way this is written right now, there's no way I, I could support accepting the Safer Grant. The only way I could accept it is if, if we could get an agreement with the bargaining units, that if we had a further reduction in revenues or an increase in expenses that were uncontrollable by us, that we would have to reduce that budget by that amount, and it would have to come out of salaries and benefits.
For the record, Mike Hernandez, Reno Fire Chief, that would be an option. As a point of clarification, this is a...
What are we calling this, the letter?
Yes, it's a point of clarification, and, and thank you, Chief. You are not accepting the grant today. What DHS has asked for your responses on are accepting the terms of the grant agreement that would be coming if you answered yes to these questions. This is sort of a pre-approval.
I mean, the first question, the first question you give us, though, is if you are selected for a Safer Grant award, would you accept?
That's the biggie.
I mean, you're saying we're not accepting it today, but we're telling them we'll accept it.
What you are doing is laying the groundwork for an acceptance. The answers to these questions...
Well, let me ask you this. If we answer that yes, and then we're awarded the grant, and we say no, what happens?
It would be within your legal purview to make that determination. You essentially don't commit to it until you answer to the agreement itself, but the answers to these questions will determine whether or not you get the award that you answer yes or no to.
Right, and that's, that's my point. I mean, we're basically telling them today that if we're awarded it, we'll accept it.
In my, again, Mike Hernandez, Reno Fire Chief, from my past experience with the grant, the Assistance Firefighters Grant Office, there's always been a significant lag between the time an organization requests a grant and the time that the federal government goes through their process. Typically, it can be anywhere from three to six to eight to 12 months, sometimes as much as 18 months, and they send out this letter as a means to, you know, solicit feedback from the cities, has anything changed? Are you still in a position to accept the grant? Are, are you requesting modifications to the grant, et cetera? So, yes, you know, that, this is the intent of the grant. It basically puts FEMA on notice that we will accept it, and we would have 90 days upon formal award to actually, you know, to, to actually accept or reject the grant. Going back to your original question, counselor, yes, if we were, were faced with a significant budgetary shortfall, we would have to immediately engage the, the association to discuss how we would, you know, meet that shortfall in order to...
It's what I'm saying, though, is, is there a way to enter into an agreement with the bargaining units in advance? Because if we don't, if we, if we don't enter into an agreement in advance, then they hold all the cards. They don't have to agree to anything. I mean, they know we would have to go to all the other departments in the city and not touch them.
Yes, and that's probably a legal question. We're, that's, you know, we're talking about a side letter of agreement prior to, and we're in, in the negotiation process right now, so...
Right, I mean, but, so what I'm saying is, I mean, I know they want us to accept this grant.
Yes, sir.
And I'm saying, only, only, I'm only one of seven, but the only way I could accept it is if we had an agreement from the bargaining units, that if we had a 5% reduction in revenues, it would equate to equivalent of a 5% reduction in salaries and benefits from the bargaining units.
That would be a discussion we would have to have with the, with the labor groups.
One thing that I read in Dwight is there, there are no appeals in this thing, and I'm not sure that you can do side letters with it.
Well, that's why, that's what I'm asking. I mean, I don't know, I mean, if we, I mean, clearly, they're saying, take this, take this grant.
Oh, sure.
I mean, they're, they're saying, we need to take this grant, hire these firefighters back, which I would love to do, but in the same token, I'm not gonna tie my hands, 'cause I don't know what the future brings.
Don Christensen, Deputy City Attorney. If you're asking if such an agreement is legal, yes. I mean, obviously, that'd be very specific and commit them to very specific items, so you know in advance that it's a done deal if certain events occur, as opposed to some sort of a, the parties will agree or will discuss or something like that.
Yeah, during the terms of this two years, if, if we have a reduction in revenues or an increase in expenses, if we have another pers increase that's, that we, we haven't anticipated, you know, that, you know, impacts our ability to, to continue on in the way we are, then there would be a reduction in their pay and benefits equivalent to that amount.
It would have to be very specific and make sure there's no loopholes of any sort, obviously, but yes, but I think, and, I mean, generally speaking, it's, it's, it's an agreement that could be entered into.
Well, from my standpoint, I don't see, I mean, if I was gonna move forward, that's the only way I would move forward with it.
I have a hard time moving forward with it that way, but Ms. McKissick, you know more about the grant than anybody. Is there that flexibility in there? Because I didn't see it when I read it.
The Safer Program itself does not speak to what you're talking about, Councilman Dorch. What we know about the flexibility came with the guidance, which was available when we applied. It was not specific on that one point. It is extremely specific on what the conditions would be after award, and so that's what I can speak to. I also wanted to emphasize, following up on something the chief said, the House of Representatives on February 11 voted to rescind this funding completely. That was what went over to the Senate for potential action. The Senate has not indicated that they are willing to cut the program, but it is on the chopping block in the House of Representatives, and so there, there is the off chance the funding may not be available if we delay.
Mr. Hashef.
Yeah, the, I had this similar thought that Dwight is talking about, and so that would be for me under the third bullet, where we have to respond, 'cause I would like to see this thing move forward, so at least we stay in that qualification that we've applied and that we're in the pipeline with the understanding that if certain requirements are not met, then we have the right to say no. So, to Dwight's point, under three, will your department be able to meet this requirement? They don't really care if we have an agreement with the firefighters that says if we see a reduction in either revenues or increases in expenses, and we set that baseline, that they would take a corresponding pay cut so we could make up the difference and keep the firefighters. But do we even have to add that and say, yeah, we can meet this requirement, provided we get this agreement, and we will let you know by the time? Or do we just say yes, and then we try to work that out with the firefighters in the meantime, and if it doesn't work out, then we have the ability to say no?
The second scenario is the correct one. DHS was very specific with us. The answers to these questions are yes or no, not even sentences, yes or no.
Well, as long as you're comfortable that we have the right, or at least the option to kind of work things out with the firefighters and be able to say no. If we can't preserve the firefighters with pay production, pay reductions, then, then I would, I, I think we should go forward. And then, is it my understanding that the four firefighters that we brought back, that would they be included in the group that would be protected?
They would be eligible for rehire. We have that in writing from DHS.
And then, so the grant could pay for them with the understanding, we cannot let them go?
Correct.
And then, is it up to this amount, or do we get, do we get, we're just making the application? They may award something less, right, with the number of firefighters?
The application was for 10 positions, and it was costed out very specifically, down to the dollar. As far as we understand, that would be the award, although DHS always does have the prerogative of making it less if they choose.
Okay. Well, that gives us, I think, the option that we're looking for, because then, if we do have substantial reductions, then ultimately, we can preserve the firefighters within the department and don't have to put everybody else at risk.
Mr. Iasi.
Yeah, I, I understand that we have actually until next week to answer this. We got another extension?
I have, that is not verified. I've requested it from the program manager, and in fact, I've got my so in my pocket with requesting a callback. It hasn't happened yet. So, if you're ready to make a motion today, I would prefer that.
I mean, for me, I'm, I'm a little bit sort of with Dwight, but different with Dwight. We're asking the employees to take a seven and a half percent reduction. I think if the fire union agreed to that now, I would do the Safer Grant. I think that would pay for it if it, if it didn't work. I, I would be willing to, to move that forward to get that reduction.
The seven and a half just balances for the next year. I mean, that doesn't, I mean, if we have reductions next year, then we, then our hands are tied. That's the problem.
I, I understand that too, but there's nothing, what's the incentive for them to take a seven and a half percent cut? This is where we all get something out of it, is they get 10 more firefighters, we get a seven and a half percent cut. I'm just trying to say, if that's what you want, they keep saying they want the Safer Grant, we all would like it. I don't know why they put it in here that you can't do layoffs anymore.
Yeah, but then you're, I mean, I'm just concerned, Dave, your hands are tied for 24 months. I mean, you have, I mean, the seven and a half percent just balances the budget for next year.
I understand.
And then your hands are tied for 24 months.
What I, what I'm looking at, they don't agree to do that, we're giving up $2.5 million. If they don't agree to a seven and a half percent cut, then we're looking at a deficit of $2.5 million. If this is what, it helps get them to agree to a seven and a half percent cut, then I will, I will take that money over two years. That would save me $15 million. I would take the risk. Just, again, I'm one of seven.
What if they hit the seven and a half? Yes. Mr. Frazel.
I guess my, mine's a little different, Dave, 'cause I think we've gotta have a signed contract. We haven't had a contract with the firefighters since, you know, June of last year, Mr. Mayor. We don't have a contract with them. And I think we've got to get a contract before we can agree to this grant. I, I don't see any other way. The 120 days, Maureen, that was the question you had told me last time, so I, I agree with you. If we could move forward and then be helpful about getting...
Actually, let me clarify that. Once we receive a notice of award, a formal notice, we have 90 days to act on it.
So, and, over the next couple months, though, we can see if we can come to terms on, on the contract.
That's true.
Because we, I mean, we don't have a contract right now, Mr. Mayor, so we don't know what, what those costs are gonna be associated with the contract. So, I agree with what everyone's saying at this table, and Councilman Hashef, I agree with you too, but I, I really think we need to have a contract that's, that's signed by both parties in order to move forward with this grant. I mean, we haven't come to terms on that. It's been almost a year. I, and the rate it's going with back binding, and then if we go to binding arbitration, that, that could take another year and a half. So, I mean, we may not have a ratified contract for another 18 months. So, if we don't know what the, the costs associated are gonna be with the contract within the fire department, I just don't know how we give management the ability to do anything. I mean, that's the issue now, the two-hour rules and, and everything else that are driving up the overtime costs. Without those being changed, we're stuck.
We sure are. But it, you know, it bothers me, by answering yes to the first question, the council is making a representation to DHS that the city will commit to the terms and conditions of the Safer Program. I mean, we're telling them when we say yes today, that that's what we do today. We're telling them we will live with whatever they come down with, with rules and regulations. Nothing about concessions or anything else. And my understanding, there is no appeal process for any of that when it comes down.
There is no appeal process for the economic hardship waiver. That's correct. We, of course, cannot even pull the trigger on the waiver until after we've accepted formally, so that's how it sets up.
Do we have time to meet on this next week, or find out some questions, or...
You may have time. I don't have any, the DHS, Department of Homeland Security, was who we were taking our direction from on the timing of this. They have not responded to my request for a continuance, so I don't know the answer to that.
Take Councilman Hashef's suggestion, move forward with the grant, and then, that's why I asked that question last week. If we're awarded and we don't have a, a contract, then everybody knows upfront that we're not gonna be able to accept the grant, because the contract will specify, Councilman Dorch, what those issues are gonna be regarding management, pay, all of those things.
And I like Mr. Iasi's point, the seven and a half percent pay cut.
Well, that's gotta be included.
To me, that's gotta be separate. I mean, it's, it's two separate issues. I mean, we've got it, we've gotta balance next year's budget, regardless of these 10 firefighters. Now, to bring these 10 firefighters back, I, I can't have my hands tied for the next 24 months saying, I mean, if we have a 10% reduction in revenues, what are we gonna do? I mean, we're gonna cut every other department but fire. That's what's gonna happen.
And what really bring, and I, and I wanna bring jobs back, don't misunderstand me, but...
I do too, and that's why...
The four didn't add much to us. It gave us a little more flexibility for callback, but what's the 10 gonna do for us, chief? 'Cause you know you need more than that to run a crew.
Yes, sir, I do. As I stated last, again, for the record, Mike Hernandez, Reno Fire Chief, as I stated at the last council meeting, 1, 10, 20...
You want them all back, I know.
I need them all back. You know...
But it really doesn't save us any money.
Yeah.
Might on overtime.
It, it will actually allow us to look at opening up some stations, and it will impact the, our, our, our overtime, because we'll have more people to work with. You know, I hold the position that if we accept the letter at this point, it does buy us time.
Right.
It, you know, it could buy us as much as 90 days or longer, you know, from the time that we accept this letter to the time we may or may not be awarded to work with the associations to see if we can't reach those type of suggestions that Councilmember Dorch has suggested and Councilmember Iasi. At this point, I think it, it would be prudent to, to look at accepting this, to give us the time to approach these associations with some type of... time to approach these associations with some type of proposal. Perhaps they may, you know, approach the city with some type of proposal. I know that we were in negotiation process as we speak.
Are we hurting our credibility by accepting this and then turning it down later with other federal programs and stuff? Because I've been told that it does.
I think with respect to the Assistance to Firefighters program, there could be an impact if we tell them we would accept and then don't accept. With respect to other federal programs, the discretionary applications that we're constantly submitting, I don't believe there would be an impact on that. There would be more of an impact if we accepted and then defaulted later. That would be something staff would never recommend.
Mr. Guston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I certainly don't encourage going down the slippery slope approach, but I think the general public, from at least the emails I have gotten, doesn't really understand why we don't go ahead and take this money and hire 10 people. Not sure they understand the consequence of the 24 months, but hopefully we can get that message out. But I think what the council people have talked about, it's been crafted at the table in a rough format, is that we would explain where we might be and see what the bargaining group would say about meeting us halfway in doing that. So I would move forward, even though I don't like going down a slippery slope, but I would move forward the recommendation from Councilman Hascheff. I think at least we take a positive step forward, we find out what the options are with, we know where we're committed. And if it comes down to that and we don't get any concessions, I'll just say upfront, I will not vote for it. Because I do agree with Councilman Dorch in that tying our hands is too restrictive for what we're looking for, for a million dollars a year. It's 1.9 the total grant we're looking for. But I would at least approve a motion that would go forward and say, we will accept it, but we're also negotiating with our bargaining group to find out what accommodations both of us can come to.
Can I just ask for a clarification? When you said accept it, what you would be doing today is answering yes to the four questions.
Yes, exactly. Not accepting, but moving forward.
But I wanted to make sure, okay.
Mr. Hascheff.
Yeah, that's the way, and I agree with you, Chief, because if we don't get an extension and we say no today, then I understand it's over. So, but if we say yes, we buy us some time to sit down with the firefighters and try to negotiate some kind of reasonable compromise to make sure we can keep the firefighters through pay reductions or whatever concessions they're willing to make in the Fire Department. And we've got some time to do that. And as you indicated, you're working with them and they've indicated that there is some movement because they would like to see these firefighters come back. And we can also credit the four that we've just retained. So I think there's a potential of instead of a lose-lose by saying no, there may be a win-win if we just get the additional time. So that's why I'm in favor. And then we can work out the details based on what Councilman Iasi suggested and Mr. Dorch has suggested, and they may come back with a counterproposal that is acceptable to staff.
Ms. Edra.
Maureen, I'm not sure that I really heard direction on the question. If we accept it, if we say yes to these four questions today, and after trying to negotiate with the union, we find that we can't budge, and we go back and say no, that we do not want the grant, what condition does that leave us in for future?
Every year for the last, oh, at least 12 years, we have submitted grant applications to the Assistance to Firefighters program. And most years, we receive equipment grants through that. I'm not sure what future years would bring, but if we answered yes to this department for these four questions, and then in 90 days said no, we're unable to move forward with accepting, there is a potential it could prejudice future applications to this program within FEMA.
And I hope that you heard the message that the seven and a half percent really isn't a condition for recovering from the restrictions that the 24 months would create. The seven and a half truly is needed just to balance next year's budget. It can also be used to balance the conditions of this grant.
And I'm assuming if we answered yes to these four questions and essentially came back later for acceptance, that that would in fact be the focus of the discussion.
Mr. Dorch.
You looking for a motion, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, if you want to give one.
Well, I'll make the motion that we move forward and answer yes to the four questions. And I think direct staff to immediately start conversations with the bargaining units as to the conditions upon our acceptance, our final acceptance of this grant, based on the discussions you had here at the table.
Second, and I also don't think it would hurt for staff to have a conversation with FEMA, see what other jurisdictions are doing. They can't, they must be in the same spot we are to at least let them know that there is a condition. I know they're not interested in conditions, but we're negotiating in good faith with our labor groups to make sure we can protect those firefighters that we bring back and see if it will, in effect, or in fact, hurt our chances for future applications if we have to say no.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion. Second, any discussion, Mr. Dorch?
Yeah, and I think it's been clearly stated by several members of the council here. By me voting yes on this right now does not mean I will accept the grant if we can't come to terms with the bargaining units. Clearly, I'm willing to take the risk to at least have those discussions with the bargaining units, but if we can't come to terms, in my mind, there is no way I can accept this grant.
Mr. Guston.
I would agree. That's a good faith proposal on our part as a council. And we need, like we've always said, we need both sides to get together on it. So I will go ahead and support the motion. But again, when it comes back to us and if there's no movement on either side, then I would not support that ultimately.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go ahead and go through the rest of these items here real quickly. Item J8, that was one that we're going to table for two weeks, is it?
I have just two questions.
All right. We can get down to this. I did get a call from RJB, his attorney, asking us to postpone this. But I did have one question on the last part of the staff report because I was a little confused about it, on the funding sources and the contingent sources and the uses. It says here that the, our total funding sources is 2.2 million, but then the RCT, the residential construction tax deal we worked out with them from Somerset would raise That gets us to $246,000. I mean, I'm sorry, 2.46 million dollars. But then right below it, it says our estimated expenditure is 2.506 million dollars. So are we really off by 272,000?
For the record, Jill Olson Finance, we did not include the RCT Somerset 230,000 in the total funding sources because we don't have that money yet. So since we don't have the money, in order for us to include that as a funding source, we would need to go through the medium-term obligation process at a minimum, assuming we can collect that within the 10-year period. That's why we did not include it in the funding sources total because it's not funds that we have available.
Okay, so the attorney's just asked that we postpone this so they could get and meet with us and maybe come up with some other alternatives. And there are a couple of alternatives out there that we can do. So I'll move to, I don't know, it might be easier just to accept the report and put it back when, whenever you guys get something. If I continue, I have to give a date. So I'll move to accept this report.
Have a motion. Second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item J9.
Mr. Mayor, that has a time certainly for...
That's at 4 o'clock. All right, boards and commission appointments.
Move to reappoint Scott Meehan.
Have a motion. Have a second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries. Recreation and Parks.
Move to reappoint Michael Ginsburg.
All right, have a motion. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. I would like to put on the agenda for the next meeting, the blue light program that the, that they were talking about.
Ms. Bohatch.
Ms. Bohatch, what's? Any others you want to put on, Mr. Hascheff?
Yeah, there's two that I need staff to make contact with, two different organizations that had called my office. One is called Kid Safe, which is Kid with Safe with a Z-A-F-E. And I have the phone number for that contact. They would like to make a brief presentation to the council about that program and where they think the city can interface and joint venture with them. And then the other group is Education Alliance. I think they actually also called your office, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And they need probably, you'll have to ask them, Kevin, how long? I think Education Alliance would like at least 15 minutes. And then the other group, probably five to 10 minutes. And I'll give you the details so you can get it on the agenda, Mr. Manager.
Any other items for future?
Mr. Mayor, what I mentioned before, having the financial status of the city, the charts, the bonds and everything on the agenda for council direction, but depending what comes out of this meeting at 2:00 today, too, I'd like an agenda item, getting clarification on the gaming and the Dottie's issue because we have the same issue up here, Mr. Mayor. So I'd like that on the agenda, how we're enforcing that and what it actually says. And Ward Three appointment for the NAB.
Okay.
Next meeting.
Any other items for future agenda? Any liaison reports?
You know, Mr. Mayor, I had a very brief report, but the three people I want to hear aren't here, Councilman Iasi and Councilman Zadra and Kaden Spantievich. But I'll just say it very briefly. At our special events committee meeting we had last, whatever it was, a few weeks ago, we talked about following through on a special committee or assignment, whatever it was. And I did contact Mr. Mike Houghton, who kind of led the charge with the event he had at Washoe Bar. And they do have a coalition. And he's willing to bring that, the representatives of the coalition, be in our next agenda meeting and talk about how he can work with his group and his group can work with the city regarding special events. So I think it's a very positive step forward that we have people who are buying off on special events, who are involved in them in the city, would help give us guidance and vice versa in the city to them as how we want to proceed and how we want to grow in the future.
Okay. Any others? Any other liaison reports? Reports on any conferences or professional meetings? Item L4, Mr. Hascheff and Iasi, resolution donating $850 to Hillside Four Square Church to assist with the community outreach event.
Resolution number 7572, resolution donating 850 to Hillside Four Square Church to assist with expenses associated with their community outreach events.
Have a motion. Second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Discussion potential direction to staff regarding amending the sewer user charges for existing county sewers. Mr. Guston.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I brought this up at discussion, the last council meeting. We talked about, again, for those who may not remember, we're talking about when properties are annexed from the county into the city, there's a difference in the sewer fee of about $8, $9 right now, and the city's making that up. And so what I'd like council to approve, to give staff enough time, more than two hours, to take a look at changing that so that, I know those lines, as I said before, are going to intersect as sewer expenses go up and the fees go up. They will intersect eventually, but right now, the city of Reno citizens are paying for the annexation. I know we had an annexation earlier on here, but I'd like the approval of the council to give staff time to look at that and bring it back to us and resolve that situation.
Have a motion. Have a motion. Second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Resolution of donating $500 for the Reno citizens' senior events and activities. Mr. Guston.
This is resolution number 7573, resolution donating 500 from the council donation funds to Girl Scouts of the Sierra Nevada to purchase Girl Scout cookies for seniors participating in the city of Reno senior events and activities.
Move to approve.
Have a motion. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item L7, discussion potential direction to staff regarding a request for an update from the Flood Management Authority with a comprehensive budget review and performance. Ms. Edra.
Mr. Mayor, in the same way that we're trying to carefully assess all of our expenses and workload as a partner in this, I think we need to see the same from this operation.
Okay. Give me a motion. Is that a motion?
Move, yep.
Have a motion. Second, all in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item L9, recognition of good deeds, positive events. Is that a very long one or are we going to do it next time?
We skipped it last time.
Why don't you bring it up next week? Okay. I know we did, but we got a lot going on today. Okay. L10, update regarding grievance and arbitrations. You have something new or anybody got any questions on any arbitrations or grievances? Not at this time. Okay. Regarding update, update discussion potential direction to staff regarding the progress on consolidation. Mr. Huster.
I can send it to you in a memo if you'd prefer.
That'd be fine. Just send it in a memo and then we'll all get together.
Movement, John?
You got any movement?
Well, actually, we met with the two assistant county managers on the 29th, and we're working on scopes of work for labor contracts, bonds and indebtedness tax rates. Each of us will come up with concepts we think will work under those three topics. And then we're going to outline what we can do, what we think consultants need to do to do an analysis of it. And the county staff already has consultants on board and have offered to let us use their consultants. Once we get the scopes of work and what we think we need consultants for, probably in June, we'll come back to each governing body and see if you want to hire consultants and put the funds into going further with this. So that's essentially what my memo will say.
Okay. Thank you very much. Item L12, discussion potential directing staff regarding progress on the shared services. Why didn't you just say or you wouldn't wear the shoe out?
That's okay. The Shared Services Subcommittee on Building Permits and Business Licenses unanimously of the four of six members that were there approved the recommendations, and they'll go to the full Shared Services Committee at their next meeting. And we are now moving on to business licenses. You will eventually get those recommendations, but essentially, Mr. Mayor and council, what we are doing between the county and city is coming up with the same building codes, almost the same fees, almost the same application, same software for tracking permits, same software for looking at plans, setting up the ability to share staff and then moving forward from there. So we think we've made tremendous progress.
You're going to get rid of all those almost, aren't you?
Well, close, sir. Almost get rid of them, sir.
Okay. L13, update on tracking Fire Department overtime?
Good afternoon. For the record, Mike Carnados, Reno Fire Chief, you have in your packet a staff report that specifies and shows where we are regarding our overtime. In summary, for the most recent pay period, we expended $117,122. Going back and averaging out what our daily use has been, we were averaging approximately 64 hours of overtime per day. This last pay period, that's been reduced to 29 hours of overtime per day, which in essence leaves us approximately $43,000 per pay period for the remaining year. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm concerned about our overtime. I have asked to meet with the acting city manager and members of the budget to discuss what our projections are going to look like for the end, through the end of the fiscal year. We do have some unfunded portions that are in our overtime line item budget. I'm going to be asking our budget analyst to go back and do a comparison of where we were last year and the year before in comparison to our number of staff and do a sort of a best guess projection of where we need to be to get us to the end of the year regarding our overtime. And I hope to meet with Kevin Knutson within the next 10 days through, once we get all of our data compiled and we can give it a best guess shot. As you know, our overtime is dependent on our staffing levels, and our staffing levels are tied to certain contractual obligations that we have, so it's very difficult to project out. It is my intent and my object, it is my intent and my goal to keep as many stations open as possible. We are browning out to eight stations excluding the six Truckee Meadows stations, so it's a challenge. It's truly a challenge. And hopefully, within the next 14 to 30 days, we should come back to council, working with Mr. Knutson regarding where we are... And hopefully, within the next fourteen to thirty days, we should come back to council, working with Mr. Knutson regarding where we are with our budget, where we expect to be, and how we plan to meet our budget challenge.
Okay. Mr. Frazza.
Yeah, I would like our, because really it's the council's policy on the staffing. And, Mr. Mayor, I think this should go on the agenda for next week, because to me, this is still unacceptable. You have, for the first pay period in March, one hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. That's one firefighter every two weeks, Mr. Mayor, when you equivalent, that we're looking at. And so we, I think we've got to curb this overtime for this fiscal year. We're in a deficit for this fiscal year, and so I think the staffing has got to come back to us, because we set the policy on the staffing chief, and I think that's the only way we're going to be able to manage this overtime is based on the council's policy on where our staffing is going to be.
Council member, you are correct. Currently, my only option is to brown out a station. And again, I'd like to remind council, and I know you know this, but we are down to eight stations, down to nineteen seventy-seven staffing levels. You know, we are at a point where I don't have very many stations that I would recommend closing.
The problem is, chief, though, if we go a million dollars over budget now, that's going to carry into more that we've got to cut next fiscal year.
I understand that.
So the way I look at it, we're going to be at more of a critical shortage with stations if we keep the overtime at this pace. And then the analysis of when we go forward and do RIFs, what is that impact? Because again, it seems like it's just driving up the overtime, which is costing us more than having the body here.
When we reduce our staffing, you know, we have no choice but to reduce the number of stations that we have open. You know, again, our staffing is tied to a percentage of number of people per shift. So, you know, it's a complex process, I'll grant you that. And, you know, again, we are at a point where, you know, we're down to eight stations and, you know, we're at the bone. We're at the bone.
I hope that they'll work with us and we can do this. Mr. Azzi.
Yeah, this is, to me, is a sort of refinement of what we're trying to look at here. When I look at the overtime column, chief.
Yes, sir.
And you, right there, it's lumped in the one point five and the two point one. Is there any way we could break that out also to see how much is mandatory callback?
Yes.
Because the mandatory is purse compensable, correct?
Yes, we can do that.
And the other overtime is not purse compensable?
Correct. And this is a twelve-hour rule.
So that's what I want to sort of break it out. So if we're going to track this all the time, I want to see if we get the right columns in here.
Right. For the record, Michelle Hubbs, Senior Management Analyst, in the detail below, the note items for the overtime expenditures, I did a breakout on the one-five and the two-one, and you'll see what's mandatory, what's not, what's purse compensable, what's not. Did that for the-
That was the twelve-two and the one-fifty-seven.
Right, right. So by pay period, since we've been tracking that, I've been breaking it down for you. When we do the full analysis for the year, I can go back for the rest of the year that we've expended thus far and do that same breakout for you.
And is the one point five also purse compensable?
Yes and no. If the overtime is filled within the twelve-hour period, it's purse compensable. If it is not, if it's not within the twelve-hour period, it's non-purse compensable. So one point five, the pay rate for one point five can be purse compensable if it's within a twelve-hour notification, and if it's above that, then it's not purse compensable.
And is there a way that we could break out, and it would have to be easy, though, if someone calls in at just two hours ahead? Or would that be very difficult?
We're working to try to extract some data out of telestaff. Our staffing system would actually timestamp that data when that person calls in or when we're notified of that information. Unfortunately, right now, there's not a cumulative report that does that. We're actually having to look at those days individually, look at all of those instances to see. We're trying to make that better and see if there's something we can do that we can extract that to without going into a lot of work in detail to try to find that.
And my last question is, is do these numbers include the purse, all the rollups, or is this just their base salary?
This is just the base salary.
So we add thirty percent or almost-
Thirty-seven percent. It would show up in the purse.
Thirty-seven percent on top of this?
On top of what's purse compensable for the callback, correct?
So instead of two million dollars, it was, it would actually be?
The part that was purse compensable. The callback pay part that's purse compensable, we'd add the thirty-seven percent. That would show up in the purse line item. I can get you with that information, that detail.
That'd be great, just to sort of, if we can just keep track of that, too. Thank you very much.
Chief, don't your people know we have a problem and we need some help instead of kicking us? Never mind, chief, I didn't, shouldn't, let's go there.
When else are you going to do it, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, no. Mr. George.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kevin, I mean, I know Jessica made the point that if we don't fix this, it's a problem that carries over to next year, but it's really a problem for this year. I mean, we don't have the money.
Yeah, we don't have the money.
I mean, so, so, I mean, to me, if we're going to let them continue to draw overtime beyond, above their budget, we're going to have to lay more people off. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Not necessarily. It depends on how far over it's going to go and what sort of other places we're going to have.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I want to meet with the fire folks to find out exactly what the scope of that is.
So if we're talking a million dollars for the last two months of the year, how many people is that? That's sixty people, right?
Yeah.
I'd have to do the calculation to give you an exact-
I mean, I'm just, I mean, Dave kind of just did them.
This is a problem.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's, I mean, that's a million dollars over a two-month period that we don't have.
Well, the other option that we have, Dwight, is we just say no overtime.
You just say no overtime. You reduce the staffing levels. That's why I said it's got to come back next week.
I mean, but we keep saying it's got to come back next week, but every week we go-
It's closer.
That's why I asked for this.
It's a bigger problem.
I think like Councilman Frazza said, every two weeks is a firefighter laid off.
Firefighter. Every two weeks is a firefighter. That's how much it's costing us.
Well, and we need to look and see, because we're talking about more brownouts and what we do to the, but I'll tell you, the seventy-six firemen that have been laid off, I think that's the total, rough, close to it. A lot of them are willing to volunteer to come back and work and work and reduce wages and everything, so maybe it's something we need to look at, or we need to look at contracting with Spark to fill in or go in private. I'm tired of it.
I mean, but I think, I mean, to try and get this solved in the next fourteen days-
Yeah, it should be on next week's agenda.
We need a solution.
That's why I put it on now.
Yesterday.
Yeah.
We need to know what the plan is.
We can put it on next week.
But we also need to do some backup in case we have to pull the trigger.
Well, I'm just, I mean, I'm worried we're going to be doing another round of layoffs this year.
We are.
Yeah. We don't get this fixed.
This fiscal year.
That's right.
Although I do understand that the chief is in discussions with the firefighters with exactly with respect to this issue. Is that correct?
Hey, chief, welcome to Nevada.
And Mike Cronatus, Reno Fire Chief, and actually, I am happy to be here, believe me.
I know you are.
We are, this is part of the negotiation process, council member, and I do, I do meet regularly, in fact, every Friday, with the leadership team of the association, and we cover a whole host of issues. I know that their membership, they do a lot of what we call straight trades. Rather than taking time off, they get someone else to fill in for them. That is a significant savings for our department. I am, you know, you know, the issue regarding our overtime, where we are, you know, we talk about those things. President Jacobson has been very receptive in going back to his side, or his team, to look at options through the negotiation process at perhaps, you know, bridging some of these gaps. You know, from my perspective, it's a very challenging time, because I have the safety of the community that I must first and foremost consider. I balance that with my contractual obligations, not only with the labor organizations, but with the Truckee Meadows, Fire Protection District. And then that other third ball up that's up in the air is, of course, our budgetary limitation. So it's truly a challenging time. But we do, I do engage in conversations with the association. We don't always agree, but we certainly, you know, put the cards on the table, and they are aware of where we are, what we need to do. And I have to commend President Jacobson. He's been very upfront in coming up with ideas. But again, that process is going through the negotiation system that we're currently in right now.
Chief, for the last seven years, I've been asking in the budget cycle, every year, about the overtime for fire. And we keep hearing discussions are being had. So how are discussions today any different than they were when I asked the question seven years ago?
Well, I can only tell you, I can speak to, you know, for my tenure. And during my tenure, I have an open-door policy with all of the groups, and I do, we show them the books, and we show them where we are, what we're doing. We ask, we, you know, we solicit input and ideas. So far, we've got, we've got a very positive working relationship, you know, the leadership team with the, with the Fire Department and the leadership team of the association. You know, I can tell you that our contracts, our labor contracts are very complex, and they are, they are very interdependent. And when you make a change in one component, it actually trickles up or down to other components that do affect staffing and that do affect the overall cost of running the department. So again, those are things that are being addressed through the collective bargaining process. I would be more than happy to sit and visit with you one-on-one and kind of go into greater detail. But it, again, it's a very complex system where, you know, the components are interrelated.
I would like that, and Councilman George, you bring up the point, and that's why I asked for these reports, because I'm concerned every single year we go through this, every single year with overtime. We just say no overtime, it's that easy. We pick a new, the new staffing levels next week, and we say no overtime. That's, that's the way it's got to be. I don't see why we can't cut it. If we change the staffing policy to say no overtime, then there's no overtime. There is none. In fact, the purse rules say, if you read them, that the callback is not purse compensable for employees hired after July first, two thousand and nine, unless the mayor calls a state of emergency. So maybe that's what we need to go to, Mr. Mayor, is, in order for overtime to occur in this city, that it's got to be declared by you, because this has gone on long enough, this overtime issue, long enough. We were told we got to hire more staff, we hired more staff, didn't make a dent in the overtime. We hired all those new firefighters through the recruitment process, doesn't matter, because what happens, we end up having too many rovers, and as long as this two-hour rule continues to stand, we're going to have these issues until this council takes the stand and says, no more, no more overtime. It's not fair to the rest of the employees and the services that we've got to get done through this organization. If people are going to continue to take advantage of the system and go through this overtime process, then that's what it's got to come down to, in my opinion.
I don't disagree. Comments, anything?
Is it on next week's agenda?
It'll be on next week's agenda. Thank you, sir. Now we'll go to-
Can we take five minutes before two o'clock, Mr. Mayor?
Take a five-minute break, take a five-minute break, then we'll get, apologize being late getting started, but we're going to take a five-minute break.
You're going to come back to J four? Are you going to come back to J?
Yeah.
We can't adjourn this, because we have to go back to the other one.
Does it say adjourn? We're going to take a, huh?
You said break, you're good.
I'm going to take a break for five minutes.
For our Reno City Council, we did delay item J four. Mr. Woodley, we're hoping you would be here. So let's go to J four before we go to the other.
You know what, I'd like to respectfully request if we could do the DAC presentation first, if it's okay with the council, because it's a pretty lengthy presentation. J four.
Which presentation?
J four.
That's where we're going to go to.
No, that's what I was asking, the staff is requesting if we could go do that presentation after the DAC meeting, because my presentation will be lengthy.
Okay, all right. All right, we can do that.
Thank you, sir.
We'll continue the Reno City Council meeting, and we will move to the Downtown Alcoholic Advisory, Alcohol Advisory Committee. So Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Okay, for the Reno City Council, Hashev, absent, Guston.
Here.
Zadra.
Here.
Frazza, absent.
Here.
Azzi.
Here.
Keshel, absent. And for the Downtown Alcohol Advisory Board, James Brown, absent.
Here.
Kevin McGee.
Present.
Roberta Ross.
Here.
Charles Shapiro.
Here.
David Silverman, absent. Jay Wilson, absent. And that's all I have. Is there anybody else here on the board?
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Brock Mailer, because he's an alternate that's on the board here, part of the forum.
Okay, can we have an approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
The motion's second. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do we have any public comment? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Steve Polikakis. For the record, on behalf of the Downtown Improvement Association, I'm the president of that organization, and I'm just here to say that we applaud the efforts of the city to put this matter into the hands of the businesses and local residents and other bar owners, to have a shot at trying to resolve the differences that were arising as relates to the bars in downtown Reno and some of the impact that was having, rather than just imposing a draconian or other, perhaps, consequence with unforeseen circumstances that might have hindered business or caused more problems than it might have cured. The DIA was proud and happy to bring forward a lot of the business owners and bar owners and residents initially to put this program together, to work with the city, to try to come up with some solutions. It looks like this good neighbor policy is certainly, if not the end of the trail as it comes to creating solutions for a problem like this, at least a part of a productive part of the process to get to the end of the trail. So I thank the council, thank the members of the DAC, and all the other business owners and residents that participated in this process. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jill Linville, the Vice President of Jackson's Food Stores, and I've sat in on the DAC meeting several times, and we have another side group that we've put together, retailers that are very interested in what they're doing to address the issues of the packaged liquor sales. We have a proposal that we'd like to bring forth that addresses several things, and I think it's very important for several reasons. One, our proposal causes the city to spend less on implementing the penalties. It creates no new staffing for this. It ties in with the DAC's board proposal. It will result in fewer sales to the minors. It outlines clear and fair penalties, so retailers know what to expect, and it will actually make the city money instead of costing the city money like it does now. It costs the city over two thousand dollars to enforce the current liquor laws for each violation they choose to pursue. Our proposal will actually make the city money. So we are here today because we'd like to know what our next steps are.
Okay, thank you. Chuck, help me, is it Kroyak?
Yeah, Konyak.
Konyak?
Yeah.
And I'm Chuck Konyak, citizen of Reno, and market manager, regional manager of 7-Eleven stores. And I also wanted to applaud the work that the DAAC has worked, has, you know, worked on their proposal. I think it's great to see neighborhoods and retailers working together. And I also come to ask you to please consider the proposal of the Responsible Vendor Program that's been developed by our group of responsible retailers of alcoholic beverages. It's also a program that's been endorsed by, joined together, Northern Nevada, a coalition group. That's, that's actually a group that's made up of health professionals, the police, and also community residents. And actually, I'm also on the executive committee of JTNN, and I wanted to just let you know that we're very interested in maybe pursuing this in a future agenda item down the road.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Eddie Lorton, council. Now, I ended up addressing Bob's question earlier, if I'd gone to any of these meetings. Well, I ended up, I went to a co- Well, I ended up, I went to a couple, but they seemed too biased for me. Most of it entailed a lot of the casino people and the condo people, and then it just trickled down to where there was two bar owners or so, and it seemed like they're including the bar owners, but in the end it didn't. So it was going one way, and it doesn't matter what they propose, what matters is what you pass. So I didn't waste any more time with that. So here we are in the front part, their mission is to improve, as far as breaking down this final version, I'll do the best I can in three minutes. They ended up, they're doing it for the bar nightlife, cabaret, and packaged liquor sales. So what happened to the casinos in there? They have cabaret licenses, you know? So they're just kind of getting left out of the loop, trying to blame the small bar owner, which I don't agree with at all. And I don't see the strip clubs in there either, but I'm just wondering how they got out of there. And as you've seen today before, when they tried to implement things, the casinos attorneys were here, and now today you don't see them. But here on Recommendation 1, okay, they, they're trying to force everybody to comply with this agreement. Well, guess what? I'm gonna tell most of them not to sign it. We'll let the legal system take its course. Because if it was so legal, why would you have to sign anything? If you're speeding or committed a crime, you don't have to tell somebody or have them sign anything. If it's so legal, let's have them implement it. Because in my mind, and the people I've talked to, it's against case law, dram shop laws, where they wanna make you responsible for what occurs outside. There's different things that go against this state's laws. And I wanna make sure that's not broken, because it's gonna be a can of worms, especially back through this agreement, where they say they're gonna introduce legislation on us being civilly responsible more for outside. Watch the can of worms you open, because that will include casinos. So that's the things that I'm against here. And let's see. So in other words, once they implement this agreement, it's gonna pretty much have their way. We've had like a problem with two bars, pretty much is the base of it. And so all of a sudden, they're gonna have their way to, if there's a fight outside of one, they can shut them down if they want to. So I don't agree with most of this agreement. There is a couple ideas further through it, but when they end up in for, getting code enforcement involved, most buildings are grandfathered in. Like us on the first committee that we had, the only thing we implemented was the no drinking outside signs, which we put in. And then they said there was no other committee, and then they started this one, which consisted of everybody except for the true people in the business that know the business. And there have been some irresponsible parties, I agree. Because of two people, this is gonna shut everything and everyone down over, because of the people that moved into this town when the bars and casinos were here long before they were, and now they wanna complain about it. You move next to a train, believe it or not, a railroad track, there's gonna be a train. So that's part of the problem. So they're trying to force them all out of business. And then, but that's the thing, when they're not including casinos, because they have cabaret licenses, I don't understand it. And then they go into another thing about this agreement, they're trying to force on everyone, I don't care what they do in Spokane, Washington, that's a retirement community. I care about what they do here in Reno. I don't care about Florida, Idaho, any of these places, I care about what we do here. Thank you.
Hi, Jordan Slotnick, I own the Waterfall downtown Reno, right on Second Street, where we do get a lot of problems. I read over the agreement, and I don't think it addresses the issues that we really face. The issues we face is underage drinking, we've got laws to protect those, you know, to prevent that from happening. We've got, we've got insurance issues as far as having people outside on the sidewalk. I can't have my bouncer or my security guard outside the property. He's not gonna be covered if something happens. He's also not been trained to do that. That's the police's job. And I know we pay money for that to happen. And I know that there have been cuts, and I know it's harder for that to happen. I, I don't like that we're giving a group of people who have, who have incentive, or a reason, or personal vendetta against certain businesses, to have control over those businesses. I shouldn't have control over what other, what other businesses do. It's not, that's not what I'm supposed to be there for. That's what the city is there for. They're supposed to watch over and make sure everything is being taken care of. And this gets too much control away from the city. And, and that concerns me quite, quite a bit. The businesses are in compliance, we're not doing anything wrong. And if we do do something wrong, we have repercussions for that, and we, we serve those repercussions. This agreement lacks credibility with some of the, the points they put in. They want us to provide alternative, alternative transportation for them. I, I'm not a taxi service, I can't make, I can't make that happen. They want us to provide water and soda for them. Well, you know, I'm, I'm in the business to make money, not giving stuff away. And that's just, that's just a bar. I mean, you've got, you've got food restaurants that are serving alcohol, they've got, if, if I'm gonna be a designated driver or somebody else there, they've got us, in, in the, the thing that I saw, they've gotta give free, free soda. And it just, it doesn't make sense. They're telling us how to run our business, and that's not, that's not what the point of this is for. The point of this is to, is to prevent the city from having any problems. And the way to do that is to have the police, fire, and code enforce what is in the law allowing them to enforce. And just to let you know, we're having issues because the police, on some accounts, are not enforcing stuff. Where this last Saturday, there were some people drinking outside of the bar, not from mine. And my bar manager went out to tell them that, you know, they, they couldn't have alcohol in the city streets. That's above and beyond what we're supposed to be doing. Those people did not leave, and so we called the police to let them know. Well, the police aren't enforcing the fact that there's open containers, and so they just have them pour it out. And so what goes on is it, it's incredibly difficult for us to do anything, we're caught in the middle, when we're asking for the police to help and trying to help the police, and there's nothing being done about it. I don't think we should sign this, I don't think you should sign this, and I think we should solve, find a better solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shannon Dobbs, Five Star Saloon. I put a detailed message to the City Council in front of you, I don't wanna go through point by point. I just wanna start off by saying that the bars in downtown Reno, and the restaurants, and the diners, and the cafes, and all the other places that have privileged licenses in this town, especially in the downtown corridor, are doing pretty well right now. And in this environment, and when all of these things are happening in the city around the country, I think that's a good thing. You know, fees are being collected, people are coming downtown and spending money, and five years ago, when City Council expressed that one of their desires was to reverse the trend of urban sprawl in Reno, and to bring people back downtown, the 50-plus liquor licenses for on-premise have been instrumental in, in helping to make that happen. A year and a half ago or so, when the DAAC was formed, the argument was going back and forth, what are we gonna do about some of the problems that were being brought up, primarily by packaged liquor? We had some underage liquor being sold, we had some lack of security on premises, we had some other problems that were being identified, and you guys enacted the DAAC to say, hey, what can we, what can we do about these things? Well, I had a problem at the time with some of the things that were brought up, because on-premise liquor was being lumped in with packaged liquor as part of the problem, and that had never been identified as such. So when you guys come, came on, you told them, hey, what are we gonna do about these problems? Well, in the last period since then, when they come back with this proposal, packaged liquor seems to have completely fallen off the board. And this DAAC proposal is 100% an attack on on-premise liquor. There's virtually nothing in there that even addresses packaged liquor, and the only place that I saw it was, was as an exception to one of the rules that they're trying to present to us. I have a major problem with anybody coming in and trying to tell me how to run my business. You know, obviously, city officials accepted, but there's some, there's some major problems when they're talking about enacting a task force outside the rules of law and putting in a good neighbor agreement that is outside the laws that we're supposed to uphold under city codes, to do specific things that are going to be, for whose benefit? It's not gonna be for the city's benefit, it's not gonna be for the people of the city's benefit, it's gonna be for specific businesses that have an axe to grind. I urge City Council to view this proposal in that light, and make sure that you make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, and thank you. First of all, I'd like to introduce myself as Matt Polly, the owner of Java Jungle and Jungle Vino, and also the President of the Riverwalk Merchant Association. I'd like to thank the members of the Downtown Alcohol Advisory Committee for their time and their efforts coming up with this good neighbor agreement. Though I, I believe in a principle that we all have responsibilities to be good neighbors, I'm not so sure this agreement goes far enough in regards to including all businesses, because we all have a responsibility, again, to provide a reasonable and clean, safe neighborhood. At this time, I would request that the, the council postpone any action on the good neighbor agreement, as the staff report only came out yesterday. The dozen or so bar owners that are within the RWMA have not necessarily had the opportunity to read and take the opportunity to really consider how it's going to impact their businesses. Again, I think that the, the efforts on, on part of the DAAC have been commendable. I think there's still an opportunity to really take a closer look and refine some of the issues that need to be addressed. I thank you for your opportunity, and again, would request that you please postpone a, a vote on the GNA, so that the bar owners and those that it will affect has an opportunity to take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Brandon DiRiso?
Afternoon, Brandon DiRiso, on behalf of Tonic Lounge. You know, one of the main things that I see as problematic with the DAAC recommendations is we're being asked to police the sidewalks and the alleyways. That presents a very large insurance responsibility, as the bar's responsibility ends at the door, and as, as would any business. If I have a bouncer, as Mr. Slotnick had his manager go out and approach a handful of people drinking on the street, if those people decide to be unruly, retaliate, beat them up, anything like that, insurance is not gonna cover that, that person. Which means no insurance, no workman's comp, this person hasn't, you know, the, the city has essentially asked us to volunteer to open ourselves up to a huge liability. In turn, you know, that, that liability is gonna have to turn around to where a business owner that's being sued by an employee is gonna have to then sue the city for, for, you know, an agreement that just doesn't make any sense. And I think that there is a middle ground here, as, you know, there's a handful of responsible business owners in this room, and the ones who act irresponsibly tend to not show up to these types of events. There's a middle ground where the city can be working with these businesses, because it's not just bars and packaged liquor in the downtown area. I mean, people can come from any area in the city with alcohol in their car, sit in any parking lot and drink it, come to our bar, go outside, get in trouble, tell the police they just came from Tonic Lounge, or they just came from Waterfall, and all of a sudden, we're responsible for that. There's a middle ground where we can all be working together. It started off two years ago, when we started this whole fight, it started to kinda go the right direction. Police were meeting with bart, bar owners, excuse me, on a regular basis, you know, coming up with short-term solutions that had a more long-term effect. This DAAC proposal seems to be more of a Band-Aid fix on a severed arm. So if we're gonna do it, let's do it right, and figure out how we can all work together without pitting bar owners against condo residents, against the city, caught in the middle of all of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Jackson?
Hi, I'm Andrea Jackson, I'm the President of Jackson's Food Stores. We have 212 stores in five states, and we have been proudly serving the city of Reno for over 20 years. We employ 125 employees in, in your city. And I have attended almost nearly every DAC, AAC meeting since they started, since I became aware of them last fall. This is a very impressive group of people. I was, I'm interested, because I'm a package licensee, and I tell you that these people get things done. They were inclusive, they, they, they allowed public comment, I mean, it was impressive. And I, I mean, seriously, this is kinda a group we should give the Fire Department overtime problem to, because they, they solve problems, you know? I think I just got a knife in the back, but, they weren't, I'm, I'm interested, as along with colleagues that are with me, and I'm just gonna read off the names of the companies out of respect for your time, we're not all gonna testify, but I'm representing today, Jackson's Food Stores, Rainbow Markets, Shop 'n Go, come on, guys, stand up, 7-Eleven, Quick Stop, Dad's, Golden Gate Petroleum, and Ben's Liquor. And we have, these guys didn't address prepack, or package license issues, I don't think that was really their, their assignment. But we, as responsible retailers, are very concerned on our own, on side of the fence, on package licensing, of issues that we would like to address, that, along the lines of what these people have done. And maybe we can tie in some of their suggestions, alcohol boards, things like that, we could tie in our solutions to these very real problems along those lines. So what I'm suggesting to you is that you have a, a group of very invested, very smart business people who are committed to the city, who want to support, similar to DAC, solving real problems that you have, that we all have, with alcohol, with irresponsible retailing. You know, we don't sell drug paraphernalia, we don't believe, you know, all the things that I think that you're concerned about, we are too. So I'm just trying to say that here's a group of people who have committed to helping you solve your problems. We don't know how to get plugged in, but we do have a proposal that we have, as, as Chuck had said, we have, had been endorsed by, you know, JTNN, we have talked to staff, law enforcement, and, and so I don't know how to get this in your hands, if it's appropriate for me to approach you and hand you this, but we would like to do so, and, and in support of DAC, we would like to, to make the same great things happen for Reno in the packaged liquor license area.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate you coming forward. If you would give that to the clerk, she will make sure that we all get it. Is, where's your home office?
We're a Nevada corporation, but we're based in Boise, Idaho. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that didn't fill out a card, would like to speak? Going once? Going twice? Okay. So let's bring it back to table, and is there a staff presentation? Would someone like to make a presentation on behalf of the DAC?
Good afternoon, my name is Roberta Ross. I am the Chairperson of the DAC. For those of you that do not know, I, I live in a residence at Arlington Towers in downtown Reno, and I was chosen on this committee as a resident, and I, I chaired that group. Would I like to start off and say that I've been on a lot of committees, this has been a hardworking, fabulous committee. To this week, the committee was in effect for one year. We had 14 meetings within one year. And the result from that, as you all have, as your stations are, we have seven recommendations that we are bringing forward to you. I want you to know that those recommendations come to you from a unanimous vote from everyone on that committee. The committee is, I would like to go through and restate for everyone here who was on that committee and what positions they had, so you understand, once again, what these companies were that were on there. James Brown, he's not here right now, he had to leave earlier, he was at our large. My Vice Chairman, who was absolutely outstanding, is Daryl Clifton. He is from the Casino Circus Circus, and he's here as a representative of the Downtown Police Special Assessment District. Pat Ferguson was another resident that was on the committee, except for the last two meetings. Unfortunately, he had to step off from, for personal reason, and he was a wonderful, he had a wonderful commitment to the committee. Kevin McGeehee, he's a business owner, and he does own a bar downtown, Red Rock Bar, and he also used to own a bar very close on, he used to own a bar on West Street, too. But he here is, was here as a business owner. Charles Shapiro, most of you know him as Chuck, he has a Wild River Grill, he was representative as a cabaret licensed business owner. David Silverman, who, restaurant, bar, wine and liquor sales, he, and hard liquor, he's a business owner that was on there. Michael Thomas, who was representative for the Downtown Police Special Advisory District, is, he also was from Terrible Casino, so we had a casino representation with him. He was transferred down to Las Vegas. So Brock Mailith took his place, Brock Mailith, at the time he came on board, was working for St. Mary's, and a lot of you may remember him from working at the Century Theater, he did a lot of input from the beginning of the Century Theater, went to the other end of the town, and still continues to give valuable input in, as, and the, as I said, on the police tax district. The other person that was on there, who was very instrumental on a lot of the issues, was Jay Lloyd Wilson. He's a cabaret business license owner, a five-star bar. His boss, Shannon Guy, came up here and presented. Unfortunately, Jay is not here, and they do have a cabaret license. I will say that there was a couple other people that were in here, Sharon Cox was one of the alternatives, she owns a business in downtown, she was out... She owns a business in downtown, she was at large. Brian Egan, a business owner, he came to first couple of them and was there in a little bit of attendance. Susan Fisher was on the committee as a resident, an alternative. She got taken down to the legislature, but she did attend most of the meetings. Remy Jordan, a cabaret licensed business owner. He has a club of Reno Underground. He was present at a good majority of the meetings even though he was an alternative that was there. I can say that my committee members are all sitting here and the majority of them in, it was an outstanding group of people and they're all very vocal and it was, it was a great, a great group to be with. The outstanding, I think it's very important that you understand the city staff that was in attendance. From our view, the city council made it very clear that this committee, as we took it forward, was to be a committee made up these people that you chose and it was not to be run and orchestrated by the city. It was not. However, they came forward with valuable information for us to give knowledgeable decisions on. The, there is a lot of city staff there, but I'm going to list a few so you know who were right there with us for the majority of the time was Deputy Chief William Rula, Lieutenant Shannon Weakling, Code Enforcement Alex Woodley, Joe Henry, Joe Henry was here earlier, he had to leave, and Business Licensing Michael Chomp. The one person, we had a couple of several, actually three different attorneys, but the majority of the time was the attorney at the table, she did sit at the table, was Karen Fraley and she guided us very closely on questioning us, giving us advice on what were the codes and ordinances and what may be repercussions of the laws. And she did a fabulous job in guiding us through, guiding us through the whole year, the majority of the year. What I'd like to say is that, as I said, we had 14 meetings in 12 months. We started to do double up and it was exhausting, so we slowed that off and we went back to one meeting a month. The first few meetings, there was over 20 people that were outside our committee. The first two meetings, there were people outstanding, out of the room, that, majority of them bar owners that were there, that I gave ample time to talk. I've been in front of the city council and committees a lot and sometimes it's like, why can't I speak more? I gave them a lot of time to talk and the records will show that they were given time. And a good majority of the people that spoke earlier here was there. I have to say that Andrea that came up and presented, she did give us, I'll call it a white paper, she gave us some suggestions that we brought those suggestions forward and they did, I can't tell you point for point which ones they were, but they were very good suggestions from other communities that she had dealt with that made a situation like this work. From there is that I think all of you know that we, the area we were looking at was downtown between Keystone Avenue, Wells Avenue, I-80 California Avenue. That was approximate jurisdiction of the committee that we looked at and discussed. So, with this is, I would like to go into the recommendations to city council is, again, is a lot of this I'm going to be saying for a lot of those people that are back here, for them to understand it may be more clear. Mission. Our mission was to improve the bar, nightclub, cabaret and packaged lic- liquor license sales environment in Reno, specifically downtown Reno, by encouraging an awareness of the responsibility of businesses, individual accountability by patrons and by better collaboration between the city and business stakeholders. Recommendation number one. All downtown alcohol sales business must enter into and comply with the Good Neighbor Agreement attached. After I go through these recommendations, I will review that with you. Recommendation two. Create an alcohol license review board. Board should be made up of a cross-section of stakeholders, including but not limited to bar owners or managers, business owners or managers, packaged liquor store owners or managers, residents and property owners, city officials such as code, business licensing, staff, fire, employees and police. The city officials on this advisory board, if we did go forward with this, would be absolutely invaluable to helping us get through it. The recommendation number three is a reason for the alcohol advisory board. It would be the alcohol license review. New licenses. Alcohol board reviews applications for new licenses based on criminal background check, prior actions with business owners and management and additional relevant information. That was with new license. The huge part would come in where we look at is under license renewals. One of the things that we were committed with doing is to try to figure out how we can help the situation and create a better environment downtown. And with the license renewal, we said that the alcohol board reviews compliance with the Good Neighbor Agreement, citations, citizen complaints and police reports and any additional information that may be, may be relevant to the propriety of a renewal of the license. Board refers non-renewal recommendations to city council. And that's very important that you understand is that the board is there to help arrest situations and not to review every license. The licenses come up every month or quarter, they come up quite frequently, but our goal is only to bring forward to the city council, which since then, I believe it actually goes to the police department and if they can arrest a situation, curb it, then it doesn't go forward to the city council. Are only those establishments that are having, causing problems within our downtown environment. Recommendation number four. Code enforcement. Educate, inform, apply and enforce existing building, fire health and other codes to businesses 24 hours per day. Create and implement a team of fire, police and code enforcement personnel for the purpose of problem solving and random inspections. Code enforcement, I think someone that was up here earlier thought the code enforcement's had to do just with the building structure. No, it has to do with the operation of the business and what the codes and ordinances that the business needs to follow would be a big part of it. And they've already implemented a group like this and they are going forward with problem solvings. They have sent out a letter to businesses telling them that they are going to be coming forward and looking at a certain amount of businesses. Code enforce, recommendation four, pardon me, recommendation five. Adjudication. Code offenses will be reviewed by alcohol board within 30 days of offense and penalty recommendation made based on compliance with the Good Neighbor Agreement and other relevant history and documentation as provided by the city and the defendant. This recommendation, the adjudication is huge because I think a lot of the problems that we have downtown can be solved a lot quicker and we're looking at doing it faster with this board, looking at it in 30 days to try to turn it around and get it solved more quickly than carrying it out for a year. And that would be one of the goals of having the advisory board, that it gets done faster. Recommendation six. Annual review of results. The alcohol board will make recommendations annually or as needed to the city council to improve the licensing enforcement or related processes regarding downtown alcohol. Recommendation number seven. Seek authority from the Nevada Legislature in 2013 to increase the maximum civil liability that may be imposed upon individuals and businesses for violations under cer- certain municipal ordinances. There are some laws that we've reviewed that could be tuned up a bit. Karen went into those and discussed those. I'd ask for you to ask her for that information, but basically there's some laws that have restrictions on them, are kind of yesteryear's laws that we would like to see about going forward and updating that. Those are the recommendations that we are bringing forward to you and I'd like to backtrack to the GNA, the Good Neighbor Agreement and go through and highlight the major portions in there. The city of Reno has established this agreement and this is proactive reading of it as if it's in place, so it says this. "The city of Reno has established this agreement to make the business owners and operators accountable for the effects of their business for, on the downtown environment. The goal is to make downtown Reno a clean, safe and comfortable destination for visitors, residents and employees." Is that, one of the issues that was brought up during public comment is the issue about going out to the street. Keeping our downtown clean and safe was a big issue with the GNA, such as if you have security and your staff can go outside and pick up that bottle that's standing, maybe laying in the curb on your window sill, to pick up and take that stuff inside with you is a huge issue. During the course of our committee, I called my workman's comp, agency carrier, and I asked them, and this was for my business and me, I called workman's comp and I said, if my staff goes out and I have them cleaning the curb and gutter and they get hurt on there, will workman's comp cover it? The answer was yes. They're under your employ, that's what you have them doing. Anybody can sue anybody at any time, but for me as a business owner, when I know workman's comp is going to cover them and I'm treating my employees as safe as I can, then I know I have that further backup for them. So, I just wanted to make note of that. And it's not, the clean and safe environment has a lot to do with this GNA, not just arresting the people that really have the really super, super bad environments in their bar. The Good Neighbor Agreement is a list of measures and benchmark that the city and its citizens and business owners believe is necessary for successful operation of an establishment that sells alcohol-based products. Some of these benchmarks follow existing law. The good majority of them already follow the existing law. And the others require the business to go above and beyond industry standards for safety, comfort and enjoyment of all those who live, work and visit in downtown Reno. And this is another one, is yes, as business owners, we do look at, this is kind of a peer-oriented group, to go above and beyond the industry standards to make our neighborhoods great. So, from there, I'm going to start jumping around through the agreement.
Ms. Ross, actually.
Yeah, go ahead.
Ms. Ross, hang on a second. We have this and we have all read it.
We've read it.
I think if we want to bring it back to table, we can address some specific issues with you and other people that spoke.
Okay.
Unless there's something else that you think is absolutely imperative that we know at this point.
Um, no, those recommendation, the Good Neighbor Agreement that, I'll just go through things real fast and I hear you.
No, that's okay.
No, 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 I just wanted to say that the security is a huge issue. That one of the comments that are out there is that if you have security and you hire security, that it's noted that they are security so they can help those people out there. That was one of the big issues, was security on the street on those after-hours. And inside the businesses, that they have the numbers inside the business and follow the codes and ordinances that and watch on the outside. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, let's bring it back to the table. Shannon, hang on a second, we'll get to you, okay?
This is in regards to statements that Ms. Ross has made. I'd like the opportunity to correct the false statement that was made in regards to my business.
For the record, my name is Shannon Dobbs and I am the owner of the Five Star Saloon. Ms. Ross just cited that Lloyd J. Wilson was an owner of the Five Star Saloon, that is incorrect. He is employed as a operations manager for the Five Star Saloon, but he is on the DAAC as a private citizen and does not represent in any way the interests of the Five Star Saloon. I think it's important to say that because I am vehemently opposed to the DAAC's proposals. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Now, we'll bring it back to the table. Questions, where do you want to start? Councilman Iasi.
Let me ask this of Alex first. Because there was a statement under the, under the public comment that we've been working with the bars in the past years and things have been improving downtown. What's your sense of that?
Um, my understanding, Alex Woodley, for the record, cornered office manager, I've been to the hearings for suspicion of those licenses and revocation. It's been similar to in the past, staff works with them, unfortunately, many problems continue over and over, the same issues, the same problems. So, I would say to a certain extent, there has been some cooperation, but I wouldn't necessarily say that there's been a great improvement over the past two years.
Okay. And then, on what Roberta was talking about, code enforcement, that you're going to start stepping it up, what issues are you finding in code enforcement when you go into some of these places? What are the issues that you're looking for?
Um, as far as in the actual agreement, in the actual recommendations, when she referred to code enforcement, she meant to enforcement of all codes, whether it's fire, PD, et cetera. So, as she stated earlier, a letter did go out to businesses, particularly in the downtown area. Some of the things that we specifically are looking for is occupancy limits, identifying the number of people that are in the, in the business, lighting on the exterior of the business, signs that are required per the code with regards to alcohol and taking it outside of the business, control of the queue line that's outside and pretty much a control of the environment within and outside of the establishment.
So, I didn't know that we had had any problems with, with people with, like the number of people inside an establishment. Has that been an ongoing problem in the past couple of years? I didn't think that was a problem at all.
Uh, I couldn't tell you that, sir. To be honest, candid with you, because I think the police department would be better to, to address that since they're out there at night.
Or the, the fire department usually is the one who, who enforces that, correct?
Exactly. With regards to the occupancy, yes, sir, we have. Last year, we did have one situation where we went out to a club, it was fire, PD and code enforcement, and we did have to have them remove everyone from the club because it did look overcrowded and they had no idea how many people they had in there.
So, that's how, so what's the difference that, in your mind, from what we do normally and what's being proposed here?
With regards to the actual, the DAAC?
Yes.
Okay. My understanding, number one recommendation, which is the, the Good Neighbor Agreement, my understanding is that's something that all business owners will sign and be aware of, that pretty much heightens their alertness of what the codes are and what the requirements are.
I, I bet, as far as what they want, if we establish this, I thought I heard that we would send code out to every establishment on a 24-hour basis and really look into everything that happens.
No, no, sir, no, that's not how it would happen. From our perspective.
It would still be complaint-driven?
It would be complaint-driven, but we would do proactive, unannounced site visits. We're not talking about every weekend, it would be a collaborative effort between fire, PD and code and we would go out to maybe one or two clubs on a particular night, maybe once a month or twice a month, something to that effect, only to heighten their alertness to be, to ensure that they're running their business the way they're supposed to be.
Okay. Roberta, let me ask you a couple of questions here on the.
Can I just follow up on that real quick, Dave? Do you mind? Can we do that now?
Yes, sir.
And do we do that now?
Uh, we've, we've started that, sir, yes, we have. We sent out a letter and we've already started that.
So, this wouldn't, this wouldn't get that rolling?
No, sir.
That's just something.
It is a recommendation and staff has taken the initiative.
So, you've already started that?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
That's okay. On your Good Neighbor policy on outside the business, explain to me what this one means, the very first one. Outside areas must not produce noise, which is likely to disturb the peace of persons with reasonable and ordinary sensibilities.
We discussed that at great length, is, what could we say? We looked at the decimal measurements and the ordinances at. One of the issues is queue lines, is that you'll look in there, you'll see about queue lines, is that the noise gets very strong, very loud outside and we didn't want to put a definite decimals on there, but outside the bars in particular with queue lines and our people just hanging out the outside, it gets very loud.
But how are you going to interpret this line when something comes in front of a board and you say, well, they were noisy? How do you interpret this? Because I, you know, I think you're reasonable, I think I'm reasonable, you and I disagree greatly on what that would be.
Yeah. There is law in regards to decimals. I actually, with the West Street Market, I worked very hard with them. I did buy a professional decimal readers and I took that to the redevelopment agency. We had discussions and they calmed it, you know? And that was, that was one of the issues. Once they knew that that was happening after hours, that's how I did it and that's how other people could do it. And it is an ordinance.
But I understand that, but what you're asking here in this Good Neighbor policy is, I understand your recommendation is, if a bar isn't following the policy, then this board might recommend them not getting renewed. But the policy doesn't say you must follow existing code enforcement, the policy says what a reasonable person would think.
Is that, I don't think the policy has to say that they have to follow existing ordinances, they have to do that anyways.
Right, but then, but so this is meaning, it doesn't matter if they're following existing ordinances or not, if people on the board think it's too loud, that's a reason for denial.
Karen Fraley, deputy city attorney. The language that is used in this agreement is the same language we have in the Disturbing the Peace Ordinance and that's language that is generally used because it is exceptionally difficult to determine what, what is inappropriate.
But in the Disturbing the Peace Ordinance, someone has to sign the complaint.
That's correct.
So, that that person knows, not someone later on. I mean, I, I'm just trying to figure out how this would work is, someone would have to file a complaint for this to get on the committee's agenda to look at a certain bar? And how would that, or when their, when their complaint comes forward, someone just can come up and say, well, they were too noisy in the line?
If I may step in for just a moment, if the council were to decide to go forward with all or part of the recommendation with regard to the Good Neighbor Agreement, it is unlikely that we as the legal city attorney's office could actually prepare a contract for signature. It is more likely that the provisions that the council would recommend or would like to adopt would be put into ordinances in Title V for the privileged licenses. So, they would become more regulatory. To actually create a contract would be a problem, a legal problem. Now, it's our expectation that whatever the council decides today and whatever you would like. like to look at, would be sent to the city attorney's office for additional research from a legal standpoint, and then the city attorney's office will report back on how we might best make those things happen.
And that's sort of, I think, what some of the concern is, is even though we can't enforce this now, we're going to try to make it tighter. I mean, in the Disturbing the Peace, it's very specific that someone has to sign that complaint.
That's correct.
So if we move forward with this one, let's say it's done, and XYZ bar comes forward next year for renewal, how does someone know that there's been any complaints, or can somebody just come up and say, "I think they've been too noisy"? What's, how is that process going to work?
Yes. When we look at the advisory board, is that the person that has a complaint, like, "Your business is too noisy," and I take it forward, we take it to the advisory board. I mean, if you're a good neighbor, you're going to go next door and say, "Hey, Dave, your business is too noisy, you're too noisy." They ignore it, ignore it. Then you're, it's your responsibility as a neighbor to document it, to take it to the advisory board, and the advisory board would, in my point of view, have to have clear, I mean, very clear in their mind that what the person that's complaining is true.
And how would you, tell me how you would do that?
It would also be my expectation that calls with regard to noise would be made, and complaints would be filed with the police. The recommendation with regard to the alcohol review board was they would review any number of things that would include police reports. So presumably, you would have on your noise complaints, someone signing a citation.
And that might be what would have to strengthen this here, because it sounds to me, the way it's set up, is anybody can come at the board and say, "I think they're too noisy," and there's nothing in there saying, "What's too noisy?"
These are all issues that for, would be reviewed by the city attorney's office, with recommendations coming back to council on how best to accomplish what it is you want to accomplish. If that's something you wanted, then we would bring it back to you.
And let's say we did that, Roberta, why would we have to have number three in there, that doors and windows have to be closed?
That's already an ordinance. Is that cabarets, their noise must be kept inside, in a weak way that I would say, Alex, is that, that's already, is some bars have been fortunate that they haven't had people outside their business to complain, but now that we're getting more residents downtown, it's an issue, it's already an ordinance.
But also, some of these things could change the other way. I mean, what we've been trying to attract are those kind of places that are open to the sidewalk, and, I mean, that is something that we've been trying to do, too, is to make them look like nice places to be in, and people can sit inside and enjoy the outside, too.
You do have conflicting forces there, there's no doubt. You're trying to draw residences downtown, the residents are noisy, I mean, like, let's just use the new montage, okay, I mean, that's a brand-new structure. The montage of people weren't there before, so the bars around there have been able to have their windows open, it didn't affect anybody. We drew business, residents, and now it's become a problem.
But wouldn't the, I mean, because I look at the Imperial. They open their windows, and I, they don't have bands in there or anything, and they open the windows on a hot day, and people enjoy going in there because the windows are open. I mean, it's a nice experience.
It's an absolutely wonderful experience, but during the day, their cabaret portion of it is not going, and I don't even know that Imperial is a cabaret, to tell you the truth.
I don't know either.
Yeah, I don't know that they are a cabaret.
Oh, I'm bringing his name up, and there he is.
If it's all right, that I may say in regards to jail, Jay Wilson, is Jay was appointed on this bar, on this board, as a cabaret-licensed business owner. And that's all I can say, Shannon, that's how he was appointed. We all know that he works with the Five Star. I assumed what has been brought forward to us three times was true and correct, and that's how he was brought forward to the board. That's all I can say.
I think, I think we got that established, that he's not an owner, that gentleman's the owner. That's okay.
Well, I have one more question now for, probably Karen. The one thing in here, too, it says, "The licensee acknowledges that renewal of the liquor license is contingent upon compliance with this agreement. If we can't make this agreement binding, how can this be in there at all?"
We can make portions of the agreement binding. What I said was, we couldn't make a contract, it would be very difficult legally, to actually have them sign a contract in addition to all the licensing requirements. If we were to take certain of these provisions, that are not already in code, and make them part of an ordinance...
Right, I agree with that.
Then we can enforce them in that fashion.
So if I asked to sort of rework this, just so I knew in here, what already is code? I mean, it sounds like you're just reiterating what is in code on some of these, so I don't know what, what parts of these are already in code, or what we're going to be asked to bring back as a change in code.
That's true. There are some things that are already in code, and they just wanted to emphasize, the committee wanted to emphasize them, and others are new. So we can come back to you with that information, if you like, and, and reiterate which portions would be new, so you can look at those, and ask about those, and we can then do the legal research necessary for those.
Okay. Those are my questions for now.
Councilman Prozot?
Yeah, and I don't know if this is for Alex, Mike, who this is for, but originally, I thought, when the committee was established, we were going to look at a system on things like not renewing based on calls for service, or violations of particular codes, and when I go through and I read what's been proposed, it really doesn't do that. So, we're trying to look at standards that are, yes, broad and address the problem, but we all know, when we got the report, there's really three or four problems downtown specifically that cause most of the major problems. So, that's where, are we really changing a policy when you have a few offenders, when isn't the proper recourse to do that is, okay, if they have this many calls and this many violations, they're not going to be issued a license anymore, end of story.
Alex Willey, for the record, ma'am, since this started in 2009, unfortunately, at that time, Michael and myself, we weren't involved with the business license process. However, you are correct, there is, here, there is a thought process to address it that way. We are much more proactive and progressive with addressing problem businesses. We are working with the police department, we're doing dual citations, whereas the police department and administrative citations with these businesses, so you are correct with that. My understanding, coming into this, was the council wanted to give the members from the downtown area that have investment there, an opportunity for them to get together and come up with some solutions that they thought would help or assist, improve the process. Staff didn't look at all these recommendations with much scrutiny, because we wanted to give them the opportunity to come here before you, and see which of these recommendations you would pick and choose, or if you would pick all. Then at that time, we would go through with a comb, and comb through it to make sure what will pass, what will, what is that we can in fact enforce, to make sure. But we wanted to give you the opportunity first to identify which of the recommendations, if not all, that you would pick.
Yeah, I guess that's more what I'm looking for, as someone who constantly violates the rules, that we have a mechanism in place, and I think, Craig, you said this, so when it comes to the council, instead of changing this whole broad policy, what I'm looking for is, we keep telling, we, this council keeps, we keep hearing from legal, we don't have the ability to say no. And that's the frustrating part. If someone comes in, they have a license, and they get a million calls for services, they're selling to underage minors, they're causing problems, then, then that's what I'm looking for, is a way that, that we can deny their license. And, and I think that's how the discussion started, quite frankly. And then the other issue was on the packaged liquor, which I didn't see a lot of. So Alex, I have a couple of questions on that, because I think your presentation, what you're going to give, and, and I guess guidance from the city attorney's office, because I would like to put some things in code immediately. The drug paraphernalia issue. Hey, if you're going to have a liquor license, you can't sell this stuff. I don't see why we can't get that in our, our code right away, be able to do that, because again, it's a privileged license. Also, just looking around downtown, some of these places, and I don't know if we can do this on the packaged liquor side, but they have tinted windows, you can't even see what's, what's inside that, that, what is it, that spice shop right around the corner. So, and I do, I think the gentleman said, from the Five Star, which is true, those, the packaged liquor, I didn't see a lot from the committee on the packaged liquor, and I think that's where some of my concerns are, is on that packaged liquor. And then the third thing, because we do, and I did get your email, I think the people who have been doing this business, the 7-Eleven, the rest of you guys out there, is there's a substantial investment made when, when, when you open up a store, you put in the infrastructure to have things going. And I think, on the liquor store portion, what we did in, in the case, the cases, both cases that we saw, is we limited the amount of square footage where liquor can be sold on the packaged liquor. And so that's where I would like staff to come back, is just like they're fighting over the gaming issue right now, that being a secondary use. I don't see why we can't work with the industry on limiting the, the, if they're going to get a packaged liquor license, that the square footage has to be limited, and I don't know code, and, and you guys can work on that, and that they can't sell the paraphernalia. And what was the other issue? I think the Safescape, Alex, that would be my second issue. How is Safescape working out? Because I drive around, and there's posters all over, it doesn't seem like that's been working for us much.
As you stated earlier, there is another presentation after this one, and in that presentation, I will be addressing that specifically, the packaged liquor stores, and with some suggestions for council, and just to wait your direction for us to move forward with that.
And I don't think it should be limited to just downtown on the packaged liquor issues. I think that those are the kind of standards we need to set in place for getting the license. But again, I didn't hear anything from the committee on, anywhere in here, about how or from the attorney's office, is that's what I wanted, parameters in place for, for denial of a renewal of a license on, on those people who, who break the rules.
I understand.
I, I mean, that's how we address this problem. We can have this stuff all day long, but the way you're going to address the problem is by not renewing a license. For people who aren't following the rules, if we don't renew the license, then, then they can't get a license and stay in the business. So if they're going to follow the rules that we have in the books now, I think Councilman Iasi had asked those questions, we have those rules on the books. They don't make the rules, they don't get their license again.
Councilman Haste, yeah?
Yeah, this question is for Karen. As I read the, the recommendations and the Good Neighbor Agreement, really is the only penalty here is either code enforcement, which is what we do now, if we've got a business that has lots of calls for police service, or alternatively, the committee would review, they'd have to wait, we'd have to have a whole year of violation before the renewal would come up, and at that point in time, they would make a recommendation to us to either renew or not renew. Is that really the two penalties that are built into this, into this policy?
Well, with regard to the agreement, we have existing, and I believe you received a memo that indicated what those, the existing procedures with regard to not granting, revoking, suspending, and, and the reasons that that could be done. As of right now, it's my understanding that there is not a review process upon renewal, that renewal is generally automatic. However, if there have been issues, then that place is taken on a, an order to show cause for a hearing with the hearing officer to determine a suspension or revocation. And that would be the process at use. There's nothing in this agreement that would change that particular process. We could amend the ordinances to put a process in with regard to renewals as well, which would be similar, I believe, to its recommendation number three, that the committee, that committee made when they talked about the alcohol board, if the council were interested in establishing such a thing, they talked about license renewals, and that the alcohol board would review the history of that location, and then make a recommendation to council if they were going to recommend non-renewal. Changes could be made to the code fairly quickly, with regard to renewal procedures, I believe we could get those worked in. I've been working on streamlining some of four and five as it is, and so it's conceivable we could get that put in there.
What about, what about, because we have an administrative law judge, do we not?
We do.
Can this, can a, can a, can the issue of non-renewal, that comes through, because I agree we should amend the ordinance, and, and not, not require somebody to sign this agreement, just we should basically pick and choose which we think is enforceable, and then amend the ordinance, but that could actually go to administrative, to a judge, right? Where they'd actually have a hearing?
Well, we take, we take the recommendations for suspension or revocation to a hearing, so I'm, I don't know of any reason why we could not. I'd like a little time to look at that to be sure, but I don't, I can't think of any reason why not.
Okay. And then Andrea, could you come up, I have a question for you, and then I'll have a question for, because I did receive, as everybody else, lots of email. My next question would be for Shannon Dobbs. Did you see anything in the policy, the Good Neighbor Agreement, and the recommendations that you would agree with?
I had no problems with the, their recommendations, because frankly, it was really, it seemed to me to be addressing the bars' issues, which are not the same. I think packaged liquor, packaged licensees such as ourselves and my competitors have totally different issues than what bars do. I mean, you know, you have issues with over-service and other things, there's a few things. You know, we, we don't want to serve to minors either, you know, some stuff like that, but we don't want to have people hanging around our stores, and, you know, it's different. So, you know, when I first became interested in the topic, it was because, you know, I just wanted to see what was going on with alcohol in Reno, because we had our concerns, and it just seemed to me that this committee was, you know, tasked with dealing with bars, and our concerns are packaged liquor, which are different. So, I'm not sure I answered your question.
I think you did.
Okay.
And then my question is, the next question is for Mr. Dobbs. Was there anything in the Good Neighbor Agreement, any of the recommendations that you agree with?
No, there isn't. I, I actually...
How about posting a sign that says you can't take your, your open containers outside of the bar?
We've already got that. Matter of fact, we came to an agreement with city council over a year ago, that that was going to be in place, and we've already enacted that. I have a fundamental disagreement that we should be signing any policy that would put us in agreement with another business owner that doesn't have a liquor license and has no vested interest in our license, to give them power over us, or to give them any say in our license.
Well, I guess, I, I guess I'm sensitive to that, as well as some of the recommendations that require you to, to have water and give water for free to people, and then you have to make a determination as to whether that person is intoxicated. I mean, there are a variety of different things that I think, I mean, I personally struggle with, but...
Can I make a comment on that? Science is very strong on the point that water, or coffee, or energy drinks, or anything that you can shove down somebody's throat, is not going to do anything about making somebody less intoxicated, the only thing that works is time. And it's, you know, most bars have a policy of, hey, we're not going to shove somebody out on the street so they can get run over by a truck, until they have a chance to sober up. But the thing is, offering somebody free soda, offering them free coffee, free water, whatever it is, is not going to do anything towards making somebody more sober or more safe.
Except it does tell them that they, you know they're drunk. I mean, it's a psychological thing.
Well, that's kind of part of cutting them off, though.
Exactly, but, but then they also don't have to leave.
Okay, but it was detailing designated drivers are required to get free sodas. You know, this applies to restaurants, this applies to delis, any place that has a beer license is going to be required, based on this Good Neighbors Agreement, to offer free sodas and coffees to anybody who walks up and says, "Hey, I'm a designated driver, hook me up." And, and this is just one of many requirements in this Good Neighbor Agreement that's problematic to a business owner. Why am I being required to do something that the local neighborhood deli that doesn't have a business, or that doesn't have a liquor license is, is not required to do? Just because I have a privileged license, I know I have responsibilities, and those are fairly clearly detailed in law.
So if we were to refer this back to the committee, and then write, as basically on bullet points, go through the Good Neighbor Agreement, because they do list security, you know, bullet one, bullet two, three, and then list those, and have your group say, "Yes, I agree," and, "No, I don't agree," and here's the reasons why. To me, it seems to me that would be some way to build some consensus, and then ultimately, what we would do is put it in an ordinance, and then provide a, provide a forum, that if you have bad, bad actors out there, then they have, they now have a list of items that say, "If you violate those, then you're going to be cited for it, and your, and your license will not be renewed."
Theoretically, I can, I can agree with you, however, when you start to looking at the details of what is in this Good Neighbor Agreement, you start looking at things that really ought to be relegated to the details of what that business requires. You talk about specific numbers of security, or specific types of clothing they should wear, or if somebody who's designated as security is required to walk around the perimeter of a building, well, what if they're the only person on premises? Are they going to be required to leave their post behind a bar and go around the back of the building to see if anything crazy is happening?
But that's my point, though, I, I want to hear, I want to hear those comments. And to me, I'm not going to solve this problem today, but if we refer it back to the committee, and you were able to articulate why you don't think it works, and I think you've done on a couple of issues, you actually made that case.
I would certainly be willing to contribute and communicate with city council on any of these issues. My, my problem, again, is we have codes. And you guys have laws in place, we, all of us good neighbors, we follow these laws. We, we follow the laws that are required for, by the codes for our business. We follow the laws that are required by the codes for our business, for my license. And I think we do, the majority of us do that very well.
But if you have a couple that don't, I think it behooves your industry that if we have some details in our ordinance, and says, if you violate these, and our staff has told us they need some more tools in the toolbox, then that basically sets the standard for you and everybody else, and those same bad actors potentially will not be in business anymore, because, and you won't be penalized because of their actions.
You have heard from your assistant district attorney, that level of staff is saying that they don't have the tools that they need. However, if you talk to police, and if you talk to fire, they have said repeatedly over the last several years that they have all the tools that they need to do their job to enforce code. When it gets to, up here to city council, and when you guys are talking about, okay, what are we going to do about it now that the code's been violated, the complaints have been put in, and people are coming up in front of here, then yeah, maybe you have to work on something at that level. But as far as enforcement of code, fire's got everything that they need to go after fire code, police has got everything that they need to go after police code. All of that's been established multiple times in front of you guys over the last several years.
Is that, is that true? Thank you for your time, by the way.
Alex Woolley, for the record. Yes, sir, we do have the ability, now that code enforcement's involved with a business license. We do feel that with what we have, and with the police and fire have, as long as we continue to build our cases, and we cite accordingly, without any delay in time, we have the ability to build a solid case to take before a hearing officer to pursue the suspension or revocation.
Is there any of these bullets or recommendations in the Good Neighbor Agreement? If we were going to incorporate that into an ordinance, would that assist you in doing your job?
The one portion, there's one...
I guess that's what I'm trying to get to.
Something to the effect, I think it's the last recommendation, something to the effect of, I'm sorry, allow me the opportunity, I think it was, recommendation five, my personal opinion, sir, from code enforcement's perspective, is that if we did have something like a requirement deadline, when we would have to have our stuff together, our act together, our case together, within a certain time limit, I think that that would help us, because unfortunately, we all have priorities, and we all have things that come across our desk. But if we have a time limit, just like we have with our citations, we have a 10-day appeal process. We have to give you 10 days to rectify the problem, because by law, we have to give you 10 business days so you can appeal it.
But I'm referring to the Good Neighbor Agreement, that those are recommendations.
Specifically in the Good Neighbor Agreement. Most of what's in there is in code.
Okay, all right.
Yes, sir.
I need to know, thanks.
Thanks.
If I may, Karen, can I ask you a couple of questions? Because I would assume that you helped put this document together with the committee. Well, first of all, Roberta, and Daryl, and Brock, and the others, thank you very much for taking the time. Like you said, you had 14 meetings over 12 months. I know from, my feeling is anyway, you're trying to do the right thing to make downtown safer, better for everybody, people live there, and tourists. I understand that part of it. I also hear the business owners say, and it's usually the truth, the ones who are the reliable ones are the ones who are here testifying, and the bad guys aren't showing up. So that makes it more difficult. I also hear, key issue about liability, I'll get back to that, but let me just go with the recommendations, first of all. And this may not be in your area, Karen, but, you know, I look at recommendation one, and anytime I see something that says must enter into and comply with, I mean, you've got statements here today, people said, I'm not going to do it. So I don't know how you justify that, and what, how you go forward when you've got people who say, you know, I'm just not going to be part of it. So if everybody cooperated, I understand that would be much better, and you would have a baseline to work from, but you don't have people. So explain to me why that wording, when you talk about all downtown alcohol sales business must enter into and comply with blah, blah, blah. Why the must enter?
Part of the discussions from the time that I started going to the committee meetings in, I believe it was October, was the discussion as to whether or not this would be a voluntary agreement or a mandatory agreement. And over time, as it was discussed, and the committee came to the, they took the position that they wanted it to be mandatory. That they wanted the businesses to have to comply with the provisions in this agreement. So that is why the language is mandatory language, because that's what the committee desired. And they did discuss voluntary or mandatory.
Okay, so if I'm a bar owner, and I don't want to comply, then I'm already excluded from this, because I don't have to live with any of the recommendations, or suggestions, or penalties that are applied, other than what I don't comply with according to our city ordinances?
Well, that's what I was saying earlier, that this really is not workable as a contract. So these provisions could be put into code. They are then enforceable through the business license regulatory process.
Go ahead.
Karen, this may be for you, or it may be for PD. We kind of achieved, we achieved a lot, actually, not kind of, compliance with our crime-free family, multifamily ordinance that we put into place, and we put conditions around it. So anybody who had an apartment complex with X number of units, I forget what we started with, I think it was like 120, and then we dropped it down to 80, had to at least attend and put into place a first level of things. Couldn't we do similarly something like that with these, with this Good Neighbor, that everyone of X number of size of square footage has to minimally do this, and then take it to a bigger requirement like we did with the crime-free? Would there be an opportunity to do something like that?
Would you like to comment, either one of you?
It's conceivable. We'd certainly want to look at that and see how that might work, what kind of provisions might be, where dividing lines would come as far as size and that kind of thing. We'd certainly have to look at it. But it's conceivable we could do something like that.
And we had similar concerns expressed about when we did the Safescape ordinance. We had similar business owners who came and expressed the very same thing that they're expressing today, but we were able to implement that particular ordinance. What would restrict us from doing that with these standards?
Well, I don't know that anything would restrict us from putting some of these into code, certainly. As we said, some of them already are. But could we put them in code, either in chapter five for the privileged licenses, or in some other provisions that we might come up with? Yeah, I think we can do that.
Okay. Let me ask you another one. On recommendation three, the very first one, new licenses, we already do that. Why would that be part of this Good Neighbor policy in this committee? That's, you're talking about applications for new license based on criminal background check. I mean, who's going to do that from there? And that's what our business license people do now. Why would that need to be included?
The existing process would be for business license, and Roberta would need to address that.
It would give it to the board to be able to review it.
Well, I mean, why are you more qualified to do that than the city licensed people? The police go through that now, and our licensed people. Why would you take on that? That's not in your jurisdiction. I don't understand why you would do that.
We want, I don't know, Daryl, can you answer it? Yeah, go ahead. And the other one is that license renewals, is this very important?
Okay, I'm perfectly, I'm aboard with that. I understand that part. But I just don't understand why you would have the say over, or, you know, go ahead and explain to me what your thinking is on that.
Daryl Clifton, for the record. You know, we, you're asking all the same questions we've been asking ourselves and everybody else over the last 12 months, and we've had the luxury of taking 12 months to answer them. So forgive us if we don't answer yours within five minutes, because it took us so long, and it's been, the calls for service, which I'd love to address with Councilwoman Sarazza also, but what we were trying to do is look for a process. And we thought, we heard from the city that the current process doesn't work very well, because you can have a bad actor bar that gets into trouble, and they get cited, and they go through the process, and then the police spend hours and hours over months and months to present a case for them to get, say, a $1,000 fine, or a Tuesday close for business, or whatever. And so their recommendation to us was that that's not working. So we thought we needed to change the process. And we talked a lot about alcohol boards, and we thought, I'm getting to your question, if we put the entire process before a different group that can have a little bit more timely authority, and a little bit more objectivity than to say, you know, how many calls of service, but to say, hey, we have all these different sources of information, citations, and citizen complaints, and police complaints, and whatever, that we could put it all together and make a more objective opinion as to whether it could be renewed. So as far as the new ones, we just lumped that in there. They need to be the ones that are making the recommendation, whether it's good or not. You know, say Joe closes this bar, and he goes and opens up another one, it's a new license, well, we have a history with Joe, so we want to have our two cents on that. So we wanted to put that into the new license.
But that's what we're supposed to have right now. The city of Reno is supposed to have that history with him. I don't...
They told us that that process is flawed.
Well, we got to fix that process.
We agree, and this was our...
See, the thing is, I understand what you're trying to do, but I don't know if I delegate that authority to a citizen group as opposed to the city, because we have to answer to them, and we have to make that determination. I understand and appreciate the willingness to try to help, but I don't know that's a citizen group to do that, it's the city of Reno to do that. And that's my feeling, if anybody else in the...
We agree.
I think we agree on that.
If I may, Your Honor, Alex Woolley, once again. The presentation that's coming up next, I think the idea, it does exist in other cities, and it is, in fact, done by the supervisors or commission or the city council. There are boards that exist, such as in Carson City, and that will be in the next presentation. And you will see that there are specific authorities and discretion that they have. So I think the idea by the DAC, they identified solutions, but you are correct, maybe it's something that should be laid with actual elected officials as opposed to this independent body.
I'm only smiling out because you've been promoing, as we say in the marketing business, what you're going to talk about. I'm sorry, okay, thank you. Karen, if I may get back to ask you, on recommendation number five, and I think you said this, but let me shake, I've got this, is the only difference from what we do now and what the DAC is recommending, the 30 days, is that the difference?
Excuse me, I believe it is, and actually, some of the changes that I've already worked on and should be coming to council soon, are timeframes with regard to this very thing, to tighten up the timeframes, and I believe that is the only change.
Okay. And then one more thing, on recommendation number six, who will document and keep that information as a source? We're talking about developing all the things that follow, then where does that all end up? How does that end up? Is there some person in the committee that's the recording secretary of this, or how does that happen?
If the council were to want to establish an alcohol review board, as they're recommending, all of those processes would have to be worked out.
Okay.
That has not yet been worked out.
Let me get back to a couple of things that public comment. And it seemed to me that there was, the real resistance and digging in the heels part came on the liability. How are we looking at approaching that and the liability? Because I understand very clearly what they said. I don't know that that's exactly what it is, but I don't know it isn't. What they said about having their people out on the sidewalk, or in the alleys, or whatever it is, that seemed to be a real, stop, don't go any farther, I've heard enough now, from public comment. So what are we looking at? What can we look at? What's the real story on liability?
Well, the real story on liability is that it's, we've got different stories today. We have Roberta calling her comp carrier, saying they're covered. We have others saying they're not.
That was for picking up trash and garbage, though. But what about stepping between two guys who want to get the best of one another?
There was, I'd have to look at the exact recommendation, but I don't believe the committee, because we had this discussion, ever suggested that security would attempt to get in the middle of some kind of a confrontation, but rather that the security would identify a confrontation and call for police assistance. There was never any indication from the committee, and the committee never suggested that they get in the middle of some kind of a confrontation. The concern was that many of the businesses feel that they're treated negatively if they have too many calls for service. And so some are hesitant to make those calls for service. So there was a balance that the committee was trying to reach with regard to that.
Okay, okay. I think right now, those are the questions that I have. Thank you. Councilman Dorch?
Thank you. I just have a couple, most of my questions have been asked. Real quick, Karen, on that same issue, can we require a business to patrol the alleys? Or is there some liability on our part if we did that?
Well, I haven't done the legal research on it. I would say we cannot require.
I would think that's...
Craig perhaps has more current research on that than I do.
Craig Scott, City Attorney's Office. I was not part of this committee. I don't know what they've done, I'm not familiar with it, but I have been for maybe about five months now, much more involved with the alcohol and business licensing situation. We went through a couple of attorneys who were laid off and no longer working for the city, who are doing that. So this is a new area to me, but in my experience, we have had some situations. I thought maybe I could give you some perspective, since I've been doing the enforcement on these matters. The police department has very recently assigned Detective Greg Meister to investigating these bars and coming forward with recommendations. He's doing a good job. When we went in front of the license revocation meetings, what we found was that often there was conduct going on outside of the premises that may or may not relate to what's going on inside the premises. We found out that a lot of the officers were not trained, and so we have worked with the police department in getting them trained to note in their police reports and to start asking questions. You, with that empty, with that bottle of alcohol in your hand, did you come from that business or that business? So we're in the process of training to get a lot more information that we can use in a license revocation hearing. One of the things that we are looking at is that issue of whether or not we can enforce, revoke someone's license for something that happens outside. Right now, one of the problems the police have is that stuff that goes on inside, a lot of these bars that are potentially problem bars, the police won't go into them unless they have adequate people to ensure their safety. So we're not getting a lot of police information about what's going on inside the bar. We're getting police information about what happens afterwards. So then the defense comes up, well, it happened outside my bar, not inside the bar. And so we run into an enforcement problem there. What we do have here is a significant legal issue that has not been decided by the Nevada Supreme Court yet, in my opinion, and that has to do with that Dram Shop Act. The Dram Shops, Anti-Dram Shop Act, says that the bar owner cannot be responsible for a personal injury that occurs outside of the bar. Essentially, it's a, in large part, a policy decision and a causation issue. So the courts have said, you can't be responsible for that. On the other hand, there are a number of California cases that use a nuisance approach. And they're basically saying, your bar, whether, by showing that there were a lot of incidents in one area that are closely related to a bar, that bar is creating a nuisance, so that even though the actions occur outside, you are creating too many calls for service, you're creating a health risk, a police risk. And so therefore, there is a potential legal peg there that could be used to potentially revoke someone's license on a nuisance theory for actions that occur outside their bar. Now, the problem, of course, is that we've got bars very close to each other, so it's very difficult to establish one person's action over another. And so at that point, you come up with a nuisance that is essentially an area. So you're not going to be able to go with a revocation on a nuisance theory for a number of actions that occurred outside of that bar. So it's a very difficult situation there. As far as the actions inside the bar, people do make calls for service. As we went in front of the hearing officer, yes?
Did you hear my question? My question was, can we require the bars to provide security in the alleyways? I mean, I would think that we would have some liability if we required bars, bar owners to have security go out and patrol the alleyways around their establishment.
My answer is indirectly, there's at least a decent argument that we can potentially revoke a license for their failure to do whatever it takes to keep from having a bunch of incidents outside the bar. And so we sort of like move the burden onto them, as opposed to saying, you have to go outside and stop that fight. So that would be the... opposed to saying, you have to go outside and stop that fight. So that would be the, the theory, and that's, that's the answer. I, I don't know that we can actually say, you have to go outside and patrol outside there, but we can say, you are potentially creating a...
Can we potentially, if we did that, could we potentially have some liability? If we, if we required them to patrol the alleyways and someone got hurt?
Well, the question might, yes, and it might not be directly for the actually getting hurt. It might be a challenge to the law itself as to its constitutionality. And I don't know, I haven't looked up the answer or that question specifically, but those would be my off-the-cuff responses.
Thank you. And then lastly, Alex, just real quick, 'cause I kind of agree with Pierre. I think maybe the best course of action here is, is to go back and kind of take a look at this and, and see if there are things that were brought up in the DAC report and, and even the other suggestions that were made for the, the off-premise cells, too, that was proposed, and kind of take a look at those and see if there are, are things in there that will help you, you know, kind of get to where we want to get as far as the council goes, as our ability to, to revoke, if we need to, licenses and make sure that we're enforcing the code as, as needed. So if there's additional code items that came out of this, I'm, I'm not in favor personally of, of establishing an alcohol review committee or a citizens committee to oversee this. And, and, you know, I, I truly don't want to have a citizens committee overseeing background checks and, you know, going through that process. But, but more so, I think there might be some ideas that were brought up during this process that might help you, and I think those are the things I'd like to see you bring back to us.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Zadra?
Karen, this is probably back to you.
Uh huh.
How do we address the issue of our desire to be able to take more information in, especially when someone has a history, when a property owner has a history of having lots of calls for service and poor management from my perspective? How are we going to be able to incorporate that, either within this agreement? I mean, I guess it's kind of addressed in their recommendation number three, but not really. So what are the next steps we would need to take for that one, one goal?
Well, pardon me. Part of it has already been mentioned, and perhaps Deputy Chief Rula would like to assist me with regard to the calls for service and gathering that information together. It is, as the system exists right now, as I understand it, exceedingly difficult to necessarily tie certain calls for service to any one location. That makes relying on those calls to deal with a particular license very challenging, and in, in some instances not fair, because they may not actually apply to that, or work the, the detriment of a bar owner not wanting to call for assistance for fear that it will work against his license. So we have to find a better way of recording that information, and I think what Craig was saying with regard to training the police officers to write their reports in a different fashion, so that we can indeed determine where these incidents occurred and are they tied to this business or not. And then gathering that information together in a process, at least as to a license renewal, to be established. But as to a new license or suspension or revocation, it's just a matter of the Police Department doing the investigation and then make, gathering that information, including it in a report, making its recommendation based upon that information. Bill, if you have anything else with regard to gathering info?
Lieutenant Bula for the record. Currently, right now, and what Mr. Scow had mentioned about training our officers to tie it closer to a building, that's one of our issues, is, is being determined that whatever happened outside the business actually stemmed from the business. The other part of it is what Detective Meister does. When he gets those reports or he gets a, a history of a, of a business, he'll go through those calls for service to determine which ones were related to the bar. I know for some bar owners I've talked to, they don't want to have that black mark put upon them. Greg will go through those to verify if they were the call, they, they initiate the calls for service for assistance versus a passerby seeing a fight that's happening just outside the bar. So we've tried to put those things in place to kind of minimize the impact on the bar owners, so we know which, you know, which calls for service exactly we're, we're focusing on.
Okay. And for Andrea, is that your name? Thank you for, you know, bringing forward your ideas. Go ahead and come, I do have a question for you. I'm not sure if you guys worked with DAC through the, the whole process. I think I remember one of you may have been there to the one meeting I attended early on, but thank you for, you know, bringing forward. We've had some applications in front of us in the last couple of meetings where we've, including today, where we asked the applicant to voluntarily agree that they wouldn't sell drug paraphernalia. Is that something that your group would take on, that convenience stores would have that, any kind of drug paraphernalia?
Absolutely, we'd take that issue. And I think that there's some ways to do it that, that are clever, that would, would result in less resistance. For instance, you know, one of our suggestions would be that, that you create, the law's the law, I mean, everybody's got to follow it. But, you know, in our, our group, our, on the package side, we're willing to do more than the law requires. In fact, we do. For instance, real fast, I mean, you know, we send mystery shoppers in our cells to check for underage sales, to make sure we're doing it right. We have age verification devices in all our stores. We do, you know, we train people unbelievably, more complicated than the law requires. So we're doing all this great stuff, so why not create an idea where the law's the law, but if the retailer will do more than the law requires voluntarily, then if they make a mistake, we get busted for selling to a minor or to somebody who's drunk or whatever, then we, and we've been, but we've done everything right. You know, we've done more than you even want us to, and because if you, if we do do that, statistically, we're gonna do much better at, at following the law. So we do everything great, more than you require, and then we get nailed for a violation, then, and we can prove to you that we've done everything great and we still screwed up. We're gonna get a reduced violation then, and if we can't prove all that to you, then we get the full violation. And so the deal is, I think the clever part of that is, it's, it's an incentive for me to do the right thing. You're not beating me up for it. I don't have to invest if I don't want to. But if I'm a retailer that's responsible and I care, and I do that, reward me for that. So you don't have resistance. If somebody doesn't want to do extra security at the bar, I mean, this, I'm trying to apply it to the bar now, or this is different. But, you know, maybe there's some extra things that people voluntarily do sign up to sign this agreement because they voluntarily want to, because they get something out of it. And if they do follow the rules in that agreement, they're gonna be a better bar owner or a better retailer, you know what I mean?
Great. Thank you very much. And I want to repeat what some of the other council members have said. To the committee members, you've just done a yeoman's job. Having sat on a couple of these committees for the city before being elected, I know what kind of time commitment it is and the stress that's involved, and I know the kind of support that you get from staff. So thank you so much for your work. I think there's a lot here for us to try and work with. You've had 12 months, we've had 24 hours. So thank you very much for your work.
Can I just ask one question? Would there be a value, we actually set up a meeting for tomorrow, a regular meeting, because we figured something like this would happen. Would there be value to put on two more people on the committee from Andrea's group for the packaged liquor license?
The packaged liquor?
Okay. I don't, I don't follow that. I don't know that, but I just wanted to know if there is, if you could see value of them going on the committee. Thank you.
Well, in, in hearing all the comments from the council people and, and things that have gone on, it was interesting that, I know Darrell and Roberta and I were in a meeting the other day, and I think Chief Evans said it pretty well, and that is that if, if we're looking at improving the situation downtown, enforcement's not the answer. It's not the bottom line answer. And in deference to the gentleman who spoke and said, we're paying for police protection, you're paying for a portion of it. When you go back and take a look at the whole thing, you're paying, the people in, that live out on Plum Lane and live on Southeast and Southwest Reno are paying a lot for the, the enforcement's downtown. So ultimately, if it came to making sure that we had more enforcement downtown, who knows? We may take a look at setting up a special district downtown that, according to the amount of calls you had, that you would pay for that amount of policing. I don't know if that's the situation. But where we are right now, we have a group of people who are trying to make it better, and I understand from the business side of it, having been and still a fellow who owns his own business, I, I don't want anybody to tell me how to run my business, but I'm telling you what, you need to get together, both sides need to get together and figure out how you do business better for both you and downtown and the community. And I think you're far apart right now. I mean, there's heels dug in on both sides. So I, I would, again, acquiesce to Councilman Hashif's idea that, that maybe there's some way to bring you back together to talk about. Mr. Dobbs, let me ask you a question. Would you come forward? And I think you kind of said this when somebody else asked you the question about, would you, would you be a member of the group in terms of giving your input and trying to work, and I think you said yes, but are we, are we gonna have two opposing sides, or is there a way to meet, to get a middle ground?
Actually, Shannon Dobbs, Five Star Saloon, I was not aware that we were directly in opposition with the Downtown Alcohol Awareness Committee, but I would like to have the opportunity, since we seem to be, as business owners, being described as a group, as a bunch of recalcitrant, recalcitrant Trojan kicking sand in each other's faces, that we have been doing several proactive things to try and be part of the community and to try and improve relations. Bar owners have gotten together. I've hosted an event with a patrolman where he's come over to the Five Star Saloon, and he has spent three hours detailing security procedures with our security with several bars that came over and, and joined us, making sure that we understood from a police perspective what our requirements and what our obligations, as well as what our abilities were in different situations. We've made numerous efforts to work with local, with our neighbors. We've, we've, I've had numerous meetings with Roberta Ross that were more or less fruitful, whatever, but, but she's my neighbor, and, you know, she comes over with a complaint. I've always been willing to talk to her. I've always been willing to listen to the complaint and try and come to terms with her as much as possible. Any other neighbors are more than welcome to, to come and talk to me about these things. I, I kind of have a problem when it gets to the point where they join a committee and come up with a bunch of attempted legislation to control how I do my business. But if somebody wants to be a good neighbor and somebody wants to approach me as a good neighbor and try and come to an agreement, I've never had a problem with that. And I've always made every attempt possible to be a good neighbor. And I think all the good business owners and all the bar owners that are downtown that, that want to be good bar owners feel the same way about this.
I understand, but, but my, my interpretation or my understanding of, of the reason they came together is to set some kind of standard, because one-to-one is fine, but what one person's talking to you about and somebody else is talking to another gentleman about two different things, if we could set kind of some kind of standard. That's why I'm saying that I, I think we take another look at this and see how we can try to bring this together.
Well, again, I, I'd like to reiterate that when the downtown, when the DAAC was formed, the original problem that was being discussed was that there was some, some major problems with paraphernalia, with Andrea's drinking, that were primarily involved with packaged liquor. There were some other situations that came up. There were some, some individual things that were, that were proposed that we didn't have a problem with. And, and back, back a, a year ago, when this whole thing started, those things were implemented and, and we put signs up on the saying, you know, there's no alcohol outside. And we did a lot of things that were to, that were an attempt to comply with the things that were identified that was on premise. But all the remaining issues, the majority of the remaining issues that were brought up was all packaged liquor. So it's, I'm a little bit confused that a year later, this proposal's coming out and it's all being directed at on premise, and the packaged liquor's completely fallen off by the wayside. And so, again, I don't have a problem with, with coming together and trying to, to come up with solutions to identified problems, but the fact that these identified problems are being presented in this, in this fashion is kind of confusing to me, and it's, it's throwing me and a lot of other business owners off guard.
Okay.
I think this could be handled in a better way.
Okay. I, I think we've discussed enough about how we would change things and at least look at it. So thank you very much. Yes, Councilman Ash?
On that, Mr. Dobbs, I think that's exactly what, what Councilman Hashif is saying. You said you voluntarily did this with the Police Department. If that's a good thing, why wouldn't we make that a requirement of all bars? I think that's, that's what he's saying. Where, where can we get together on some of these proposals?
That would be great. If you could get all the bar owners involved to get, to get together and do that, that's, that's great.
That's exactly what we're talking...
As an advisory thing, you get together with the police, sure.
Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute. I, I've heard you now. That's exactly what we're trying to do here, is what can we do voluntarily that we can meet together on to say this would work for all of us downtown? I think that's what Pierre said, is if you could go point by point on these and say why you're opposed to them, or even add in things that you would be in favor of, I think that's exactly what we're looking for, to maybe once every six months that the bar owners would be required to go to training by the Police Department.
I, I am in favor of discussion. I am in favor of education, especially discussion between the police and us and between code enforcement and us. I, I'm all in favor of all those things. What I'm not in favor of is changing legislation as, as a blanket way of fixing a problem that is primarily having to do with one or two businesses that are causing problems.
I, I understand that. I honestly do, but there's no other way for us to battle those one or two. We have to be fair across the board with what we do. It has to apply to all businesses. We can't just go after a couple businesses.
I, I don't...
So, so what we're asking is not to do something today, but can we work together on what is in here that you don't like? What is in here that you do like? Obviously, meeting with the Police Department is something that you, if they had that as one of the proposals, you would have said you were okay with it, I would assume.
Councilman, you have my 100% undivided support when it comes to enforcing code.
You still want us to change the code?
No, the problem, yeah. I don't want you changing the code and changing the laws to affect me when I'm not doing anything wrong. But what I see is a business owner that is doing things right and is not breaking the law and is not violating codes, is that in those situations where somebody is violating codes, nothing's being done about it, and instead, the proposal is, let's change the laws and make, make things more strict for everybody, instead of going after the code by the lawyers.
I understand that, too. If we're not, if we're not following up on those, I understand that, too.
And, and it looks to be for this conversation that that's on a higher level.
But I still haven't gotten an answer from you, and I really don't think we will, about whether you're gonna go do all this, because...
I, I will continue to do all this. I have been doing all this, and several other bar owners downtown have also been doing this.
Okay.
But yeah, if you have a proposal, I'd be certainly...
We've given you four today, and you've pretty much said you'll do it, then you say you're not gonna do it, and you say you're in favor of everything and you're not in favor of everything. And you don't want to be seen as obstructionist, but you came up first and said you hate everything in this thing at all. So it's either one or the other. I don't care if you hate it all, just say you hate it all.
I'd be willing to be a part of the discussion. I'm more than eager.
Thank you very much. Okay. I think we've discussed this pretty well. Is there a motion that someone would like to make?
Well, first of all, this is not unique to what we've done before. When you've got two groups that have different opinions and ultimately they, they have to somehow come to some kind of consensus. That's why I thought, you know, let's kind of go through, we're not gonna do that here today, but try to find out if, if, I don't think it's a bad idea to make sure there's signs within the bar that says you can't take your packaged liquor out or your, your open container outside. If the bar community's telling me I do that already, then, then they're, to me, they're in agreement with that. And if we're doing it already and enforcing it, then, then it's part of the code and we don't have, we don't need a new policy for that. But I'd like to see what they agree on and how they think they can make improvements and then bring that back to us. And that's what they usually do at the, the committee level. And I do agree that it should be in an ordinance, and then we'll figure a way to have it enforced by, you know, by staff through code, maybe, maybe through an administrative law judge, because I don't think the committee would appreciate how much time it's gonna be taking, taking on your part to be a judge and how many appeals and lawyers are gonna show up. And it's just gonna be, to me, there's another venue that I think is appropriate for that. And I do think that there are some very good recommendations in here. So it's just a question of figuring out, as you go through a matrix and you have the bar community say we agree or we don't agree, and here's why we don't agree, because we can't get people insured for it. I mean, I, I would like to know that before we pass it on to staff and say, put this in because it's one of the tools that's gonna help you. And, and I don't agree with requiring people to, you know, to, licensee will also support designated drivers by offering free soda or cop, soda, soda, coffee. I think that's a great idea, but I don't, I just don't feel imposing that on business would be, would be fair, since we don't do it to everybody else. So that's my thoughts, and if there's consensus for that approach, then I'd be willing to make the motion.
Any other comments, Councilman?
Yeah, I, I really appreciate what the committee did, and I wouldn't be opposed to keeping the committee in place if they are willing to do that. We have advisory boards all the time. But even if they stayed in place to help us work through all this, to get that process, and what I've heard loud and clear today is, the city has codes and ordinances, and even from our own staff, we're not enforcing them enough, and we've got to do more on that part right there to move ahead with that. I, I do believe that one thing I didn't see in here is, maybe not to patrol your sidewalks, but I sure wish we'd put it somewhere that you had to clean up your sidewalks and clean up your alleyways and do something by 6:00 in the morning. And I, I think that what the council's been trying to get to for quite a while is to get people to understand that a liquor license is a privileged license. It's not a right to have a license. It's a privileged license, and we haven't really put much on there about what the owner has to do to keep that privilege. And that's what we're looking at, is how do we get that in the middle here to where they think, they know it's a privileged license, we know it's a privileged license, we want everybody to play fair in, in the, in the same sandbox together. I like some of the proposals, like, like Councilman Hashif. I wouldn't mind if the committee stayed out if they wanted to be, as long as it'd be advisory and not, you know, this is what we're gonna do. I think that's, that's something that we could work on.
And, and what I would like to see happen is that the committee stay in existence and then have a dialogue with some of the people that spoke in opposition today, and come to the point whereby the people who are the offenders... come to the point whereby the people who are the offenders, how do we put more teeth in that rather than just making the rules, revising the rules and make them stricter as the people talked about? How, how can those people who deal in the business day to day come to that group and co-mingle your, your ideas with saying, okay, here's a way, because you, they know the business. Here's a way, the people that aren't following the rules, here's the way to get to them, or here's the way to get their attention. Because that's, I think, what was the basis behind everything that you did. It's all precipitated by a few people. And so you looked at it is from, you know, 30,000 feet and said, okay, here's what we need to do. Maybe you need to get down a little bit lower with those people and say, you know what, here, here's how we can solve the problem for the people who aren't following the rules now. And I'm hoping that that's what can come about.
Yeah. I mean, just by way of an example, I thought one of the suggestions in here was, you know, the police come and tell us, everybody tells us, we've got problems outside the bar. We can't trace it inside of the bar. So I can't hold anybody accountable. But inside the business bullet point two, it says, put in video equipment. So you know what goes inside the bar. So if you have a big problem outside the bar, you just ask for the, for the tape and you roll it and you say, well, you serve this guy 12 drinks inside the bar and now he's causing a problem outside the bar. That's the solution. To me, it's the simple solution. But, you know, what's video equipment cost? 15 grand? I don't know. That's pretty, pretty substantial. So, I mean, I would like, I mean, who else better than make, help make up the rules than the stakeholders that are in it? And we've done that time and time again at this, whether it's, you know, you name it, just about any industry that we've, that we've dealt with. And we've usually come to consensus. So that's why I think if they're willing to sit down, come up with a solution that people can live with, let's put it in an ordinance, give the staff some additional tools and then, and then move on. I'm agreement with keeping the committee around because obviously they can be a resource.
Okay. Would you make a motion, a brief motion and we'll move on? Is there other comment, Councilman?
Question, because are we going to do packaged liquor separately then? Because I would like some of those recommendations incorporated in. And I just don't want to wait another six months or a year to implement them. So are we going to look at packaged liquor and just do it citywide? Because if not, then I want to put in some things first half to do.
I'm sorry, excuse me. I think what we're talking about now is, is somehow getting the group together to discuss further with, how they can, how they can work together and, and come up with the rules. And that, but I think we're going to have next is the packaged liquor. And then that would apply as this group meets in the future. I don't think we're making any determination right now about it.
Well, I guess that depends staff. I mean, it seems to me you'd want recommendations to stick in an ordinance that would deal equitably across the board, whether it's a bar, packaged liquor or whatever. Or do you want us to take on this recommendation and then leave for another day, the packaged liquored group?
The packaged liquor, and I hate to say it one more time, but the packs liquor is in my presentation, the next item, and it is for the citywide. It is for citywide.
That's good. I'll just hold off.
Let's keep it separate then. We'll do that separate. Yeah. Okay.
All right. I'll make the motion that the, that the committee meet once again. I mean, obviously you're all invited and, and ultimately I, I want to see what you agree with and what you don't agree with, what improvements you think you can, that can be made. And ultimately with the understanding, it's going into an ordinance so that we can deal with it equitably with, with respect to, and Dave's right, every business, we just can't single out people unless we have the rules of the game in an ordinance and then people violate those and then we can single people out. So I would make that recommendation. And then I would presumably think, could we have something back here and within 30 days? Do you think? The committee's meeting tomorrow. At least give us a staff report within 30 days on where the committee is at and then we can figure out what the, you know, what the next steps are going to be.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. I just wanted to apprise City Council that, as you know, the two deputy city attorneys previously assigned to this area were, the positions were reduced during, due to the budget. The city attorney actually utilized forfeiture funds to bring Karen Fraley back from retirement. Her time as a retiree to earn money will be up in about a week. So we will transition the duties to Deputy City Attorney Ska. So that's where we are on budgetary funding and staffing availability in the city attorney's office.
Okay. I'll see you guys back here next week then.
He's joking. He's joking.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Thank you all very much.
I don't know what to take serious or not. I'm sorry. I don't mean to be disrespectful. Is that the meeting tomorrow, we set it up because we knew we'd have to do it. It's not noticed that we're going to be discussing about this?
Understood. We're back to 30 days where staff would just report back to us. If it takes you more than 30 days to make, to come back with those consensus recommendations, staff will tell us that when they get back to us within 30 days.
Okay, thank you.
So take whatever you need.
Second.
We have an adjournment and a second. We are adjourned. Let's, let's reopen the city council meeting and the academy has asked that the presentation be made by Mr. Woodley, who has been ballyhooing his presentation all day. So we hope it lives up to the...
What agenda item is this one?
Hold on a second. Hold on. We have another precinct heard from. Your, all your votes aren't in yet. So you're going to have to sit down. There, there has been a question that Ms. Matievich, who is a semi-permanent resident in Carson City, come forward and talk about legislation so she could make her day a little bit shorter. Can we do that ahead of Mr. Woodley?
Sure. You were on the meeting.
Ms. Matievich, would you come forward, please?
As Mr. George said, he thought yours might be brief.
Did you hear that? He thought yours might be brief?
I did hear that. For the record, Cadence Matievich, thank you for the consideration. They are long days these days. So I, I do very, not, not all of your staff is working long days. I don't mean to imply that I'm the only one, but I appreciate the consideration.
And, and as you said the other day, it's much nicer to hang out with this group of people than the other group of people.
Indeed.
Yeah, you said that. Okay.
I did say that. I'm always happy to be in City Hall. And I will try and make this as quick as I can. I do have a number of bills to, to bring before you today for your consideration. The good news is since I last visited with you, there have been no new bills introduced. So we are, we are getting through that stack of 500 that was released within the last two weeks and, and have the bulk of those, I think, before you at this point. And so with no further ado, I will jump into those. The first one for your consideration today is AB 376. This makes various changes regarding the financing of certain local improvements with revenue pledged from sales and use taxes, more commonly referred to as star bonds. At this point, and, and I would note that Assistant City Manager Hester is actually in Carson City as we speak, meeting with the sponsor, the primary sponsor of this bill, Assemblywoman Smith, to discuss any concerns that we might have with the bill as it's drafted, before it's introduced with the intention of introducing a clean bill that can make its way through the system. At, at this time, staff's recommend, we do have some concerns with the bill, but we do think that, that the sponsor would be open to some amendments and that if that's the case, our recommendation would be to support the bill if amended.
What are some of our concerns with the, and, and two questions. Is this basically the same bill she introduced last time or is it different? Do you know?
It, it is different. It is based on that bill. It really looks more like the bill as it moved through the process and we'd had an opportunity to have some input. It addresses some of the prevailing wage issues, some of those things that have actually been a challenge for us. So in many ways, this bill actually would be a help to us.
We supported it last time.
We did. And, and, and that's really what the conversation at this point is intended to address. Let me see if I can. There, there is some retroactive language that's in the current draft that, that we are requesting be stricken. And that's really, I think, our primary concern at this point.
Cabela's problem? Is that what it was?
Yes. And potentially the freight house as well. So, so we want to make sure that that language is stricken before we would support it. And that would be one of the conditions, as I indicated. You know, I think Mr. Hester's down there working with her. The City of Sparks is present there this evening as well to work through those issues.
Is that the big one? I mean, you're asking us to support it if it's amended, but I don't really know. That's the only one you want us to part that's going to, got to be amended is the retroactive? Oh, second. I don't know if we want to do this one at a time or, oh, you're running the show up here.
About that. Didn't realize that Dan was gone. So the staff recommends to support with, you sure you don't need more time to figure out if there's any?
They're talking to her right now. There's no...
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be to support if amended. You know, and I think that the direction would be that, you know, from a staff level, if we have, if we have issues that are of concern and they're not amended, that, that we, we would withdraw that position of support. But if it's amended to address our concerns, that we would support it.
So that's your motion? It, it would be to support provided it's amended to address staff's concerns. And then Dave, you had a second, right?
Yes.
All right. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is Assembly Bill 446. This imposes an excise tax on use of services in this state. There's been a lot of conversation about moving from just taxing goods to include services. And this bill would impose a tax on services at a rate of 1% for the total amount charged. And, and those taxes would be distributed similar to the way the current taxes, sales and use taxes are distributed. Staff's recommendation, obviously if this is, if this is enacted, it would result in a different, in additional revenue to the city. Staff's recommendation at this point is in, is a neutral position because we feel like this is really a policy decision on the part of the council as to whether or not a tax increase is appropriate under the current economic conditions. And so with that, I would let you have deliberation as to the policy of this bill.
Do you want me to keep going, Dan? Do you know if they're willing to make any changes to reallocate the way sales tax is distributed? So this particular, particular revenue stream would be based on where it's generated?
Councilman Hascheff, there is discussion regarding the C-Tax distribution formula. There are two bills that have been heard thus far this, this session. One was from the city of Fernley and the other from the city of North Las Vegas. The city of North Las Vegas is, requests a study, an interim study of the C-Tax allocation. So potentially, you know, I don't know that this particular bill would be the vehicle for that. I think that conversation is already happening. But certainly that discussion is ongoing.
Any other comments? I mean, I personally would support it if they, if they were going to change the allocation, which would give the cities, it's based on the site. It's not the formula that basically reallocates. So we'd keep what we generate. But that's just my opinion.
But this is a new tax. This isn't an additional.
Oh, I know.
This is a new tax on professional services.
Correct.
Professional services, retail services. Yes.
So for example, if I send out a bill for a hundred bucks, now it's going to be a hundred and one dollars.
That's correct, Councilman.
And then I take, I have to fill out a tax return every quarter at least, send in the amount. And then, then it would get reallocated based on whatever formula they decide.
That's correct.
So I might, I might be in the minority on this. I'd be willing to support it provided, you know, they reallocated the money where it was generated. So if I, if I'm remitting those funds because my office is in the city, then I know it's coming back to the city. Go ahead.
You were here a while beforehand. They did this study.
Mm-hmm.
And Cadence, is that part of what's being proposed is that it would just, it would reduce the overall sales tax rate? Or is it just the 1% additional?
It's 1%. It's essentially, there's a different tax rate depending upon what's being consumed. If it's, if it's goods, then it's the current rate and formula. If it's service, it's 1%.
Is there any exemptions? Because right now there's a lot of exemptions in the current sales tax rate. Is there any exemptions on the 1%? For example, doctor's visits, things like that?
Councilwoman, I'd have to look through it. In my first reading of it, I don't recall seeing any exemptions. I think that the only exemption that I recall seeing was nonprofits. Services provided by nonprofits.
Yeah, I guess that's, that's one of the issues. It's just like they did with the groceries. That's my issue with it is that some things I think professional services should be exempt. But I think, I think the concept, we've talked about it a long time, but I thought that what was going to happen is there was going to build, be a bill requested that would go down to the 5%, that would just be flat 5% on everything.
And Councilwoman, I think that there is a strong possibility that there, that that will come at the end of the session as part of the broader budget. Bills, I mean, the, the, the money committees have all received a number of presentations that have provided pretty compelling evidence that since the late 1940s, the, the, you know, the pendulum has, has shifted in, in our country in what we consume from the greater percentage of that being goods to the greater percentage of that being, being services. And so my sense is that perhaps this bill was submitted by, by the sponsor, you know, before, before their original deadline and, and that it may be a vehicle for that in, in the end. Or it, this, you know, this bill may not pass and it may be a component of, of the larger budget bills that pass towards the end of the session. I, I did find within the text of the bill, the exemptions. And the exemptions are any services that are prohibited from taxing under the Constitution of the United States or the Constitution of Nevada. Services provided to a governmental entity. So we would not pay that just the same way we don't pay that on, on goods. Services provided by or to a nonprofit organization created for religious charitable or educational purposes. Services provided by one member of a group or of affiliated enterprises to another group of, of this, another member of the same group. Services for which the amount received for those services is included in the measure of any excise tax imposed in the state. So if you've already, they're not going to double tax you. And, and Councilwomen, those are, those are the only exemptions that I'm reading in the bill currently.
So presumably if somebody goes to the doctor, they get a bill. Insurance picks up the majority of it. So presumably the insurance companies, as I understood the argument, the insurance company picks up the additional 1% and then they factor that into the premiums.
Correct.
Well, it looks like the appetite is just to stay neutral then? Let's stay neutral until maybe you can get some more information on it? At best. Okay. All right.
I'd be willing to stay neutral on it. I mean, I, I want to get some more information because...
Understood. That's fair. So there's a motion to stay neutral until staff gets more information on the bill. Is there a second? All right. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
The next bill for your consideration is Assembly Bill 449. This revises provisions relating to economic development. And this is a significant bill. I will tell you that when the bill was presented on Monday morning, at the table at the same time presenting the bill were Speaker Osagura, Senate Majority Leader Horford, the governor and the lieutenant governor, all together at the same table, singing from the same songbook. So Councilwoman Farazi, you've asked me a couple of times, what chance does this bill have? I'd give this one the best chance that I've seen so far. There is a tremendous amount of support for this, for this bill. I don't, at this point, I don't know if the council wants me to go through all of the details of the bill. It is, as I said, a significant piece of legislation that seeks to completely overhaul our economic development system in, in this state. I would point out that at this point, in the reading of the bill, I think the areas of greatest interest and perhaps concern for the city would be Section 17 of the bill. The state is prohibited by the Constitution from granting funds to private enterprise. And the sponsors of the bill have received an indication from the Legislative Council Bureau that local governments do not have that same prohibition. And so essentially we would be the portal through local governments, not necessarily the city of Reno, but local governments... But local governments would be the portal through which the economic development funds created by this bill would be transferred through to the private enterprise. And so, the bill, when it was presented, had significant amendments. They did not go through all of the amendments. There's still work to be done on that. My guess is that this particular bill will have its own work session where those elements are gone through. I think, you know, obviously, we're going to be very engaged in the conversation where it relates to us interfacing with this. But there is broad-based support for this bill.
Okay, I think we pretty much have that. We've got a couple of other things we'd... I'm sorry you spent so much time, but to go through those because we've got to get the star performance from Mr. Woodley yet today and...
Right, I don't want to hold that out.
That's right.
Cadence, one quick question though. I guess my only concern with the bill, I can see them saying, "Take a percentage of this fund to fund the thing." So, that's my biggest concern with the bill is that they're going to have us do some sort of set aside, especially if they're going to pass it on to the local governments.
Yeah, Councilwoman Farazi, as I read the bill right now, I do not see that we are, that we have been identified as the funding source for this.
Not yet.
I think it's, again, going to be one of the things that comes out in the end of the session in the final budget bills. You know, certainly, and I will get to this in just a minute, there are some bills that seek to divert local revenue. A piece of that is ours more substantially. Washoe County is looking at significant fiscal impacts. And so, there is, you know, a question of the states creating this $10 million fund at the time that they have a deficit, which they are seeking to divert local revenues to fill that deficit. So, I think your concern is legitimate.
But your recommendation is to monitor it, right?
My recommendation at this point is to monitor it because we have not had the details of how we will interface with the program fully explained to us.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Don't you think we ought to support it? I mean, you've said as much as it's going to pass. Didn't we being supportive?
Yeah, I think we should support it. I mean, it's good, as long as they support, as long as they fund it.
Well, I mean, that's the point. If you're going to go to support, then let's add under what conditions we would support it.
Support if they fund it.
Well, the way I read this, isn't it coming from the abandoned property trust account? So, the state collects those funds.
Unclaimed property is one of the places that has been identified. That's been identified in other budget proposals. So, those would need to be reconciled against one another.
So, in other words, we would support it provided they don't come to the local government, take our money, and put it in that fund? Is that your point?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I'll make that motion that we'll support it under that condition.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you very much.
Okay, I will speed this up if I can. AB 467 revises provisions relating to local government. This bill is an Assembly Government Affairs Committee bill. Right now, staff's recommendation is to support if amended. We have been working with the sponsor of the bill to identify our concerns. This also is a significant piece of legislation that would require consolidation of business license and building functions within Clark County, all of the local government entities there, and also in Washoe County. This sort of pushes us down the path that I think we're already heading down with the subcommittees from the Shared Services Elected Officials Group. But it does not necessarily follow the same model that we were heading down. So, I would point out that it does provide a funding mechanism for these services and that's part of the reason that we have a support recommendation if it's amended to address our concerns.
Move to support?
If amended.
Yeah, I mean, the building enterprise funds totally in favor of consolidation of the building departments and I think it'd be good for the community to have one place, so...
All right, second.
Aye.
Moving on to Senate Bill 392. This creates the Nevada Advisory Committee on Intergovernmental Relations as a statutory committee. This committee operated in the interim as a part of Senate Bill 264 from the last legislative, less regular legislative session. And this would make this committee a permanent statutory committee. It is, it does have a sunset provision that the committee would sunset in June of 2015. Local governments do have a representative on the board. And it's intended to foster effective communication, cooperation, and partnerships amongst the state government and local governments. This is a way for us to remain engaged with the legislature during the interim and so staff's recommendation is that we support.
Move to support?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Senate Bill 434. This is the Division of Budget and Planning. It's the governor's office. This is a bill, it's part of their budget plan that would redirect a portion of property taxes from local governments in Clark and Washoe Counties and appropriate it to the Nevada System of Higher Education. The impact to the city of Reno from this diversion would be approximately 1.2 million over the biennium. This is a piece of the nine cents that's been going away that people...
Move to oppose?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Senate Bill 491 makes various changes regarding public revenue and taxation. This bill seeks to divert those same funds. However, the fund, it just goes into the State General Fund rather than being particularly earmarked for higher education. I would note that additionally, this bill requires the deposit of county operating property tax as well. So, the fiscal impact to the city, it's the same 1.2 million to us. But it also diverts another piece of property tax that's paid in our community to the State General Fund as well.
Move to oppose? Motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
If I may, just very quickly on that, sort of going down that path. I mentioned that Washoe County is facing significant impacts to their budget and wanted to quickly have the conversation with the council. I have not specifically lined out the bill numbers in my report today because it's not a diversion directly from the city of Reno. But as I mentioned, right now, with the bills that have been proposed, the county is facing potentially a $27 million impact to their budget. And I think the impacts of that on this community would be significant. Certainly, as we look at child welfare, mental health issues that may, in the long run, impact the Reno Police Department and other divisions of the city's operations. And so, just wanted to see if the council wanted to have a conversation and to consider potentially opposing those bills as well.
Is that over the biennium, the 27, or yearly? Not that either one isn't bad, but...
No, Councilman, that's per year.
What is council's pleasure? Take a stand opposing those or not?
I think we do need to support. It will impact us as well.
Well, the voters voted for it, didn't they?
Yeah.
I'll support what the voters said. They said no impacts to local government unless you ask the local government and talk to us down here.
Okay.
We listen to the voters, even though the state may not. Okay, and if there are no other questions?
Any other questions?
I would conclude my report.
There's a couple of bills out there that I've heard at Tumwa about the open meeting law. They're trying to make some modifications to that. In fact, levying big fines for us up here, like if we follow the advice of our attorneys, that we could be fined for that.
Councilman, we have been engaged on those bills. And as they've moved through the process, significant amendments have been brought forward on those bills that we feel address those issues. And so, it has, at this point, in their current forms, we do not feel that we would have a substantial impact from those bills as they're amended.
What do you mean, we wouldn't have a substantial impact?
That some of the penalties that were originally included in the bill will be amended out if it makes it, if the bill even makes it. It's had a hearing...
I'd like to see on the reports because it doesn't impact anybody out there. It only impacts us up here. So, of course, it doesn't impact you.
Actually, Councilman, the way the bill was originally written, it would have impacted staff as well.
So, it was important to get yourselves amended out?
Well, it's important to get all of us amended out.
But I mean, the bills are pretty onerous. I mean, and part of it is actually going to be handled in the United States Supreme Court this month. Kerrigan is on the Tumwa Water Bill and he followed the advice of his attorneys and still got plastered. And that's just where we are. They don't, even if we follow the advice of our attorneys, they want us to be held personally liable for making mistakes.
Yes, and Councilman, just so you know, I mean, when we presented our legislative operations plan, there were certain legislative principles in there and in, you know, to not bring back all 475 bills where the subject matter is not, for the majority, a policy decision. Staff has been working, department heads, the manager's office, and the attorney's office, that bills that clearly have a negative impact or a positive impact, we have been working on those bills, opposing them, supporting them. But we have not been bringing back every single bill to you. If it's your desire for us to do that, we can.
That's why I asked on these particular ones, I'd like to see them. I didn't say bring them all back.
And I'm happy to do that. I just wanted you to understand that it's not that we don't think that they're important and that we're not engaged. We absolutely are. We just have been trying to, in the interest of giving Mr. Woodley his time, limit the number of bills that we're bringing before you.
Thank you. One quick question. Depreciation, Cadence, because I did get a call, is that bill being withdrawn? What's happening?
Councilwoman, at this point, it was scheduled for a hearing yesterday. It was pulled off of the agenda at the last minute. There are some concerns as we have, and I say we, myself, other cities, staff at the League of Cities have been visiting with committee members and legislators as we do prior to a hearing. Significant amount of concern expressed that this bill potentially would get pulled away from us and potentially turn into a vehicle to enact Proposition 13 in our state. And so, I believe Mr. Fraser from the League of Cities is polling the board members... That was a league bill, AJR 1. That's a league bill. And I believe that Mr. Fraser is polling the board members of the League of Cities to see if there is a consensus on whether or not to withdraw that bill or not because of the danger of it being utilized.
Yeah, so I guess that's what I wanted to ask the council is what you guys want to do on that? On that bill?
I think we continue to support it. If they want to do Prop 13, they can tag it on to anything they want to, pretty much. There's, I'm sure there's another bill out there. I mean, this is how we get beat down all the time, is we keep getting these threats. And so, they get us to withdraw our bills.
So, you guys want to keep it?
I think so.
Okay, because I mean, we're going to be voting on this. So, I wanted to find out from the council first what you guys wanted to do.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
It must be time for the twice... Yeah, for the twice-delayed, often ballyhooed, Academy Award-winning nominee, Mr. Alec Woodley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Alex Woodley, for the record, Code Enforcement Manager. What I'm going to do today, I have a presentation for the council. And what I will do, Your Honor, if I may, is go through the slides and the presentation and then at the end, answer any questions because I know your time is constrained here. Today's presentation is in response to recently, over the past several months, city council has received many public comments with regards to drug paraphernalia, packaged liquor sales, tattoo parlors in concentration, certain areas of the city, and also regarding restricted gaming. So, staff received direction from council to research what laws exist on the books now, what laws are out there, and what law, and bring suggestions to the council to see what you would entertain for staff to go back to the drawing board and see if it's something we can implement. Having said that, I'll start off with the drug paraphernalia. The issue, the identified issue, as we know, is there appears to be an influx of drug paraphernalia in stores, particularly in convenience stores, but in other stores as well. It's not necessarily just the convenience stores with liquor licenses, but any store can have them. We have record stores, other type of stores that do sell them. In my research, I found that they appear to be a very profitable business. We don't think that there's any intent specifically from these owners. It's just that, as you can see here in the slide, you can get a bag of 100 pipes for $500 and sell them for up to $2,200. And to give you an idea, as I'm sure some of you have seen it before, the problem is that many of these stores are accessible to children. They're in areas that were visited by tourists. And this is what it looks like when they go into these stores. Some stores honestly have them, and the one in the first top-left corner, you can tell that store, they have it on their front window that faces Virginia Street. So, some may have seen that, feel that this is a little insulting or offensive. Not insulting, but offensive. One of the main reasons that they say they sell these pipes is that it's for tobacco use. So, with that, myself and supervisor, Code Enforcement Supervisor Joe Henry, we went out and went to some tobacco shops, to the tinderbox, to Fumare. And we talked to them about their pipes and what types of pipes they have. As you can see here, the bowls are pretty big for the tobacco. My understanding from the education I've received recently is that the tobacco flakes are pretty big. So, you need to have a bowl that's approximately anywhere from a nickel to a quarter to a half-dollar size. Whereas these other glass pipes that you saw on the previous slide, they tend to be the size of either a dime or smaller. And it's very difficult for you to smoke tobacco in those little tiny pipes with the little tiny bowls. However, they are very effective for whether it's marijuana or crack, cocaine, et cetera. The existing laws that we have on the books, we do have drug paraphernalia defined. It's very similar to the NRS. It's exact wording, actually. The biggest issue we have is that it's not allowed, but the way it's described is that there's a lot of focus given to the intended use. And it's a criminal citation. It's unlawful and it can be cited as a criminal misdemeanor. As you can see in 817-030, any person who uses or possesses with intent to use, and that's where we seem to get stuck with being able to make them unlawful because there are factors that will help staff identify if they are in fact intended for use, which would be, for example, a statement from the owner. So, I would have to go to the store, police officers have to go to the store and ask that owner of the store, "Hey, is this for marijuana or for crack?" And if the person is half-smart, they'll obviously say, "No, of course not. It's novelty or for tobacco." And that's typically what we see when we go in there. And that's what I understand from the police department as well. Laws in other jurisdictions, I went to, particularly in the state, but I also looked outside of the state just to have an idea of what's around the country. In Hollywood, Florida, the way they address it is they allow it, the sale, although if you'll notice in the first bullet, it says that it's unlawful to have, to possess, intend to use drug paraphernalia. They still acknowledge that there are places that have the ability to sell it because of this issue with intent. So, what they do is they regulate it, as you see in number one, to where any store cannot have it visible to minors. So, if the store is visited by minors, whether it's a grocery store, record store, what have you, then they cannot have those items in the store. There's an exception where it says that minors may be allowed if accompanied by adults and if said items are out of public view. In other words, that they're in another room in a separate area of the business, similar to what we would see with pornography, adult videos, X-rated movies. The funny thing about the state of Florida, though, is that they do have a state statute that only allows the sales of this type of paraphernalia in smoke shops. And the statute is pretty specific. It says 75% of their grocery receipts must be from the sale of tobacco products. And no more than 25% of their grocery receipts can be from the sales of the paraphernalia. So, they're pretty strict on how they address it. I did go local with, as far as the state is concerned, the city of Henderson. They identify the visibility of any kind of drug paraphernalia in any business, in any place, as a public nuisance and that it can be abated. And it does provide a penalty. And that's pretty much how they address it, similar to that of Florida, that it cannot be visible to anyone visiting the store or the establishment. The city of North Las Vegas is a little bit more strict. They actually went through and defined each particular item that can be identified as drug paraphernalia with their own definition, aside from what the NRS. They were pretty specific. For example, here, marijuana hashish pipe, it states in here, "Means a pipe characterized by a bowl which is so small that the primary use for which it is reasonably adapted or designed is for smoking of marijuana hashish rather than lawful smoking tobacco," which goes back to what I said previously. And if you'll notice, item B1, they do identify that it's unlawful for any person to sell those items, period, in any store. If you'll notice, C2, it's particular to businesses where it says, "In addition to the above penalties, the violation of any provision or provisions of this section shall be grounds for business license revocation or suspension." I also looked at Pierce County, Washington State, because here, they pretty much got around the wording of the intent use. And if you'll see in bold, it says, "Any item," let me get back really quick. What you'll notice is the drug paraphernalia definition and it's unlawful use or unlawful to obtain or have in possession is very similar in every state. It's the same law, it's almost verbatim. But each city and town and counties in some states have different ways of fine-tuning it or being more restrictive. For example, here, what they stated was whether useful for non-drug-related purposes or not. It is still unlawful to display, et cetera. So, they got around the issue of the intent. There is no need for police or code enforcement to prove that there was an intent. It is unlawful to have, period. And as you can see in item 2B, it's unlawful to even advertise the sale of such items. Staff's suggestions, these suggestions are all that you're going to see for each issue that we have identified. They're all and/or suggestions for council to pick and choose. Keep in mind that the suggestions that you will see have not been passed through or reviewed by the city attorney's office or analyzed by the city attorney's office. Because I didn't want to give them 25 suggestions to do a whole bunch of research on 25 items, as you'll see as we go along the slide, but rather to wait until we got direction from you as to which route you want staff to go. And then, at that point in time, refer and work with the city attorney's office to see how we can implement them. Now, keep in mind that everything that is in here is based on laws that already exist, whether within the state or outside in other states. One of the suggestions is to prohibit it outright. No store, no establishment can sell it. Another suggestion is go the route of the privileged license, that if you are in possession of any privileged license, you cannot have the sales of drug paraphernalia and define what that drug paraphernalia is. Another route would be to prohibit the display of the paraphernalia, similar to Florida and other states where they have to keep it somewhere separate and have the ability to identify what those items are that is drug paraphernalia. And here, I specifically wrote to, that it should be approved by the Reno Police Department because they're the ones who primarily would be dealing with it because we don't want them to say, "Oh, this is my designated area." And we realize that it doesn't, in fact, it is still visible from. Another possibility is limit the area, the square footage of the store to where they can dedicate for the paraphernalia. Other options would be the SUP requirement, require the special use permit if someone is going to sell that, sell drug paraphernalia, it'd be a special use permit requirement. Another option could be privileged license. As you know, privileged licenses require background checks. If we're dealing with someone who decides to sell drug paraphernalia, then they would have to be required to get a privileged license and a background check. Another option here is similar to that of the state of Florida, which is to only allow it in the smoke shops. And identify the smoke shops, provide a definition. So, maybe something similar to Florida, 75% of your grocery receipts or your square footage or what have you would have to be dedicated to the tobacco sales. And then also with the possibility of providing distance standards, so far from schools, so far from churches, parks, from one another, et cetera. And that could be done under the zoning code. The next issue that was identified from a lot of public comment was tattoo parlors and what appeared to be saturation of them in certain areas, certain neighborhoods. As you see where I identify the issues, I write things such as, "It has been noted that an influx of such establishments may negatively impact market values, aesthetics and visual qualities of the surrounding properties." These are not staff's particular statements. These are statements that I actually found in other ordinances and in other city council meetings and other minutes. For example, these words, similar to them or exact wording, were in ordinances implemented by Ventura, California, Windsor, California, Tempe, Arizona, Des Moines, Iowa. So, these are, this isn't our opinion, but actual verbiage that we found out there. I provided you a map here of downtown area, the core downtown. As you can see, there is a proposed, in blue, with the blue dot, there is a proposed location. We do not have an application for it. However, we have seen that that building, the exterior, has been painted. And it does say Tattoo Shop, but we haven't seen the business license yet. To give you a better idea of the area between here and the corner of Wells and Virginia Street, this is the total tattoo parlors we have within this vicinity, very close to the downtown area. We have a total of 17 at this time with the possibility of an 18th, number 18. With existing laws, we have a definition in zoning code. We also have various areas where it is allowed by right. There is no special use permit requirement except for one particular area. As you can see there, Conventional Regional Center. We have about a dozen allowed areas. This is a little different from other jurisdictions. As you can see, the city of Henderson is only permitted by conditional use, conditional use permit. Fullerton, California, also special use permit. Carson City, special use permit. And Vista, California, special use permit. If you'll notice, California cities, they have distance requirements. 500 feet, 250, a maximum on the square footage of the establishment. A requirement that the actual actions that occur are not visible from persons outside of the property, outside of the property. In other words, if you're in the street, you can't see someone actually getting a tattoo. The Vista, California, you'll notice they have their buffer zones as well, but they also have a cap for their population. They deem that they didn't want more than one per 40,000 in their population. The suggestions that we provided is similar to those that exist in other areas within the state, which is, number one, reduce the number of zone areas allowed. As you saw, some areas were two, one or two zoned areas, whereas we have over a dozen. Maybe require a special use permit. Staff is aware that our current special use permit cost is pretty expensive, $4,500, I believe, starting off. So, staff would probably recommend something, creating a new special use permit or a conditional use permit, which exists in other cities, which have standard conditions in which, for example, the distance requirements and buffers could be part of those standard conditions. Doesn't require as much staff time because all the conditions in there are standard. Also, establish location limitations, which goes back to that. Additional information is to keep in mind that they are regulated by the Washoe County Health Department and they do not appear to require higher demand of city services, which is normally the reasoning for us to require or suggest making a privileged license. Tattoo parlors, they do not appear to be a burden on the city resources. The next item we had is packaged liquor in convenience stores, particularly the issue of what appears to be many, an influx of convenience stores with packaged liquor licenses coming before the council downtown. As we know, we have the moratorium, so there is still 14 within the RDA 1 district, plus one on Evans. There is concern with that as well, influx of them as they can appear to have significant impact on the image of a neighborhood or particularly in downtown. Mostly because these convenience stores that we're talking about are those that come in primarily as a liquor store, pretty much. I mean, even in their signs, it says liquor, tobacco and groceries or Sam's Liquor and Smoke. But they say that they're a convenience store. Unfortunately, sometimes we go into the stores and half of their grocery items are expired. So, it becomes pretty evident to us that their primary business is in fact the sale of liquor and probably smoke as well, tobacco. A convenience store, we do have a definition, 5,000 square feet or less. As you'll notice, the last sentence, it says, "A store of less than 5,000 square feet, which deals primarily with the retail sale of alcohol, would also be categorized as a convenience store." We do not have a definition for a liquor store in our code. And that is why you'll notice that many stores that come before you even appears to be a liquor store, but we still call them a convenience store as long as they're selling food as well. But even if they weren't, as you can tell by this definition, they would fall under that category. Oh, we do have a significant number of areas where they are allowed. I believe it's approximately 30, as you can see there in that list, and that's by right. Some of the lines, you'll notice they have multiple different sections of neighborhoods, Wells, Keystone, California and Truckee. We have four areas that are required with special use permit. And we do have one area where they're prohibited outright, and that's within the Wells Avenue neighborhood plan, which we're very familiar with. An existing relative law that we have on the books that I think council is aware of pertains specifically to on-premise sales. Currently, in the code, city council does have discretion to deem what is desirable and undesirable with regards to on-premise sales. That means a bar or a nightclub or restaurant, et cetera. And as you can see here, it does take into consideration if it's the proximity to a school, church, or if it's becoming burdensome for police monitoring purposes. Existing laws in other jurisdictions, I did go local and outside of the state. Carson City, pretty close, right down the street, they have a board, which is composed of the actual supervisors and the sheriff. And they meet, and they have a lot of discretion and power in the board with regards to any type of liquor licenses. As you can see there in item 1A, it says granting or denying, providing limitations, putting conditions, restrictions, suspending and revoking. Item D, if they deem that it is a public nuisance, if they deem that it will be too much within a particular area. Item F, you see here, it states fixing the hours of the days of when it can be open and sell alcohol. In Chicago, Lanois, they have a buffer requirement of 100 feet, churches, schools, et cetera. Des Moines, Iowa, they have something similar as well, 75 feet. They're actually looking at new law zoning change to actually require that grocery seats, similar to that which I spoke of with tobacco products, of no, 60% of their grocery receipts have to be items other than alcohol. So, it has to, whether grocery stores or pharmacies, 60% of their grocery receipts have to come from merchandise sales. And so, no more than 40 from the actual alcohol sales. Henderson, Nevada, they have distance limitations for the alcohol uses. And you'll see here in the next slide. Category three is the off-premise sale of alcohol, packaged liquor. So, there you have a buffer school site, 500, vehicle travel distance of 1,500, 1,500. To give you an idea what that means is, for example, from here, from this building to the post office, that's approximately less than 500 feet. Now, if we didn't have Virginia Street Bridge, we would have to go drive down maybe as far as Arlington, go around because of the river. So, that there, even though it's within less than 500 feet, because if the owner was able to show that it took at least 1,500 feet in vehicle traffic to get there, then they would be able to be within that buffer. So, they did take that in consideration. That's why there's that difference there between the regular buffer and the vehicle travel distance. In the city of North Las Vegas, any liquor license requires, packaged liquor requires a conditional use permit. As I stated before, conditional use permits, they typically have standard requirements in there. And they also have a requirement that as soon as someone comes in and applies, they must provide notarized affidavit to the effect of the distance proximity from another liquor license or daycare or school, and I'll show you in the very next slide. So, here you'll notice, city of North Las Vegas, they require a special use permit for any liquor license. I stand corrected, a conditional use permit for off-site liquor license and a special use permit for onsite liquor license. Here's their distance requirement. If you look down to where it says full off-sale, you'll notice they have 400 feet, 400 feet, 1,500 feet and 500 feet. And that separation from schools, churches, parks, 1,500 feet between each other. So, if you have a liquor store 1,500 feet, you cannot have another one or a new one come into that area. It has to be at least 1,500 feet away. And then also from residential, 500 feet. Staff's suggestions are for, with specific to convenience stores, is provide, and I recommend this because this is what council has done in the past, seeking agreements with business owners, is maybe requiring in the zoning code a maximum for their square footage of what can be dedicated to the sales of alcohol. Council may also want to include tobacco in that. And I only state that because, as we know, sometimes when we implement something new, then a new problem arises. And I can't, staff can anticipate that we might get that 10% dedicated to alcohol, but then we have 40% dedicated to tobacco sales, just to avoid that. And we just see if it's predictable, maybe it's preventable. Another option would be to require a special use permit or conditional use permit. Minor, as I stated before, 4,500 seems a bit expensive. That's the current cost right now for the city. Establish location limitations, similar to that what we saw in Henderson and North Las Vegas, require a special use permit, like in North Las Vegas, for all packaged liquor licenses. Another option would be to maybe look into amending that section of the code that currently gives city council discretion with regards to on-premise alcohol sales. Maybe include off-premise as well in that same discretionary section of the code. The next item we have is the restricted gaming. This is an issue that appears to be occurring throughout the entire state with regards, the biggest issue is whether or not the restricted gaming at certain establishments, whether or not they are incidental. Per state law, per our law, per North Las Vegas, Las Vegas, Clark County, the requirement is, is that it must be incidental to the primary use. Restricted license means that you can only get a maximum of 15 slot machines. Currently, this is the areas that we have. These are establishments with 15. There are establishments that have less than 15, but these are the establishments that are at the cap of the 15 restricted license. Scolari's, we included four unrestricted because they do have four with more than 15, about 16 or 20, no more than 20. 20 was the highest that they had. But I did want to give you an idea of what is out there, particularly with the supermarkets and other types of businesses. You'll notice that the Dottie's are in blue, and the only reason why I identified them separately is because they appear to be the one establishment that has, appears to have a problem with their incidental use. For example, Scolari's, we know it's a supermarket. You go in there, you can go to Scolari's for something other than the slot machines. With Dottie's, it does not appear that there is anything else to do at Dottie's other than the slot machines. They do sell tobacco, they do sell drinks, but they do not have a bar typically. They have a counter that looks like a kitchen. According to their own interviews, they've stated that they are a casino with a different environment. And this is what I've read in interviews with them with the newspapers. They have, their environment is that of a living room and where you can come in and gamble and so forth. I understand Clark County just last night had, they had a moratorium, actually, because the issue was that concerning to them. And just last night, they implemented new regulations to ensure that they are in fact an incidental use to the establishment, whether it's Dottie's or other businesses.
Alex, is that a state law or city? Because what are we doing to enforce that?
It is a state and it is city. There has been, in the past, I'll be candid with you. Joe Henry has been in contact with the Gaming Commission. He's been talking to them, getting their minutes and discussing with them. It appears that they were relying on us to ensure it's incidental use to the business. And on the same token, unfortunately, we were relying on gaming, as they are the main approval process, that that's what they were doing. So, it appears that each entity was thinking that the other one was making sure to stay on top of that. So, but it is in state law. And Gaming, they have been dealing with it, they've been having a lot of meetings on it. And they're looking at also, and I'll show you a slide here that has their recommendations as well because they actually have guidelines that identify what incidental is.
Yeah, so what are we going to do? Because, I mean, they're not following the law.
That is something that we're researching right now. What we were doing is waiting to see, because Gaming is still currently working with it, because Gaming is going to do it as well, they're going to enforce it as well, and so are we. So, we want to wait, hopefully, to see what route they're going to go because we don't want to go one route and then Gaming says, "Oh, no, you're okay, you're good to go, or all you have to do is this." So, we want to wait and see what Gaming comes back with, because they're still currently working with it. And then we're going to, as far as the new ones are concerned, we're going to make sure that they come in and they follow the law as far as incidental use. The only issue we have is that we currently do not have the definition of incidental in our code. But we do have incidental in the state law and in their guidelines, which I'll show you here in a second, the Gaming Commission's guidelines. So, these are the existing laws, pretty much 15 or fewer slots. As you can see there in bold, incidental to the business of the primary principal commercial lodging use. We do allow them in 30-plus zones. And these are the actual areas where they're supposed to be accessory uses to or incidental uses to. These are the only businesses that can have them, these 11 listed businesses. And as you can see, they operate as incidental to one of the following principal uses. And this is very similar to what's in the NRS. And here are existing laws in other jurisdictions. Carson City, as you can see, two zones. City of Henderson, by right, they have them in 10 zones. They do have standard requirements, similar to that of a conditional use permit for four other zones. They do have license denial authority by the council. So, and pretty much here, what it states is, you'll see here, that "In the judgment of council, the granting of such license may tend to create or constitute a public nuisance." Item C, "The granting of such license may seriously and adversely affect the valuation of neighboring or adjoining and continuous properties, or the council is satisfied..." or the council is satisfied with the applicant, that the applicant is not a fit improper person. That goes back to the issue of if we have a problem business owner, this is something that we might want to look at into the liquor license as well, area of liquor license. Find that the applicant is not a fit improper person to operate. But what you see is item E is what they pretty much hang their hat on, city of Henderson, is if in the judgment of the council, there are ample and sufficient licensees and establishments in the area or place for which licenses to be used to properly serve such area or place. You might remember in the previous slides I showed you, we have three or four, we have four of them within a particular very close area, I believe in within the state area. Here we have the list of the areas for city of Henderson, as you can see up there, and the requirements very similar, 15 or fewer slots. And you can see the allowed areas with the standard requirements. North Las Vegas is very similar to that of Henderson, they have items A through E, discretion of the council. And here, under these circumstances, they can deny. They also have the location, the principal activity of which is other than gaming. If the gaming license is limited to not more than 15 slots. And they also have the distance separation requirements, as you saw on the previous slide. If it's associated with liquor, that same buffer that they had, it applies here as well, 1,500 feet as you can see here. So staff suggestions would be, and these are all suggestions, obviously we can review them with City Attorney's Office. First is maybe provide a definition for incidental. We can use reference, as you see at the bottom, regulations of the Gaming Commission, that's their actual guideline, 3.015, where they have specifics, the amount of floor space, the amount of investment in the operation, or the amount of time required to manage. The establishment's name, Daddys, for example, I hate to pick on them, but they do identify themselves as either Daddys Casino or Daddys Gaming and Spirits. Another option would be to make it a privileged license. Or providing the city council discretion, similar to that of Henderson and city of North Las Vegas, the discretion to approve them or disapprove them and their locations. The last slide here, you'll see the summary of all staff's suggestions for each issue, for each item. As you can see, there is a long list, and once again, as I stated before, it can be an and/or option if council wishes. And staff will, whatever direction you give us, we will move forward and meet with the city attorney's office and try to get that, work on that as soon as possible to bring it back to you. So, and that is my last slide, so any questions?
Mr. Woodley, thank you very much for your detailed presentation. We do appreciate it, we're sorry I had you wait so long, we do appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Zadra.
Alex, thank you so much. It was probably two years ago that you brought the drug paraphernalia issue to my attention as it relates to being within just a couple of feet of parks, which is just a serious issue. And I think you've done an incredible job of kind of outlining all four of the areas. My concern would be that we not have any single one of them dependent on the activity of the other, that they all stand alone. So that if, if, you know, as things progress and you begin to put together more information in how we can enforce, it's clear that some are not really enforceable or that we can do much about, that the rest of them don't go down the tube because of that. So I really want to make sure that we give you that independence, that they each stand alone.
I understand definitely, yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Zafraza, you were talking about packaged goods?
Yeah, I just think moving forward, Alex, I think the screening and I think legal, unlike legal's opinion on what's legally defensible on what we put in the code. I just don't want to wait another year to do it, because if you see the proliferation of these on the agenda. But maybe we do do it as a special use permit. And the screening, because then you don't have them just opening up on every block and corner, number one. But secondly, the screening of, and I guess for the city attorneys too, the first slide you showed the picture of them having the display of drug paraphernalia right in the, I mean, is that something that we can, we can put into code and then retroactively enforce it? I mean, because that's, that's just terrible. I mean, absolutely terrible, it's right on our gateway. It seems to me that there's something that we should be able to do.
With that, if I may, as you know, SafeScape, which we mentioned, that was implemented after all the businesses were downtown already, and we did have a 12-month process that did bring them in so that they weren't grandfathered, so to speak. So they did have to come into compliance within the 12 months.
Tracy Chasrino, City Attorney's Office, we can look at that, not everything is grandfathered to a business. Certain things are legally and certain things aren't. So we can take a look at the specifics of what we're going to do and then have a better idea telling you whether it would be a grandfathered, whether we would recommend in coordination with code a transition and education program, because I think council would find that important. Also, when you're reviewing these, it would assist our office if you prioritize. If you want the drug paraphernalia to be the first we look at, et cetera, that would assist us in just managing the workflow.
Yeah, well, I think the drug paraphernalia is a big issue, but secondly, I think that it should require a special use permit. And the reason why, because if you look at a lot of these issues that we're dealing with, then, for example, the one that we had last week, a lot of the concerns is the placement, the parking lot. I think what the special use permit allows us to do is go through that review process, and then we can condition it based on the factors. But I don't think on the drug paraphernalia, I mean, that is, I just think it should be illegal, period. But Alex, how that, how you're able to put that in, but certainly displayed, maybe if it's, you know, put, but I think we could say in code that they can't sell it if they're going to get granted a liquor license. That it can't be.
Tracy Chasrino, City Attorney's Office, our concern would be an equal protection argument type of concern.
Well, then how do they do it for tobacco shops, Tracy? Then maybe that's what we say, that it has to be the one that you used, Alex.
In the state of Florida.
And that it has to be specifically tied to the tobacco then?
We could look at that and look at that ordinance, but just generally allowing certain types of similar stores to sell it and others not, like the Dollar Store can, and, you know, that's the concern. The other limitation we'll go ahead and look at.
Yeah, see, I mean, you mean with the liquor license that they couldn't?
Right, if you indicated that maybe they should only be sold in tobacco stores like the Florida code, we could look at that. Make sure it's not an old code, make sure it meets Ninth Circuit requirements. Because that's the issue that governs us, is the Ninth Circuit and their interpretations of this area, and we'll have to do that research.
And then Alex, do we differentiate in the code, and I think this was an issue with, when we did the moratorium in the redevelopment district, between the liquor and then you have the wine, like the wine type of establishments where they're just selling like wine baskets and things like that.
Pretty much the differentiation in the code is whether it's packaged liquor to take off-site or to consume onsite. That's pretty much the, as far as between, let me see if Michael's here, as far as between the beer and wine and the liquor, I think it's just a matter of the cost of the license.
Was the question which type, the type of license?
Yeah, let's say, I want to, okay, we passed some standards on the liquor stores that, based on square footage and doing a special use permit. Would that apply to someone who just wanted to open a wine shop?
If you're opening a wine shop, you, we do have a beer and wine license, package license, so it would be separate to liquor?
Okay, that's what I want to make sure, that there was two different licenses. And then Alex, on the two that we've done, the last two, what did we limit the square footage to? How did we come up with that formula?
Typically, what we've been using is the 10%, that was originally used, and that's the one that we've been using on a regular basis is 10%.
And where did that 10% number come from? I mean, did you guys do some research on that, was that?
No, unfortunately Deputy Attorney Randy Munn is no longer with us. He originally did that research, he did do the research and he came up with the 10%.
The 10% based on the study?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I mean, do you think, Alex, I guess I would be looking for some staff guidance on this too. Do you think that square footage requirement is helpful?
Oh, I do, definitely, yes ma'am, I do, definitely. One, and I can, I don't know.
Is Ms. Jackson still here?
Just left.
Oh, she did? Can you answer that, that? Can you answer that question for me? And I did talk to a gentleman for quite a while too, on the, oh, there he is, on the issues that you guys are having. I'm assuming you guys don't have an issue with the drug paraphernalia?
No, as a matter of fact.
Excuse me just a second, I'm sorry, we need you to identify yourself for the record, thank you.
My name is Jim Lynn Scott, I operate shop and go convenience stores here in town. We have an association of a bunch of realtors that are putting a proposal for the liquor deal, so. On the drug paraphernalia, if you have gaming, you can't have it, period. That's a state law, so.
So that's what I'm saying, would you guys be in support of if you get a liquor license, not just gaming, because we have some opening without the slots, of saying if you have liquor, you can't sell the paraphernalia?
I think that'd be a good way to do it, yeah, sure, we would support that, yes.
And then the second issue on the square footage, because I know you guys, I mean, you guys follow the rules, you're putting in the infrastructure, your food, all those things. Do you guys have an opinion on the square footage limitation? Because as Alex said.
Yeah, when we talk about our industry, this convenience store industry, not to be confused with the convenience store industry, that people don't have gaming in them and they have expired food and so forth. And we have these, you know, huge investments with gasoline, which I think with gasoline, you have to have a special use permit anyway, don't you?
Yes.
So that takes care of that, 24 hours, you know, so normally, we've already complied with most of that stuff anyhow. In our, the guys that we're kind of thinking.
I'm talking about the square footage requirement, because so far, according to code, it's been very helpful for us.
There's a maximum of 10, 10% of the total square footage.
For liquor sales, correct.
So the average convenience store would range between three and five, the Mavericks are a little bit bigger than that. So 10% is 500 square feet. The thing is about that, is I think that you could almost say that's a pretty big restriction. Because if one store, his market is more to the liquor side, he's going to put more liquor there. You know, I mean, you have to meet the market, the business. So I'm not sure that 10% is logical. We'd have to think about that, I don't know.
Yeah, I guess what would be helpful from your industry is to find out what the average square footage is in the stores.
Yeah, we can get that for you, we're going to be in touch with you.
Because I do think we need to, to work on the square footage.
And maybe if you could, in taking a look at that, the ones that are so much closer, you know, the high density of the liquor stores that we have downtown. So maybe this could be a tiered kind of a thing, where if there are six within a square block area, and one of yours, the only one that I can actually place in my mind way out on South Virginia Street, you're kind of there all by yourself. So is there a different level where there's multiple density of liquor stores within, you know, 300 feet of each other? They have one level of percentage that they could have. Those that are more freestanding, as yours is, where there isn't a slew of them all in a row, could have a larger percentage. Is that something that might work?
Yeah, we'll, I'll start getting some information from some of the other members and see what they think about that, and we'll come back to you guys.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. I will state though, Councilmember Zafraza, that from my experience in going to these stores, what's the AMPM, the Shop and Go, the Jacksons, they typically do not meet the 10%. Because keep in mind, a 5,000 square foot structure allows 500 square feet, and that's pretty big. You can have, you can go across 100 feet and come out five feet worth of liquor, and that's a significant amount. They, these stores do not meet, they don't reach the 10%. And I know because we've been out there measuring, so we know what it looks like.
Thank you, Councilman George.
Yeah, from my standpoint, I mean, if you're just looking for a direction. I mean, first, the first one on the drug paraphernalia, if we can find a way to prohibit the sale based on that, was it Henderson that had the?
North Las Vegas.
North Las Vegas?
Yes, sir.
That completely prohibited, if we could mirror something like that, I'm in favor of that.
Yeah, me too.
So I would, that would be my first choice, if our city attorney challenges that to some degree and gives us a reason why we can't do that. What's that? I would, I would go next to prohibit the display to minors with standards and require a special use permit. I mean, I think you could combine those two, that would be my second choice, but my first choice would be prohibit completely. Tattoo parlors, you know, reduce the number of zoned areas allowed, I'd like to look into that, I'm not sure where we would do that. It looked like, I think, one of the ones you showed us limited strictly to industrial areas, I think.
Yeah, that was Henderson.
But I do like the special use permit idea on tattoo parlors. And I think you can establish some location criteria, some distance criteria, I think that's a good idea too. I think we've talked about the packaged liquor to a pretty good extent, I mean, I think what Jessica was talking about. And then as far as restricted gaming, I think the first step in that is just to define that incidental and see if we can enforce that. I mean, those are my comments, trying to expedite this along as much as we can.
Second, is that the motion?
I'll make that motion if everybody's.
That's going to include the square footage, Dwight?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, and the, the special use permit on liquor stores too?
Sure.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
A motion, a second, any further discussion?
Just one, just quick comment, on the special use permit, are we in agreement that they would actually have built-in standard conditions? Or is it just going to be a typical special use permit where we have to figure it out based on location? Because if you have distance criteria, wouldn't that be incorporated into the spec? There's going to be certain recurring conditions that would always be in any special use permit that they apply for, okay.
But the distance requirements are, should be a code requirement, I think.
I agree.
On top of the special use permit.
I agree.
Marilyn Craig, Deputy City Attorney, if you could give us flexibility for both putting it in the code and/or special use permit, that would be helpful, because in some cases where we simply put it in the code, then there's no need for us to have a special use permit. We'd appreciate that, if you could do that, give us a little flexibility on that.
So tinted wind toes, for example, that, you know, we'll let you guys figure out where the best.
It's a very little flexibility though.
Yeah, and also, though, I would like staff to look at what we can do too on the things that are already there. Like we gave that transition period to get rid of this stuff displayed in the windows and things like that. I don't see why we can't do that.
My assumption is, once it's in code, it's going to apply to everybody.
Exactly.
I don't think, I don't think at that point in time we could require a special use permit if they're existing use.
Right, exactly, sir.
But anything that's in code would be required.
Yeah.
That is correct.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Again, Alex, Alex, thank you very much for your time and your proposal.
Do we still have redevelopment, because it's like 10 to 6?
We still have, we still have C1A3. And that is the John Eliescu 195 North Virginia Street Bar, which we continue.
Yeah, based on the conversation that we had, we didn't change anything, so.
So do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. We have a motion to adjourn, and a second, we are adjourned from the Reno City Council meeting, we have a redevelopment meeting.
Can we do that after maybe, I don't know.
We might not have a quorum. We have a quorum? Might not have a quorum afterwards. You want to continue it, or? Can I just open it and then continue it?
Yeah, Kevin. Okay, sure, let's do it.
Redevelopment agency budget?
He's already kind of given that budget presentation to somebody.
We don't know what that hole is going to be though. That's the only thing, all I want to, I only have one question. I want to, I only have one question on that, what the projected deficit is. But yeah, let's do it, let's get through it.
Do you want to open it, then?
Yeah, let's go.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Hasheb?
Here.
Guston?
Here.
Zadra?
Here.
Sefrazza?
Here.
George?
Here.
Azzi?
Absen.
Michelle?
Move to approve the agenda.
Motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Is there any public comment? Close the public comment section. Okay, let's move to item B1, update discussion potential direction to staff regarding redevelopment agency budget and financial projections for 2011-12.
Mr. Vice Mayor, would you like me to give a short presentation?
Please.
Very short. I will cut to the chase scene. We had expected a $465,000 deficit in RDA this year, one for the HUD repayment and one for removing the indirect costs. At this time, with the new budget projections, we're expecting an additional $588,000 shortfall. We have three areas of policy direction that we're seeking today. The first one is on the stairwell project for the parking gallery of $180,000, which would be, need support. We can either do that from general fund monies, or we can use beautification funds that were set aside for Virginia Street. There's approximately $300,000 in that fund. The second one is, should we maintain the housing set aside, which is approximately $381,000 in that fund at this time, or should we support the entire amount with general fund?
We have to, by state law, we have to have that housing set aside. That has to be redevelopment funds. That's in the state law.
Right.
So how are you saying we can remove those funds?
I was suggesting we use those funds.
For, other than housing?
Yeah, for the record, John Shipman, Deputy City Attorney. We, the, the housing set aside is only for cities, I believe, for 300,000 above. We have it in our redevelopment plan for Plan Area 2.
I, I think you're wrong. That's what we, we had to, when they came to us on, when we set up redevelopment 2, we had to set aside that housing.
Well, you did as a policy matter, you did that. You didn't do that necessarily as a matter of state law. And we, I can go back and double check it, but, um, yes, I mean, at this point, and I think I reviewed it last year, it was-
Because we used that for the homeless, I believe, the homeless facility last year. And maybe that's what we do this year, is we keep it for what the, the, what the housing, the intent of, of what the, the law is. Because we're going to have to support the CAC, I'm assuming.
Yes, there's still operating costs that we would need to support with that money. Well, there's no possible repayment for the loan that I can see, so it would have to be a subsidy. Right.
How can we transfer? That's what the Department of Taxation.
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, if you do have that selection, there would be additional process, from what I, is my understanding of this, that you would have to go through, and Mr. Shipman can detail that.
But on the indirect, the indirect costs, I mean, the agency is not doing anything. So, I mean, it does seem fair that that goes into the overall budget. I, but we have no staff there. I mean, really what the agency is functioning as now, Kevin, is-
Property.
For paying bonds. I mean, that, all of our, our money is going to pay debt service. Where is the funding from the Virginia Street lighting project coming from? Is that RDA 2 that we set aside funds? Or would that be general fund?
Rob Miller, OMB, are you talking about the streetcar line or the streetscape project?
Well, Kevin just said that the 300,000, I'm sorry, Kevin, how, how staff, the beautification funds, where is that coming from?
The beautification funds were set aside a few years ago, when we refinanced, I believe, the Fitzgerald's property in order to do some facade work on the Virginia Street corridor. When staff looked at what would be necessary to do the project, it far exceeded the money that was set aside. And so those funds have been waiting until we could find an additional revenue source to get that project done.
But what I'm saying is, those really aren't general funds. Those were done for refinancing redevelopment projects, so I think that money should be used as the deficit instead of going to the general fund. And then also, the, the housing set aside, that's another, how much do we have in that pot?
Right now, Ms. Councilwoman Sefrazza, we are estimating that the final balance for this year will be about 381,000. They are currently using that for some security and some other things that are happening at the CAC for this fiscal year. They did that last year. Through the budget process will be the determination whether or not they use that going forward.
So Kevin, is that, so it, we've got a million dollar deficit, you said?
Yes, ma'am.
So that would take us to 681?
Uh, well-
With those two funds?
465 of it was already covered in our February 28th budget amendments, because we had known that there was going to be some decrease. It's just larger than we thought. So if we were able to use some of those funds, it would reduce the impact of the general fund quite a bit.
But I guess my question is, if you use the housing set aside and the 300,000 that was set aside for Virginia Street, would that cover the cost of the agency without going into the general fund for next fiscal year?
No, we're talking about fiscal year 10-11 here. Next year, our revenues are projected to drop, I think it's 83% to $790,000 in TIG. So that's a whole nother issue, and that's the $2.5 million that I identified as the shortfall in my earlier presentation. So we're talking about 10-11, having an additional 588,000 to be slightly over $1 million for this year.
So does that make, does that mean that we're not going to be able to make debt service, or what are you talking about on the TID?
Uh, without some action, we would not have sufficient funding for debt service next year.
For fiscal year 11-12.
11-12.
And, and how much is that, again?
It's just under $2.5 million for next year.
Yeah, 11-12, right?
Yes, sir.
Correct.
Just to make debt service?
Debt service is right at $3.4 million.
So, okay, so we plug the hole for next year, then what happens after that?
It would be an ongoing obligation until the revenues returned in the RDA.
So, I mean, all this stuff's adding up. We're getting the, the RD, and isn't that set aside from the general fund? By the time you take the events center and the RDA and all those things, how much more can the general fund sustain?
Every time we use general funds to support anything else, it's a direct impact on our services.
So Kevin, are you looking for direction on that today?
I was looking for direction on 10-11 today. We can discuss next year's issue during the budget process. So, right now, we have a $588,000 deficit in addition to what we had already planned for, and so if we could use beautification funds to help offset some of the capital expenditures, perhaps use some of the housing set aside, we could handle it all within the fund rather than going to the general fund. But if you would prefer not to do that, our only other option is to use general funds.
See, that's what I'm saying. I think we should use it.
You think we should use general fund?
No.
Councilman Azzi? Yeah, well, when you say supported by the, the general fund, would that be a loan?
Well, in order to exercise a loan, we'd have to have a source of repayment, and I don't think that that would be possible. I think we would be talking about a subsidy here. So we would move costs.
Because we've done that, that before, back and forth, where we've had loans go back and forth to make sure that when one's down, the other one's up, and they always got repaid, so it's not a direct subsidy, it's a loan that comes in. What is the, one thing that we were bringing up, and I don't know if you thought about this next budget, is that still would affect the redevelopment area, but it's being paid for out of the general fund now, is the street sweeping and the added police, police downtown. So what, what would happen if we were to reduce those amounts? Because it's still the redevelopment area, even though I say it's, it's general fund money?
That was already done back in November. We've been reducing the RDA budget significantly over the course of this year, trying to live within the amount of-
No, I understand that, but the general fund pays for the street sweeping downtown that I was told at one point is $400,000, $500,000 a year, I think, and that the, we subsidize the police tax district by $400,000, $500,000 a year.
We used to do both of those things. We do not do that anymore. There isn't sufficient-
We don't have the police, we don't have the police officers downtown anymore?
We do. I'm talking about the RDA funds that used to go to those purposes.
I know, I'm talking about the general fund money that goes to those purposes. The general fund is subsidizing those.
Yeah.
So if the general fund stopped subsidizing those, and we use that portion of the general fund to pay these bonds, it still affects the redevelopment area.
Okay, yeah, that, my misunderstanding, I'm sorry. I think that's part of our budget proposals for next year, so we could certainly look at doing it this year as well.
I mean, if we started doing that right now, how much would that generate in the rest of this fiscal year?
I think the problem, though, too, is if you look at the Department of Taxation letter, that's exactly what it said, is they don't want those loans without, I mean, that's the purpose. You've got to be able to pay it back within a year. There is no source of repayment.
But that's why this is ridiculous. It says I can give them money, but I can't give you a loan. I mean, that, that's why it's ridiculous. Quite honestly, if you think about it, I know, but it's a ridiculous policy that, that here we are, if I need to, I can give money to the redevelopment area, but I can't loan the money to get the general fund paid back maybe in 10 years. That's why that's, it's silly.
But, but they also said in that letter, they're concerned about using general fund money for other purposes. And that's the letter that came back.
Well, I know they're concerned about it, but what are our options?
Why don't we deal with this here first, because we've got a 6 o'clock agenda that we got to get to as well. So do you want me to make, I'll, I'll go ahead and make the motion and accept staff's recommendation, at least for this budget, for this 2010-2011, that we use the beautification funds and the housing set aside money to, to make up the difference. Do you have a motion? Do you have a second?
A second for discussion. Discussion? I, I just be, want to double check on that housing set aside, that we can do that, before we do that, Peter? I'd like to double check that before we do it.
We'll verify that, sir.
And if these are revenue bonds, why are we digging into the general fund? Somewhere we got to-
We're not with this motion, not with this.
Yeah, I'd just like to confirm, this is John Shipman for the record. Under NRS 279-685, again, the set aside requirement only applies to a city whose population is 300,000 or more. We do have that as a set aside in the redevelopment plan for Project Area 2. So you're going to have to amend the redevelopment plan for Project Area 2 for that, either do it for a temporary period of time or permanently. So that's probably going to have to come back for your approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. And items B2 and B3, I'd like to continue on, simply because the chairman of the Redevelopment Agency Advisory Board is not in attendance, and we did continue this from before about the appointment to the board, and I'd like to continue this in the next meeting. So, okay, a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any future agenda items?
Second.
Motion to adjourn, we are adjourned.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, 6 o'clock meeting, excuse me. And then we'll get started.